Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 9 meeting, which may or may not be Palo Alto Day. We're not quite sure, but we think it could be. We're delighted to see all of you here tonight. We are welcoming you, and then we are going to begin by stating that we're going to have a closed session, and then you will be free to talk to that. Have you given a card to the clerk if you wish to talk? Great. Okay, so if others of you wish to talk, just come up and get a card from the clerk, and we'll call on you in short order. So with that...
Roll call.
Motion to go into closed session.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, Beth. Roll call.
Councilmember DuBois, Vice Mayor Philseth, Councilmember Fine, Councilmember Holman, Mayor Niss...
Here.
Councilmember Koo, Councilmember Scharf, Councilmember Tanaka, Councilmember Wobach. Five present.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, I need a motion to go into closed session.
No, we need the public speakers first, yes.
I thought it was the other way around.
No.
Okay, in that case, we'll take public speakers first. And you can see that your names are listed on the board up here, and as people come in and wish to talk, they can do so. And we have former Mayor Scharf, who is going to keep us on our toes with the timer.
All right.
Okay, so the first speaker is Richard... I am not going to do a good job on that. Is it Stanky? Close to it? So come right up.
Yeah, my name is Richard Stanky. I'm a Palo Alto resident for 65 years, and I'm here about the airplane noise. And I've spoken to the council before, and then at the retreat and several other times, I'll...
If you pull that mic right next to you, we'll hear you better.
Sorry, I kind of have a loud voice. I didn't want to hear me well now.
But we need you on tape.
Okay. So I just would like to address the fact of the incredible noise and problem this is causing for the residents of Palo Alto, and would hope the city would begin a lawsuit against the FAA or whoever it is you may have to go to. Certainly wasn't prepared to speak first, but we'll trudge on. I'd like to give you an example from Thursday, April 6. While trying to go to sleep, at 10:10 PM, we had United Airlines flight. At 10:13, Alaska Airlines. 10:20, United Airlines. 10:23, Alaska Airlines. 10:24, Alaska Airlines. 10:27, Southwest Airlines. 10:32, Amerajet Airlines. 10:34, United Airlines. 10:36, Alaska. 10:38, American. 10:40, Southwest. 10:41, United Airlines. 10:44, United Airlines. 10:51, United Airlines. 10:55, Southwest. 10:58, Southwest. 11:01, Alaska Airlines. 11:04, Alaska Airlines. 11:07, United Airlines. 11:10, Delta Airlines. And we finally quit at 11:18 with American Airlines. Now, this is all while trying to go to sleep. These are not brief, one-second events. You hear these planes coming from miles away. They slowly drone their way in, roar over your head, and slowly fade away. Before you hear the last one in, the next one is already coming. It is nonstop. It is not too much to ask in the city to try and be able to go to sleep. I mean, I'm not out there with night vision binoculars looking for these planes. This was done on the report jet thing while laying in bed. Saturday, last Saturday, I wasn't home for three hours in the afternoon and still picked up 115 reports, just sitting around the house watching TV. It's intolerable.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Daniel Oleanstein.
Hi, thanks, everybody. I'm just here to speak on behalf of asking the city to protect its citizens from the unjust decision by the federal authorities to impose NextGen several years ago, the air traffic patterns. The constrained routing, lowered altitudes of inbound SFO traffic have significantly impacted our quality of life. It's unfair to put the burden of increased jet noise on one group who have the misfortune of living under the new route, which was chosen to benefit airlines without the permission of the residents. There are other alternatives, including to fly higher, fly over the bay, spread it out. We all know this. All attempts to reason with the FAA have been unsuccessful, including a mighty deliberate effort led by the committee under Joe Semidion, several of which meetings I attended. I'm convinced at this point that the best option now is to sue the federal authorities because they don't seem to be willing to listen to anything except coercion. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Our next speaker is Briggs Nizbet.
My name is Briggs Nizbet, and I live in the Palo Verde neighborhood. Residents of Palo Alto are facing a metaphorical death by increments as a result of failure to challenge the environmental assessment for the FAA's 2014 NextGen project. By not challenging that 2014 EA, impacts allowed at that time have become the baseline for further actions by FAA, and adjustments to flight procedures will be justified by FAA as no big change or no impact. To quote from the Southern California City's petition for review, "The FAA is at fault in failing and refusing to include in its purported cumulative impact analysis the numerous past, present, and reasonably foreseeable future projects. Without accurate assessment of environmental impacts to provide an acceptable baseline for future procedures, there is no way for the FAA to measure or consider the consequences of their actions or provide justification for less harmful alternatives. The goal of mitigation efforts should be to ensure that absolute levels of aircraft noise and frequency of noise disturbances are reduced to or below an agreed-upon historical baseline." Two years ago, six peninsula cities wrote to Representatives Eschew and Farr to ask that the 2006 be the baseline for those FAA actions because even before NextGen changes started to impact many Bay Area communities, earlier changes that the FAA made had already been impacting some communities well before then. Given the improvements in aircraft and navigation systems since 2006, it should be possible to reduce aircraft noise below 2006 levels. Accurate flight data exist. Do not let Palo Alto be the boiled frog in the escalating heat of FAA procedures." Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Barbara Miller is next, followed by Carl Thompson.
Mayor George.
Did I miss someone? Marie Jo Fremant.
Dear councilmembers, my name is Marie Jo Fremant, a Palo Alto resident since '93. Thank you for taking the time to hold that closed session to discuss potential litigations in regard to airplane noise. Litigation is indeed a tool that our city should be ready to use if necessary. It's an additional mechanism to put pressure on the FAA to solve the severe noise problem that they created when they deployed NextGen without taking into account the people living on the ground. So why consider litigation? There are three reasons. One, it matters. Litigation is something that the FAA pays attention to. Two, cities who have filed seem to be getting results. For instance, Newport Beach, Burian in the state of Washington, and Phoenix. In contrast, after almost two years since the Select Committee was created, the FAA has not endorsed or offered any solution that would substantially reduce noise for residents living near the Menlo Waypoint. And three, cities are much more powerful than individual residents, especially when cities join forces. Some Port Hurley Valley residents lost the only lawsuit that was filed against the FAA in our area. They did the best they could under the 60-day FAA deadline, but things have also changed. Multiple cities are now exploring possible litigation. Pacifica, Santa Cruz, Half Moon Bay. Palo Alto is not alone. So you must be ready to act if necessary. Easier said than done, given that filing must occur within the 60 days of the FAA implementing a change. Miss the deadline, and the court will just reject the claim, and it's just occurred for the Citizens Association of Georgetown. So during that 60-day window, one needs to detect the change, validate it, quickly assess its impact, and then file. Multiple nonlegal things must happen before legal can file. I call this the qualification phase. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Now it's Barbara Miller, and then Carl Thompson.
I'm here not because I'm in the flight path. I was three years ago. I might have been one of the first people that contacted the airport and the FAA because at about 1:10 in the morning one night, I thought an airplane was coming into the bedroom. Then I filed my complaint, and I haven't had trouble since, but my neighbor has. That's two blocks away. So the reason I came up to talk was because she had said that she was challenged by some other Palo Altons that she should just suck it up. And we figured this person had never been in the flight path, and I just think it's important for everybody in the city to realize that if they were in the flight path, they would have a totally different experience than if they are two blocks away, maybe even a block away. So I think it's a very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Carl Thompson, and then Nancy Martin.
Hi, I'm Carl Thompson. I've been a Palo Alto resident for 50 years. We were up in Tahoe all week. It was a beautiful time. No noise, no airplanes, beautiful scenery. In fact, it was beautiful this morning, but we drove back today so we could be at this meeting to show our support of council action concerning the FAA's nonresponsiveness and the continued airplane noise in Palo Alto. Just a reminder, there are 6,000 to 8,000 complaints from Palo Alto a day to San Francisco Airport, which is 2 million-plus complaints a year from just Palo Alto. Yet, when the council went to Washington, D.C. last week or the week before, as was reported in the Palo Alto Weekly, they got basically no response from the FAA and were essentially ignored. I will close by saying the noise will only get worse. Unless we do something now, you'll see much, much more noise as time goes on because it'll be clear this is a place that they can fly planes over. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Nancy Martin.
Hi, my name is Nancy Martin, and I live in Los Altos, and we are affected as much as you are. I agree with Carl. It's going to get worse because Terminal 1 is expanding. So they're going to be opening probably in San Francisco probably a year and a half because this is going to get even worse. I wrote to all the city managers and asked them all in the surrounding area if you guys could just get together, everyone get their city attorney, and work out a plan. We have to sue them. They're not going to change. They don't have anyone overseeing them. They can do whatever they want. So that's the way our country works unless you sue someone, change doesn't happen. Sorry to say that, but it's the way it is. So I didn't get responses back from anyone in Palo Alto. I'd like to see Palo Alto go forward and work with our city manager and Saratoga. I mean, Sunnyvale, all of them are affected. We can't go outside. I can't garden anymore. I can't go to the grocery store without getting out of my car and hearing the planes. And I see them all headed over to Palo Alto, so I know you're getting it just as bad. Anything you could do to support us and Palo Alto, obviously, we would appreciate. I'm working on my end to get support for you as well, and let's team up together. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Karen Porter.
I had sent an email with a supporting documentation earlier today, last minute, so hopefully you'll have a chance to look at that if you haven't already. I live in the Duvernec neighborhood on the north side of the city, fairly close to Menlo Waypoint, so have been definitely aware of the problem now for a couple of years. It's only going to get worse now with the new Surfer Star, Surfer 3 procedure, which will essentially go over my roof. And I was very surprised, feel like I was ambushed by the FAA when they sort of surreptitiously put this change into place. Apparently, they think it's going to be temporary, but the FAA has not been playing fair. And we've been, the city, our neighbors have all been trying to cooperate, work with the FAA for several years now, and it's clear they've just strung us along. And the update in November was a real slap in the face. It was a wake-up call to me that the city really needs to escalate its game, and if it takes litigation, that's what it takes because it seems like the only cities and jurisdictions that have obtained any relief have had to file a lawsuit. I described in my email that I think we have a good lawyer, the city's retained a good lawyer. I've got to think they can come up with some very good arguments for, first of all, why the city should not be precluded from complaining about the original assessment because of the way the FAA has really strung us along. We have a reasonable basis for a delay outside of the 60 days that we thought the FAA was going to act responsibly, but they haven't. And in particular, if they change any procedures, the city needs to be prepared to evaluate those and act as expeditiously as possible. So I really thank the city for, and the Policy and Services Committee in particular, for recommending that we consider litigation. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for coming. Carrie Yarquin, and then Jay Whaley.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. First, I want to just respond to what Barbara Miller said because I just met another Palo Alton who said, "Oh, I live over near Mitchell Park. I don't hear the planes." And I said, "They're directly over my home. I get no peace. I mean, it's a 24-hour, no sleep. I can't go outside. I'm similar. I can't go outside. I have to use my noise-canceling headphones in my house while I do my yoga." So they are directly overhead. I have Surfer, Oceanic, and Point Rays. Besides that, San Jose Airport on the reverse-flow days is underneath them. It is impossible. I'm looking for a quiet place to live in Palo Alto. I have kids in high school here. Okay, this is me. Okay, obfuscation, denial of the problem, passing the buck, making impossible criteria to meet, blaming it on the bureaucracy and Donald Trump are some of the tactics I have personally encountered when confronting various agencies, representatives, the FAA, and government officials who are responsible for making Palo Alto the arrivals runway into SFO. It's now your time for you to do your job, stand up for your citizens to get back our queen, quiet and clean skies from four years ago. And I am particularly upset about that two United flights from Hawaii that come in over about 4:15 AM that have been waking me up for three years. Okay, the SFO Roundtable, the SFO Airport, the FAA continue the narrative saying that nothing has changed. Surfer has not changed. This is so untrue. Don't let them get away with it. Go to their meetings, and they say the same thing. Call them up on the phone. They say that same line. Stand up, advocate for your citizens, who are now essentially a dumping ground in the sky for hundreds of jets a day, find particulate air pollution that no other community wants, especially San Mateo doesn't want it because they sent it to us, or then they will not have dumped on them, but they have dumped it on us. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jay Whaley, and my wife Sally and I have lived in Palo Alto now for over 50 years, and this is one of the first times I've come to talk. But I think it's so important to tell you how unacceptable and unhealthy it is to have the concentration of aircraft flying at such low altitudes over our city, and that's what I want to address, the altitudes of these aircraft. As Carl pointed out, we've been reporting these low-flying aircraft for several years, two years. An average of 7,000 reports a day, that's over 2.5 million a year, reports are coming from us to San Francisco about the low-flying aircraft. I happen to live very close to the Menlo Waypoint, and thanks to Sky Posse and doing the Stop Dot Jet Noise, we're able to record these planes. Last week on one day, I recorded 115 flights as I happened to be home. Those 115 flights landed an average altitude of 3,900 feet. That means many were below, many were above, even above 5,000 was too loud. Joe Semidion and the Select Committee said in their report that these planes should be above 5,000, and I think even higher. The FAA responded in this way. On page 30 of 51 on July 25, they said, "Procedural development criteria and safety standards require that the altitude at Menlo cannot be published to be greater than 4,000 feet." So they have said that, and I understand last week they weren't willing to talk to you at any length about this. So something has to be done, and I think the only solution is legal. And I think you should try and find out what they mean by procedural development criteria and safety standards, which is lowering these aircraft over our heads. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Joel Hayflick and Robert Finn.
Hello again. My name is Joel Hayflick. 300 planes fly low and loud over my house in Midtown 24/7, 365 days a year. This has been the status quo since 2014, when I began to notice the changes overhead, going on four years with no improvement in sight. Serious health problems are attributable to chronic jet noise exposure like we endure. Everyone here endures it. Negative impacts on academic performance, children's school performance, and learning stemming from chronic jet noise exposure and emissions are well-known. It's simple to do a PubMed search and find out this information. It's all out there. And I bet your kids are affected just like mine would be in the schools. Four years and no changes in sight. 300-plus planes a day, 24/7, 365 days. We need changes. We need them now. I recommend that the city join other like-minded cities to file litigations, holding the FAA accountable for treating us as if we were a public noise sewer, or in FAA's own parlance, a sacrificial noise corridor. Every procedure FAA used to make flight path changes in the run-up to rolling out NextGen needs to be scrutinized with a fine-tooth comb by an experienced team of experts. This is the big leagues, and we need big-league experts teaming up with big-league attorneys.
Thank you. Robert Finn, Farzeh Rao, and ending with Carrie Snyder.
Hey, thank you. Prior to 2014, the airplane landing system at SFO worked superbly and displayed no major fault. During that same year, despite only small increases in air traffic, there was a huge jump in disturbing airplane noise. That coincided, I think not coincidentally, with adoption of NextGen, although the public was then not consulted or even informed that changes were occurring. Adverse reaction to the changes surfaced despite the attempted silence, and it led to formal hearings via the Select Committee. This committee seems to have felt that its central obligation was to act as public relations agent for the FAA. That is a strong assertion, but I think there is ample support in the emphasis the committee put into its own report that it could not consider return to pre-NextGen procedures on the ground that the FAA had informed them it was, and I quote, "required by law to adopt new and advanced technology." I can imagine Congress authorizing new technology, but the thought of them require it stretches my imagination. And it seems not to have occurred to committee members to ask why the earlier system should be considered any less suited than NextGen to advanced technology. What motivated the committee to defer without question to such unclear, sloppy, and slanted language? The FAA has made ghastly blunders, and what they fear most is having the blunders exposed. They have been temporizing with us, manipulating us, and giving us classic runaround. That happened to Georgetown. Please don't let it happen to us. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is it Farzeh Rao? Correct.
Hi. I don't think I have anything new to say. I mean, everybody who lives here knows what the noise is about. I think when I look at the past two years and the hopes that we had after the Select Committee paper and recommendation was that FAA would do something about Palo Alto specifically. And we have had a few reports out of FAA, and all of them just basically ignored Palo Alto. So the question is, if you're not going to sue, what else are we going to do? Because, I mean, are we going to go through another set of, like, Select Committee meetings and have more meetings and have more recommendation without a real tangible outcome? FAA said, "Of course, we're going to look into your night flights." And they said, "We did." And I want to know even one person that tells me that they can't sleep without a fan in their house at night to drown out the noise. Recently, the new Surfer 3, it's actually the airplane noise that drowns out the fan noise in my bedroom at night. I mean, this is the improvement. So the question again is, what are we waiting for? What else are we expecting to happen that hasn't happened yet, that we think FAA is going to fix our problem? Thank you so much.
Coming. Carrie Snyder.
Hi, everybody. I'm just here to lend my agreement to what has been said earlier. I don't know that I have anything different to say. I could read you a long list of airplanes that fly over my house that were not there when we bought our house in the early 1970s, the house that I grew up in. So this noise was clearly moved into our area, and I think if any one of us wanted to live near the airport, we would have moved there, and our house prices would have reflected that accordingly, and we would have taken it into consideration with time spent outside, quality of life, mind share, and children's schools. It really is a problem, and we've waited a very long time for a solution, and we're not seeing anything getting done. So it's time to take the next step. Unfortunately, litigation is what people understand, and so it's time to take that step. I don't want to be in the same situation a year from now, let alone two or three years from now. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Am I missing anyone? Is there anyone who wanted to speak and didn't get a chance to? So if not, I will be ready to take a motion to move into closed session.
So moved.
Okay, if there's no discussion, would you all vote on the board? Okay, thank you, and we will be going into closed session. So we're about to start our meeting. Thank you all for coming. See if I can get everybody's attention, including my colleagues. So we have been in closed session and I'd like to read a report from that. "We've conferred with expert attorneys on the difficult problem of airplane noise. This is not about housing. I'm now talking about airplane noise. We want citizens to know we're extremely concerned about this problem and are focused on ways to improve the situation. Airplane noise affects many cities and neighborhoods. Palo Alto needs to work together with other jurisdictions to address this issue on a regional basis." And we have been doing that. I don't want you to think that we haven't been doing that. We've definitely been working on a regional basis now for several years. "Our best chance of finding solutions will be to work with our neighbors. We're not in the same position as other cities that have recently received positive legal rulings." So I want to tell you this carefully. "In Phoenix, the FAA made many errors, including not doing any environmental review. The facts in Northern California are very different. We have not identified any legal flaw that is anywhere near as significant as what occurred in Phoenix. That was almost a fluke in a way. Based on the information from our attorneys, and for these reasons, among others, we'll not be pursuing legal action at this time. But later tonight, we're going to discuss all the things that we can do to keep working on this difficult problem. We hope that anyone who is interested in airplane noise, who may not be in the room tonight, but who is interested and still awake when we get to this, will come back down to City Hall and participate then." Thank you for whomever is still here. We appreciate your being here. And for those of you who we hope are watching at home, we hope you'll come back down and have our, have this discussion with us so that we can hear very clearly what path you would like us to follow. So thank you so much. And that's report from the closed session. And we're now going back into special orders of the day. And the first one is to proclaim, we have a proclamation, celebrating the 80th anniversary of the Friends of the Palo Alto Library. And... I hope I have a proclamation here somewhere. Let me see.
Green folder, maybe? Nope.
I'm looking for the proclamation, which is down at the bottom. So who is here from the library? Because I'm going to read this. I'll read this into the mic and then I'll come down and I'll present it. Okay.
Thank you, Monique.
So this is the 80th anniversary of the Friends of the Palo Alto Library. And I'll do one whereas and then skip them after that. "The Friends of the Library, FOPAL, is a nonprofit agency formed in 1938 by a group of library lovers whose objective was to support the library and enrich Palo Alto's cultural environment. FOPAL, if I'm saying it wrong, please correct me..."
You got it absolutely right.
"...celebrates its 80th birthday in 2018, supported by individuals who give of time and commitment to the library, sets an example of positive civic engagement for our community. And this is an organization with over 410 volunteers who volunteer more than $4,000 annually. And FOPAL has been a membership organization since its inception, with revenues based on, first on dues and later from book sales, which began in the 1970s. FOPAL sells books and other minerals, other materials online, and holds monthly book sales open to the public at the Coverley Community Center, and ongoing sales in the bookstore at Mitchell Park Library, and in kiosks at Rancanaada and downtown libraries. And FOPAL has donated over $3 million?" Yes, $3 million. It looks close, we'll say close to $3 million.
We could say a little bit.
"...to that library since..." You have fans. "...since 2004. And they have had foundation support, special events, collections, and the continued support of programs and services. So therefore, I, Lieutenant Mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the City Council, during National Library Week of 2018, do hereby salute the Friends of the Library for its work in building a caring community of library supporters for the past 80 years and wish the, wish the organization many successful years to come." Thank you so much. And I'll come down and give this to you.
Come on. Do you want to explain? Whoops. Can you guys turn on the microphone? Is microphone on? It's on. Great. Hi. Hi, it's, I'm Monique Lacanzezianheady and I wanted to introduce Nigel Jones, the president of FOPAL.
Why don't I give this to you first and then you get to say all kinds of wonderful things.
Let's turn so we can get a picture. Sorry.
The most important part is the picture.
That's right. There you go.
Well, Monique has to be in the photograph.
Well, hold on. I'll just get you guys first and then I'll go in trouble.
Let's take about 25 of them.
Ta-da. All right. Please. So.
Yes. Well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. You have the mic.
Thank you. Well, Mayor Niss, and thank you, and council members. I thought Mayor Niss gave a very nice presentation on FOPAL. It's easily better than anything that I could do. So I'd just like to thank you for the proclamation. It's on behalf of FOPAL. We certainly appreciate all of the support that you have provided to us over the years. And it's kind of remarkable, I am the president of the Friends of the Palo Alto Library, but as we've been around for 80 years, I have to recognize that I'm in fact only, only the current president of FOPAL. There's probably been dozens of presidents before me and hundreds of board members and it's going to be really interesting to see how many presidents there are to come. I think it's going to be kind of exciting to see how FOPAL develops its relationship and with the libraries into the future. We have two other events that we're going to be doing to celebrate. We've shifted our biannual members' sale to this coming weekend, so that will be related to the 80th anniversary. So for those of you who would like to come and buy some books, CDs, DVDs, we've got at least 40,000 of them sitting there, you must be able to find something that you would like. So we certainly invite you to that. And then on the 21st, as we're a book-oriented culture, we've invited authors to speak at the Mitchell Park Community Center. So the Saturday from 1:00 in the afternoon till 5:00, we have 10 local authors who will be reading from their, from their works. And you're never going to remember any of this, but if you take a look at our website, www.fopal.org, you'll find all of the information that relates to it. So again, I appreciate your presentation. That was a wonderful presentation on us and thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Your Honor. Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to put in just a brief word about our current president, Nigel. My name is Jerry Masteller and I've been on the board for FOPAL since the early 2000s. So I've seen a lot of, of presidents come and go and I think that Nigel has been doing a phenomenal job and working tirelessly for the organization and for Palo Alto Libraries. And I, on behalf of the rest of the board, I, I would like to take this opportunity to thank him.
Thank you all for being here. Libraries are so important in our community, so very much appreciate that. Karen Holman.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a word. We have an awful lot, we're privileged to have an awful lot of nonprofits in this community that contribute a great deal to, to our community. FOPAL is one of the organizations that does a great deal and asks for nothing. You just keep giving and giving and giving. And I thought it might be interesting, just quickly, because I'm somebody who appreciates history and context, is that 1938, 80 years ago, when FOPAL was founded, the most popular books were Rebecca by Daphne du Maurier, a couple of them, and Out of the Silent Planet by C.S. Lewis. So just a couple of examples. So thank you all very, very much and here's to another 80 years. And hats off to Monique as well.
And that was our special order of the day. We're now on to agenda changes, additions, deletions. I don't see any lights going on. And we have arrived at city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. First of all, on the continuing questions, concerns, and interest on the Ross Road Bike Boulevard, the city will be hosting an education and orientation event this Wednesday, April 11th, from 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. at Ramos Park at 800 East Meadow Drive. The event is set to coincide with the completion of the Ross Road and East Meadow Roundabout that is one of the traffic calming elements being used in the Neighborhood Traffic Safety and Bike Boulevard project. Last week, you may remember that we announced a series of measures to address concerns we have heard from the community. Siri's calling me on this now. Jeez. Anyway. And including testing of the roundabout to make sure large vehicles can make the turn, bringing on an independent engineering team to review the design, conducting enhanced outreach, as well as using temporary paint and striping for future elements. outreach, as well as using temporary paint and striping for future elements. The Bike Boulevard event is the first of several that the city plans to step up our informational and educational efforts on the project. Throughout the day, there will be pace bikes to show safe ways to ride on Ross Road, fun characters, including human traffic cones and Siggy the Human Traffic Signal, roundabout pancakes, as well as city staff on hand-answer questions and accompany those interested in riding with someone down Ross and learning more about safety features. More information on the project is posted at cityofpaloalto.org, website forward slash BikePedSafety. And I'll be continually updating the council on this project and others related in that regard. Okay, this Saturday, April 14th, the city is hosting the 5th Annual Great Race for Saving Water and Earth Day Festival that occurs every year, and it is from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Palo Alto Baylands. We invite you to join us and other Bay Area organizations for this 5K run and walk, and a kids' 1K fun run that celebrates healthy, living, healthy communities, and a healthy environment. Those of you who have participated or been there before know that the race is paced by a running toilet, which, of course, all of the kids try to chase and stop. Mayor Niss will welcome the crowd at 9 a.m. to kick off the great race at the Baylands Athletic Center, and the fun will continue through 1 p.m. with the festival offering all kinds of live music, food trucks, raffle drawings, electric vehicle rides and drives, nature activities, arts crafts, community booths, environment, and public safety resources. So, more at the city's website, forward slash Earth Day. Two other, three other items real quickly. April is Earthquake Preparedness Month, and on tonight's agenda is an informational report that acknowledges the importance of preparing for this hazard. We will also recognize members of our community who have completed recent emergency services volunteer training offered by our Office of Emergency Services here at the city. And this past month saw 42 new graduates from our block Preparedness Coordinator and Community Emergency Response Team classes. So, please visit our Preparedness website for tips on how you can help Palo Alto become more resilient, and further details about programs at the cityofpaloalto.org, website forward slash Preparedness. The city clerk, different subject, has extended the deadline to apply for the Historic Resources Board and the Human Relations Commission. The deadline to apply is April 23rd at 4:30 p.m. Applications are available on the city clerk's webpage, cityofpaloalto.org/clerk. And then last but not least, today is April 9th. I would ask the council what the significance of April 9th is?
Incorporation.
Incorporation? Founder's Day? In any case, we placed a For the Love of Palo Alto pin on each council member's seat there at the dais. And Janati from the Weekly asked me where my For the Love of Palo Alto pin is, since we are at Founder's Incorporated Day, so we are all with the change. Guys, hope to see you wearing that later on tonight. That's all admirable.
Thank you. And city manager, I see you have yours on.
I do.
Therefore, I hope the camera caught that. So, we are now into oral communications, and looking to see... So, the following are here for oral communications. Marnie Barnes, Stephanie Munoz, See Ready, and Rita Varel. So, if Marnie would come up, and then Stephanie, if you would get ready, wherever you are. Come on down front.
Hi, good evening. I've never done this before, but I wanted to start by saying thank you to the work that you have been doing with the Eichler community, and also on Professerville, you've been working hard, I think, on trying to increase the chances that we'll be able to keep those neighborhoods and the asset that they are to our entire community. What I want to bring to your attention right now is another community that is mentioned in the comprehensive plan as needing protection, and those are cottage clusters. Now, they're often forgot about, and I'm not aware that the council has done anything at this point to protect them, though that is mentioned in the comp plan. They're kind of the most endangered of those neighborhoods, in the sense that they're the smallest. There are thousands of Eichler homes, there are hundreds in the Professerville, there are only dozens in the cottage cluster. So, that's one reason. The other reason is that the lots are small, and their houses are inexpensive and old, so they're low-hanging fruit. Developers come and develop them. So, if we're going to protect them, we need to do that now. And what I'm asking the city to do is to create a moratorium on development within the cottage clusters. Cottage clusters were identified in 2005 by the city staff. That needs to be updated, because some have been lost. There is one on the Chopping Block as I speak, and that's what motivates me to come here. But it is critically important that if you are serious about carrying out the promise to create design standards for cottage clusters, that you take action now to stop this.
Thank you for coming. You did very well. Stephanie Munoz? It's really Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor Niss and council members. I'm reading the many comments that have come in about the proposed affordable housing overlay. And I think I can sum up by saying, almost nobody thinks that 120% of the median income qualifies a person...
Stephanie, this is the time for you to speak on things that are not on the agenda.
Oh, well, okay.
So, would you, you know affordable housing is coming up as number seven? Do you want to wait and talk then?
No.
Or have you got another topic?
I'm thinking if there's some aspect of this that would not ordinarily... Well, let me try this one out. The city has a need for parks and recreation, and some other city services, like gymnasiums and libraries. And I am saying that we should make a place always, when we have these large landscaped areas, make always a place for some kind of housing that would be compatible, and that would make the city more beautiful by having a nice, handsome public building, and rather than have to crowd all the housing into housing-specific places. Does that qualify?
Yes. You're just about out of time, Stephanie, so I guess it does qualify. We'll see you for item number seven. See Ready, and then Rita Varel.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, and all the citizens of Palo Alto and the surrounding beautiful communities. I do want to say, I want to reiterate, that without the College Friends of Library and the College Terrace Library, I wouldn't survive. I have about 1,500 books. I have this policy that if I don't read, I don't throw it away. So, contrary to everybody wants to live a Four Seasons-like setting, I keep surrounding myself with books. I wake up in the middle of the night reading one or two pages. Going on to the next one. I talked last week about UC admissions. There is an audit finding that only 35% of the UC students are from in-state, and they're giving admissions to all these out-of-state students to gain, well, you know, more money for the schools. So, I think it's time for UC to do the right thing, and they should admit about 70%. So, we work hard to pay, you know, whatever we pay for the school systems. The third item is Russia, Syria, Iran, Israel. This is a puzzle. The Iranians in this community need to wake up and convince their government to come up with a peace proposal before Israel attacks, and we all have $150 barrel gasoline and all this stuff. The last one is Facebook. Facebook would need to be punished with the consent order, so they don't do this again, they don't go and sell for the sake of selling it, and they need to learn from it. It happened to us at Hughes and Boeing and Lockheed Martin. We learned our lesson. And, you know, without money in it, you can't just sell your product and alter the countries, you know, from one party to the other and all that. You can't sell your people's data. That's just absolutely not necessary. So, let's put a consent order together. Federal government knows how to, and just make them work through that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rita Varel.
Good evening. So, I'm going to talk about local issues, and I wondered when the anti-idling ordinance was going to be coming back on the agenda. It was pulled off last week. And I see this as a really easy way to immediately stop CO2 emissions in this city, and also set a standard that maybe other cities, maybe even the state, would adopt. I only saw two cars idling today on my walk, so maybe there's hope, but we do need an ordinance. The other thing is, this is somewhat related to what will be discussed later, but one of the things I said last week about the infrastructure tax is that if we demand and require that all buildings, commercial, residence, hotels, all buildings in this city moving forward are fully parked, then we will not have as much need for parking garage infrastructure. Again, I don't think it's fair to ask residents to pay $50,000 to $65,000 a parking spot that is then used by private employers. The last thing is, I think that also there could be a business tax considered to help pay for infrastructure. And also, why isn't there a business occupancy tax? I believe it's common knowledge that a lot of the companies do not have their employees occupying the 100 square feet, but instead are put together chicken jau, as now is the standard. So, I think it would be an accurate, I think it would be a good thing to get an accurate count of how many people are in each building, and then charge for the wear and tear that each of those employees or individuals caused to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our last speaker, which takes us to the approval of action minutes for the March 26th meeting. Do I hear a motion? Don't all speak at once?
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Would you vote on the board? And that takes us to the consent calendar. And we have one person who wishes to speak on the consent calendar, and I think this would be the appropriate time to ask them to speak. And is that the person, Fred Ballen? Okay, Fred Ballen?
He's on item six. Good evening.
Thank you.
Three weeks ago, pardon me, sorry. Three weeks ago, with the zoning code update continuation here, with five council members present, this body clarified that contextual placement of covered parking on an R1 lot applies to carports as well as garages. Three years prior, in 2015, Planning Commissioner Michael Alcheck successfully utilized that ambiguity to convince the city to permit him to build carports in the front of two lots in which he had a material financial interest. Somehow, in this exception process, the city allowed him to build what the existing code and any reasonable person would see, were garages without car doors. The city failed to recognize or inform that their permission to allow the demolition of a garage in the rear of each lot to be replaced with a parking structure in the front would in fact flip, flip the predominant context of covered parking on each block from rear to front. And the city failed to bring forth an ordinance in a timely manner to prevent Commissioner Alcheck from fully enclosing these parking structures as garages, and witted a significant financial gain. Just as the council three weeks ago began a process to prevent this occurrence in the future, so could the Planning and Transportation Commission, when staff brought forth this clarification, to close the carport in the front loophole. First in 2015, when his projects were just starting, when Commissioner Alcheck neither disclosed the nature of his interest or accused himself, but rather participated and successfully pushed discussion of the item off the table. And then last year, when no permit had been issued for his application to convert each carport to a garage, he neither disclosed his interest nor accused himself from the commission hearings. With all due respect to the city attorney, residents looking into this see these as both legal and ethical violations. And so, we continue to seek out and receive new information, including via public records to assess it, and to further flesh out and clarify the points at issue. This is not a minor matter, nor one that can successfully be pushed under the rug. We again ask that you take appropriate action. Thank you.
That is the only speaker I have on the consent calendar, so if I could have a motion?
I'll move the consent.
Okay, and Lydia, you want to explain your no?
She needs to write first, then after. She can say which one she's going to vote on first.
Okay, let's vote.
Well, she registers it first. You have to let her speak now, to see what she wants to vote on.
Good. Okay, Lydia, you want to register a no on the consent?
On number six.
On number six.
I'm actually descending on number six, because I was absent on today.
Oh, so you want to abstain, because you were not here?
Abstaining.
Okay, fine. Okay, so there'll be an abstention on number six from Lydia Koo. Greg Tanaka?
Same.
Same? Okay. With that, we have a motion and a second. Would you vote on the board? And we have two abstentions. And that passes... Greg, did you want to abstain also, or did you want to vote yes?
Just on six.
Just on six, okay. Okay, so we have two abstentions on item six, and the rest, I presume you're voting yes on, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. You know what? It'll go down correctly. The city clerk will correct it, I know. Okay, so that takes us now to our main item for this evening, which is item number seven. And we have staff who is here to start out the discussion. Welcome to both of you. And Jonathan Late is Hillary tonight, so welcome.
Thank you. And so, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Graham Owen has been the project planner on this ordinance, and he's going to walk us through a brief presentation, and happy to answer any questions that you may have afterwards.
Thanks, Jonathan. I'm Mayor Niss. Members of the council, my name is Graham Owen. As Jonathan mentioned, the planner that's been working on this draft Affordable Housing Combined District Ordinance that's here before you this evening. Before we get into the ordinance, I just wanted to briefly just mention that this ordinance is originating from basically two sources. You have the Housing Work Plan, which the council considered and approved in February of this year. The work plan acknowledges that the city is in a housing crunch or a housing crisis, and that we do need to have affirmative action in order to meet our housing production goals, our arena allocations. So, this is one of the ongoing initiatives that's identified in that Housing Work Plan. I believe it's 1.8, which is to come forward with an Affordable Housing Combined District Ordinance. Also, as a bit of background, this idea for an Affordable Housing Combined District came out of a pre-screening application for a project which came before the council in August of last year, which was for a 61-unit mixed-use project at the corner of El Camino Real and Walton Avenue. At that pre-screening application, there were three kind of ideas for moving a project on that site forward. One would be to do the Affordable Housing Combined District, which is an overlay zone. An alternative was to reengage the PC process or Plan-Community process. And then the third was to develop a local alternative to the State-Density Bonus Law. Based on that pre-screening, the staff, myself, and the rest of the planning staff have moved on the Affordable Housing Combined District. Just so you know, this is, it implements, as the Housing Work Plan indicates... Just so you know, this is, it implements, as the Housing Work Plan indicates, it implements several of the policies and programs that are in the comprehensive plan and in particular in the housing element. So what is it? The housing, excuse me, the Affordable Housing Combining District is a way, it's a tool to incentivize 100% affordable housing projects. This ordinance that's before you today would create the district language in the municipal code, but it wouldn't specifically apply to any site outside of a separate and subsequent zoning action. So that would involve, basically, you have a base zone, commercial zones, and then you'd have an overlay rezoning that would go forward with a Planning Commission recommendation and council's deliberation. At the same time, any future design of any buildings that are a part of the project would undergo architectural review, so a hearing by the Architectural Review Board. So as I mentioned, this is a combining district, or as most localities call it, an overlay district. It can be combined with any of the commercial base zones that are in the city. Eligible sites would need to be within one-half mile of a transit corridor or a quarter-mile of a major transit, excuse me, half-mile of a major transit station or a quarter-mile of any major transit corridors. This is an illustration showing the eligible sites and eligible zones that are in pink. It's not showing up very well on this slide with this light, but basically it's the areas of Stanford Shopping Center, downtown, Cal Ave, and then the El Camino Real corridor. So as I mentioned, this is a tool for allowing for greater density, which is a necessity whenever you're doing affordable housing projects, specifically 100% affordable housing projects. So in order to incentivize higher density, there are certain things that the ordinance needs to, has been drafted to relax in terms of development standards. So those are floor ratio, lot coverage, usable open space, density and height. This is while acknowledging that there are going to be site planning characteristics that are, that need to be retained for all sites. So we've also retained setbacks and encroachments, built-to-lines and daylight planes. A little bit on parking. The AH proposes a parking requirement of .5 per bedroom or per unit, whichever is greater. Just to compare that to our existing requirements, base zoning is 1.25 for a studio unit and 1.5 for a one-bedroom unit. Density bonus provisions allow for .5 per unit for qualifying projects, that is senior housing and then also low-income projects when you're near transit. On retail preservation, the ordinance does two specific things. When you have a site that has GF or R combining district requirements, this ordinance would work in tandem with and would not undermine those retail preservation requirements. So basically, if you have retail that needs to be preserved because it's in one of those combining districts, those provisions would apply. With regards to citywide preservation requirements, they would apply generally to any eligible site. However, the council would, and this is just a policy call, the council would be able to reduce or waive citywide requirements if they declare that it's in the public interest to do so. I'm not going to go into too much of the weeds with these comparisons, but I just wanted to provide these. They're in your packet. These are just comparisons of two examples, one in the downtown and another in the CS zone, that just kind of walk you through how the AH combining district comports with density bonus and then also with base zoning. So if you have any questions about this, feel free to let me know. This is for the CS zone example. So we did have two hearings at the Planning and Transportation Commission, one in February and one in March. Following the February hearing, the PTC voted to form an ad hoc committee to study the ordinance as well as study alternatives to the ordinance. Ultimately, on 3/14, the March hearing, the PTC voted to recommend an alternative to the ordinance, which is to reengage the Plan Community zoning process for the Wilton Avenue site, as well as a number of other policy recommendations, which we have here and which are also in your packet. The first one is to advance the Wilton Court project with a development agreement. Second recommendation was to split the Affordable Housing District language into two separate income qualifying categories, so an under-60% AMI and a 60% to 120% AMI. They had a number of recommendations regarding retail preservation and in particular allowing for reductions when the city is able to provide financing for preserving retail. The same with parking. The idea was to have the city provide financial incentives to allow for projects to meet base zoning demand. They had another recommendation, which is to explore through community process amending the transitional height standard, as well as the open space. So essentially saying that the rooftop gardens are not applicable for being a component of the open space standard, meeting that development standard. And then finally, they wanted to recommend folding the AH 120, as they're calling it, to the 60% to 120% AMI into the Housing Work Plan. This is kind of a pocket slide. I don't want to go into too much detail here, but just know that this is here. These are the HCD, or Housing Community Development, income limits. So this is here to let you know, you know, what does it mean to be low-income? What does it mean to be very low-income in Santa Clara County? So these are figures that we just have if you have any questions about those specifics. So we have two possible motions. Obviously, there can be any number of motions, but the two recommendations that we have on the table now, staff's recommendation is to find the AH combining district ordinance in accord with the comprehensive plan, EIR, consistent with the comprehensive plan, EIR, and adopt the ordinance. The PTC's recommendation is to direct staff to work with the developer of the Wilton Court project on a site-specific PC rezoning and development agreement, and then also to work on the additional policy recommendations that they developed in the ad hoc. So that's it.
Yeah. And Mayor, if I may, we have a couple of commissioners in the audience tonight. Prashemic Guardias and Chair Ed Lowing are here to speak on the, about the Planning Commission's And yes, we have other commissioners in attendance as well, I think, to offer not necessarily presentations, but to answer any questions that make them up.
Okay.
Are we on? Are we on? Okay. Ed Lowing, Chair, Planning and Transportation Commission. Commissioner Guardias is actually the liaison on deck for this month, so he was also a member of the ad hoc committee, so we're going to have him go first, and I'm just going to make a few comments to follow.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you very much for having me here. It's going to take a little bit longer. I'm asking about five minutes of your time. So I'm going to go through the PTC recommendation, and I will provide further reason behind the recommendation, as I think that additional detail needs to be presented. It's going to be also displayed on the screen, and the same handout was provided to the city clerk. So on recommendation number one, on the Wilton Court project, although there has been no dedicated motion, I believe there is a uniform support of the commission to proceed with the Wilton project as soon as possible. Which option City Council is going to select for this, it's just a technicality from our perspective. Again, PTC, the Wilton Court has full support of the PTC Commission. In terms of the recommendation number two, of separation of the affordable housing on two items below 60% of affordability and over 60%, we pretty much understood that those are totally two different markets. For this reason, we decided to focus on the zone for up to 60% of adjusted median income. The reason behind this is that this item receives federal tax credits for development and investment over 60% does not. So there is also, that was the reason for separation 60% from over 60%. I also want to point to one item that I copied from Dennis Ross's email, that Wilton Project is going to focus on the part of AMI between 50% and 60%. If there is an interest of City Council to pursue this topic further and to explore how can we provide affordable housing for the average median income below that margin, we probably would need to do further study. I'm pointing this out just to prove that ordinance that we looked at was not providing the entire solution that we would like to have. The next recommendation is about retail preservation. And affordable housing doesn't give, doesn't receive funding for retail as well as parking. However, we have a recommendation to provide concessions to lure private investments and combine this private investment with the investment in affordable housing, thus preserve retail as well as expand parking area. Next recommendation is about the parking area, and it just fights with the same limitation of the funding. And per state regulations, affordable housing requires no more than half of the parking space per unit. However, based on the project basis, the demand for the parking may be higher based on different income levels. For this reason, we recommend it to either subsidize or enter into a private, into agreement with the private parties to increase the parking supply, which I call parking access, which could be distributed, could be redirected to satisfy either neighborhood parking needs, needs of this affordable housing unit, or retail that would be built on the same lot. Next recommendation is related to the transition height that staff, planning staff talk about. So we observed that in the municipal code currently, there is a clear requirement that of height limitation within 150 feet from the certain zones. We didn't feel that we have a mandate to override the code by our discussion, and we recommended to reach out to the neighborhood and reach out to the voters to discuss the concerns, to identify and discuss the concerns of locating high development, tall development within the proximity of those three districts. There is also a recommendation that was not put in writing on this, on the staff package, but we discussed it at length during the PTC meeting. That recommendation was to guarantee buy right process for affordable housing under 60% of AMI. We believe that developer like Palo Alto Housing should be entitled upon acquisition of a lot to proceed with the development without going to PTC or going to the City Council for any additional requirements. That development should proceed automatically. It would cut costs and it would allow such investment to proceed immediately. So summarizing this, I would like to say that if in absence of the private or public subsidies, such affordable housing development would proceed without, would proceed on exclusive developers' terms. If those, upon, on those terms, this development would not be entitled, entitled to any height concessions or any other concessions. And also, for the end, I would like to, I would like to add that if we decide to have dedicated affordable housing zoning up to 60% of AMI, we would demonstrate commitment to the stand, to the state mandated requirement to provide housing opportunities for all income levels. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. I just want to talk briefly on two points. One is just PTC's overall perspective on affordable housing. And then I just want to emphasize a core problem to be addressed tonight in the agenda item, just an emphasis on one. So regarding affordable housing in general, clearly, the PTC is seven to zero in favor of affordable housing. We incorporated that into our recommendations to you last year when we made that our top recommendation, unanimous vote. When it gets down to specific ordinances, it's not always going to be seven-zero, but the heart is still there, and we have to work through the details to get it where we can get implementation and get this thing going. We're taking action on affordable housing whenever we get it. Council explored the Wilton Project, sorry, August of '17. We got it as our Valentine's Day present in 2018 and worked on it that night. And 30 days later, you have a recommendation relative to the Wilton Project and a way forward. Prior to that, we did 2755, where there was about 20% sort of affordable. That was approved in the first evening, in the first reading. So there are no other pending affordable housing projects at present, and we're moving on whatever comes. We're carrying, I'm always carrying around my 2018 PTC yearbook here of the Housing Work Plan. So the idea of the Wilton recommendation was just to try to get the best of all worlds relative to the various senses of urgency. Obviously, we all are in favor, again, seven to zero, of 100% affordable housing project that addresses the neediest segment of under 60% of AMI. And then we have some time to work on some improved ordinances to incentivize more affordable housing inventory units in Palo Alto and to address neighborhood context in these projects. So that's the recommendation in front of you. We think that the PTC recommendation doesn't set precedence with the way that we've proposed it for any other affordable housing project, so it's not constraining in any way. The Housing Work Plan calls repeatedly for creativity and flexibility and new ways to get more housing up, and the motion tries to take your direction very specifically there. Whether it's PC zoning or a developer agreement or a pilot project or a test market, the spirit of the recommendation is let's just get Wilton up and going right away. It's a great project. We all think it should get up. So the problem I want to address, the problem I want to highlight that needs to be addressed is that in the work that the ad hoc did, they also uncovered an issue that is kind of an elephant in the room. And that is that, for affordable housing, and that is that one size does not fit all. If that phrase sounds familiar, it was mentioned last week by Councilmember Sharpe with respect to the Eichler to the Eichler Design Standards. So on a citywide ordinance that affects all affordable housing, this problem has even more potential consequences for residents. So just two examples, one I won't go into, it's already been mentioned. It seems like there should be two ordinances to address the needs of the various developers. But secondly, and this really needs high visibility, various areas of the city are covered by the proposed, that are covered by the proposed ordinance are obviously very different in context to begin with, very obvious. Existing buildout and parking issues very greatly across the wide geography that's covered by this ordinance. And one ordinance with identical relaxed development standards in parking, building height, building transition, and so on, it just really doesn't work. I mean, for example, maybe in some areas, there should never be any height above 35 feet. Maybe in other areas, if you take a look at the neighborhoods, the recommendation should be, we should go above 50, and it should be 60, because that actually really works in a given context, and therefore, we should look at that. So the issue is that that's not addressed in this ordinance, audience, ah, ordinance, and we should just go kind of figure that out. So in doing that figuring out, let's also make sure that residents are fully included in all those discussions, and before we kind of put a constraint of the same citywide set of relaxed standards on every neighborhood. So bottom line, and the emphasis that I'm trying to get on this issue here, is we need a mechanism for these relaxed standards to take into account existing neighborhood contexts. Right now, that's not in the ordinance. So collectively, we have to figure out a way to get that in there. So we're all on the same page conceptually about affordable housing, especially BMR. The majority in this recommendation just felt that we shouldn't let our enthusiasm for the mission get into a rush to legislation that could be improved in a very short amount of time. So that's just sort of the spirit of how it gets there. With Wilton launched as a separate, independent, non-binding on other projects, then there's some time to create very good ordinances that can incent more developers to build affordable housing in Palo Alto and minimize any collateral damage across our very different configurations of Palo Alto neighborhoods. So that's what we'd like to sign up to do. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We've now heard from both staff and from the Planning Commission, and I'll...
Third member of the Planning Commission.
Pardon? Who did?
The third member of the Planning Commission may want to speak. Commissioner Monk, Vice Chair Monk.
Oh, Vice Chair?
If I may. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and just wanted to give some context as to the perspectives that I put forth in the memo along with...
Excuse me, Mayor, did you say okay to this? Because I object, actually. Is she speaking on behalf of the commission?
She's the Vice Chair of the Commission.
I understand that, but we had Commissioner Gloria speaking, right?
No, I'm allowing it, yes.
Okay. I didn't hear you say that.
There are just a few things I wanted to highlight based on the PTC hearing that is in regards to the matter that we just were mentioning. First and foremost, I want to encourage you to move forward with affordable housing overlay based on the many reasons that my colleagues and I have emphasized to you in our memo. Second, as you're likely aware from reading the minutes from our hearing, and I have them here with me, there was plenty of attempts to address the concerns that were raised by the commission and fulfilling our obligation to come up with an ordinance and get it back to you and move forward on it. And at the March 14 meeting, we actually proposed a very compromised version of an ordinance that we actually had wanted to advance. So the reason why we came up with this memo is to articulate the history and what we would like to move forward in doing, and that is to adopt the February 14 memo that I hope is in your pack, but I don't know if it is, and to illuminate the fact that at the March 14 hearing, two other commissioners and myself moved very much to the midway point to compromise with what the ad hoc was recommending. On all, on all elements of the ad hoc recommendation, we were incorporating all of their changes into the March 14 ordinance, except for the one issue, and that concerns the AMI. So I just want you to be aware, in case you haven't looked at the proposed motion made by Commissioner Riggs, that is in the record, that it was very much a compromise motion that we tried to reach consensus on, except for that one issue. And so that was what was the deal breaker in us reaching a consensus. And because of that, we went ahead and authored our minority viewpoint. Frankly, I just felt compelled to author that letter along with my colleagues because we were chartered with returning an ordinance to you, and it just didn't feel right that we went off and did something that was not within what I viewed as our obligation to you, was to look at what staff was bringing to us based on your advisement to staff back in September or August timeframe. And so at this point, we did what we could to compromise, bring in ordinance, and hopefully you'll move forward with it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Monk. At this point, since we've heard a lot of feedback from the commission, also from our staff, I'm going to suggest we go right to the audience. We have at least 40 people who wish to speak, and by the time we're done, it'll be 50. And I'm very aware that a number of you are here with children. And for those of you who aren't here with kids, who are willing to give your time to someone who has children, that would be lovely. All the, just waiting a second. Here are the people, and what we will do is what we have been doing recently, which is to put all the names up here on the board so that you can see them. I will still call your name so that you know that it's your chance. But if anyone would like to give up their time to somebody with kids, and I do see some of you here with children, that would be very kind of you. So as you can see, we're starting out with Eric Rosenblum and Elaine Wang, and they are speaking for Jeff Salzman, Megan Khan, and Diane Moran. And lately, we have not given you the full 10 minutes, so if you can do this in about seven minutes, that would be very helpful.
Madam Mayor, can I ask you a procedural question?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just suppose if we have 40 speakers and they're given two minutes apiece, that takes us basically an hour and a half, which would be 10:15. And the reason I bring this up, I'm fine with that, but the reason I bring it up is because we have an item after this. So I think we need to decide, because if there are people here to speak to that item or people who are listening to think about coming back to that item, I think it would be prudent of us to decide whether we're going to take it up tonight or not.
Councilmember Holman, I certainly appreciate that, and I'm going to look down into the well and indicate if there's any reason why we have to take up the item that we have on the calendar for tonight, or can we do it another night? Because Councilmember Holman is exactly right, the speakers are going to probably take us certainly until 10, if not 10:15, and we'll have a fair amount of deliberation as well.
Madam Mayor, I mean, I'm going to just restate the obvious. Obviously, there is a lot of community interest in the airplane noise item. That being said, I mean, we have several, we have a meeting next week, we have another meeting in two weeks, we have another meeting in early May, we could work with the mayor and vice mayor to reschedule that, and I, I think that would be more prudent at this point. I mean, really.
I think it would actually be kinder that the people who wish to speak on airplane noise to not have us beginning at 10:30 or 11 o'clock tonight, when we frankly are not at our very best. So Karen, great idea, and I think we'll do, we'll arrange to have that. So for anyone who is listening, we will postpone the item which is on airplane noise, which is your opportunity to interact.
You will need a motion.
Yeah. But I want people to know who hopefully are listening, that we anticipate doing this. And the Vice Mayor has said that he would like to make a motion.
Move to continue the airplane noise item to a date to be determined.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Thank you, Karen. Sure, go ahead.
Before we vote, should we just ask if anybody in the audience who's here tonight would like to have the opportunity to speak to that item before the meeting is over? I mean, obviously, they could come back when we reschedule it, but we usually do that when we push an item off, just in case somebody's already taken time out of their evening to come here for that item.
We can accommodate that. It may be pretty late, however. Okay, so...
I was going to suggest we do that, actually, at this point.
Now? Yeah, I don't think so now.
Okay.
I think we're going to wait. Okay, with that, would you vote on the board? Okay, so we've taken up Councilmember Holman's suggestion to postpone the interactive item on airline noise, which was going to take place after this item. So greetings.
Greetings. We'll talk fast. We are Palo Alto Forward. I'm Elaine Wong, Eric Rosenblum. We're speaking on behalf of the Board of Directors for Palo Alto Forward. You've seen us before, but just as a rehash, we're a group of Palo Alto community members who champion better housing and transportation options. We've been concerned about high housing costs, the housing insecurity, lack of housing options for Palo Altons, and for four years, we've been sponsoring a lot of community conversations about housing, including one that was actually very well attended on Thursday about below-market rate housing 101. Housing is the key social justice issue in our community. It really underpins a lot of other things. It underpins physical health, it underpins mental health and wellness, it provides security and opportunities. Without housing, you can't really pursue, you know, better economic opportunities. It underpins community diversity, and it underpins a lot of environmental sustainability concepts. And it's really been at the top of community concern for a very long time. In fact, it's number one. The 2017 National Citizen Survey results showed that only 6% of Palo Altons think that the availability of affordable, quality housing is good or very good.
And this has been reflected in your own priorities. So when you have your offsite, we also had PTC Chair Ed Lowing say, this is the year of housing, this is on our agenda. It's on everyone's agenda, and affordable housing has been the top of the list for some time now. I'm going to skip some of these to try to stick to our seven minute goal. But the fact is, we've fallen pretty short, and we fell short in every housing cycle. The previous slides I skipped over, the last two decades, each housing cycle, we fall short. We fall shorter and shorter. So in this last housing cycle, 2014, when we redoubled our commitment to affordable housing, the goal line, which is the number of, for moderate income, actual versus our RHA allocations, you can see that the gap continues to grow. But as you get to the more vulnerable people, it gets wider and wider. So as you get to low income, our gap is now up to 134 units. As you get to very low income, our gap is now up to 264 units. Basically, from the get-go, we keep falling behind. Our number of permits are low, and this is across the board for all housing, but I'm specifically calling out low and very low and moderate income housing, where we fall well behind what our targets are. And this is an environment where we all say this is our top priority. So it's not enough just to want affordable housing, we have to plan and zone for it. So there are real consequences to how we use and permit land. And the most obvious is that our current zoning, and this is the affordable housing overlay that's in front of you, is trying to address, makes it hard to develop this housing and to make it pencil out. And specifically, it's the density maximums, the parking minimums, the FAR limits, all added to costs. The parking is a great example. 16% of rent goes to pay for parking, whether or not the renter uses the space. Lower income people who live near transit have lower car ownership. Now, I see comments where people say, do low-income people magically not have cars? No people are arguing that low-income people don't have cars. The empirical evidence is that lower-income people, when living near transit, have lower rates of car ownership, which leads to a lower parking use ratio. And this is not just something that is being suggested, it's empirically studied. And so what we're asking you is that when we have these kinds of projects, which is exactly what this overlay zone is, that parking ratios can be adjusted. That's all that's being suggested. Now, last slide that all go on this issue, we have a supply issue. In order to spur supply, you have to make it more affordable to build the kind of housing at Palo Alto Housing, abode services, and other agencies can actually put up and maintain. And not only that, it should be flexible, to allow for as many projects as possible. This is vastly superior to the PC zoning process, and we think that we should be allowing projects for over 60% AMI, because why reject good projects? Sites that are a half mile from major transit, allow 50-foot height limit that are adjacent to RM15, RN30, and also allow family housing through lower parking standards. And the overlay could also consider increased FAR near fixed light rails, or fixed rail stations like University Ave and Cal Ave.
So again, there's, it's been suggested that the Wilton Court Project could proceed with a planned community, but I think, and we don't need to rehash this, I think you yourself suggested that we should go forward with an affordable housing overlay. But the other thing about the PC, and there was a moratorium placed on it in 2013, it's just not predictable. We can't just keep running in circles. We need the housing now. We haven't built any affordable housing in nine years, and people have been waiting on the list desperately. We need a more predictable tool and a better affordable housing, a set of project requirements for affordable housing, and then the Affordable Housing Combining District does that. It really helps define the project standards, where it applies, and the structured process, and I think that is important. We need a structured process to approve new projects. So the PC zoning is the opposite. It's unpredictable, it's narrow, and everything has to be renegotiated and wastes public time and money. I just want to also share that we've had broad support for this overlay, and so I'm going to share the 318 signatures that we've collected in support of this effort. You may not like everybody on this list, but they've signed it, and they're here to have their voices heard. So signatories 61 to 120, these are mostly community members here in Palo Alto, and their voices are not to be discounted. So we urge you again to please move this forward tonight. We recommend starting with the original staff version and help the greatest number of people up to 120% AMI, because they are vulnerable. Apply the broadest range of sites. I recommend keeping a broader transit radius, and then again, enable the financial feasibility and flexibility for affordable housing. Eric's mentioned many, but there are many other applicants other than Palo Alto Housing who can take advantage of these requirements and really help us get the affordable housing that we need in our community and that so many community members have been waiting desperately for. So thank you again for your attention and your time to this really important issue and for helping to solve the social justice issue of our time.
Right on the button, you had 16 seconds left.
Fill it, fill it, fill it.
There is someone sitting next to us with two kids here who's not on the short list. We couldn't give up all of our time for them, but we did compress 10 minutes into seven. So if you could see it...
Good, thank you so much. In that case, who is that person?
Jessica.
Okay. Somebody, is it you, Jessica? I think somebody gave you their time.
I appreciate that, thanks so much. My kids, probably more. I'm Jessica Clark, third-generation Palo Altoan. Both my husband and I were born and raised here and are raising our three children. My husband is a therapist at a hospital, and we have been on the BMR purchase list for six years, ever since the skyrocketing rental prices gave us no other choice but to close my home daycare and lose my income. Palo Altons for Sensible Zoning emailed an urgent call for support tonight, and there was one item of support they listed, which I found very unsettling. The email stated, "City staff is recommending 120% AMI limit, which would include workers who make over $100,000 a year!" exclamation mark. Why should we allow workers who can afford their own market rate housing, push out those workers who are struggling to pay their daily bills? That's not right. The overlay should only focus on those workers who are in the low income of 60% AMI limit. This false statement clearly demonstrates the lack of understanding PAS has in regards to the full range and severity of the housing crisis in our community. My family makes $100,000 a year. After rent, we struggle to afford our bills and the simple necessities like food and clothing for our children. I am here to tell you that no family in Palo Alto making $100,000 a year is able to afford a market rate housing and rent. It's simply untrue. The original staff version does not exclude those in the 60% AMI income range, nor does it try to diminish their struggle. It simply gives the opportunity to expand our options and help a wider range of people in our community who are also struggling on a daily basis. If we do not do this, we will not be able to support and assist our teachers, first responders, and healthcare workers who make around the 120% AMI, setting ourselves up for the absolute destruction of the core foundation of our community. So tonight, on this April 9th, which you have all declared the very first day Palo Alto Day, I want to ask you what that means to you. Are we a city that only cares about the wealthy? Are we a city that puts parking spaces above people? Do we want diversity of all kinds in our city? Give us hope, and please keep the original version of the ordinance. Happy Palo Alto Day.
Thank you, and thank you to... And thank you to the people who relinquish their time. For those of you who have been here before, we discourage clapping and/or booing. So if you agree with the speaker who just spoke, or any speaker that's coming, if you would do that instead, it makes it a lot easier, and we can move on to the next speaker. As I've said, we've got lots of you tonight. So we have, as you can see up on the board, Marjorie, I'm not sure if it's Gamille or Gamal, Linnea Wickstrom, and then Per Maresca. So if you would come, if you are close, Marjorie, are you here? Does anyone know who Marjorie is, and is she in the house? If not, Linnea Wickstrom.
Good evening, council members.
Just pull the mic right next to you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Niss, Vice Mayor Philseth, and council members. I'm a 50-plus-year Palo Alto resident with a developmentally-disabled adult son, Per Maresca, who's here tonight and who will speak. I'm here to advocate for affordable housing in general, and affordable housing with set asides for the developmentally-disabled in particular. As we all know, so many people need affordable housing, and the need is particularly acute for low-income and extreme-low-income people, including homeless families and veterans. In these groups, the developmentally-disabled are the least visible, though those needing housing in Palo Alto alone are in the hundreds. Palo Alto's developmentally-disabled are stakeholders in housing matters. They all need affordable housing for the long haul, when parents will no longer be around to provide housing in their own community with the agencies that support our children. AMI is a hot topic. Speaking for the developmentally-disabled who are extreme-low income, I support 60% AMI, but I recognize the need, as Jessica just laid it out in a general ordinance, for elasticity to accommodate a broader range of people. If you choose to stick with 120% AMI, please add significant allotments for extreme-low and low-income residents. To act for the future, I urge you to, at a minimum, support the original AH combining district proposal. Having spoken at PT&amp;C meetings and listened to the discussion there, I also specifically urge that the council include the March 27th Minority Recommendation from the PTC. Let's minimize detailed obstacles and slowdowns to affordable housing, and let's get started tonight on making it possible. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Per Maresca, and then Jan Stokely.
[inaudible]
Thank you.
Mayor Niss, Vice Mayor Philseth, and council members. My name is Per Maresca. I'm here with my good friend Christopher Moore, who is right beside me. We're speaking for ourselves and for hundreds of others in this area who are developmentally-disabled. I live on a very low income from Social Security and a part-time job working at the Marriott Residence in Los Altos, and I need affordable housing. I was born and raised in Palo Alto for 26 years, and I want to continue to live here with the community supports I need. A lot of people think that my parents shouldn't be able, should be able to take care of housing for me, but even my parents won't be able to do that forever, and many young adults' parents can't afford to help them now. We need a lot more affordable housing, especially for low-income people in Palo Alto. I am asking you to come up with an ordinance that can make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. And our next person to speak is Jan Stokely, and followed by Shirley Wang.
Good evening. I'm Jan Stokely, Executive Director of Housing Choices. We're a nonprofit organization working with approximately 150 families with adults with developmental disabilities who live here in Palo Alto, who are looking for affordable housing for their adult child for the long term. I won't repeat what you've already heard, because I couldn't say it as well as they did, but I want you to know these are longtime Palo Alto residents who would benefit tremendously from the opportunity to remain in Palo Alto. And so we strongly support the ordinance that's before you. I think it's important to know that many people with developmental disabilities are in the extremely-low-income category. So an ordinance that incentivizes 100% units at 120% of area median income would leave out that part of your population. Fortunately, we're blessed here in Palo Alto to have a very strong, mission-driven housing nonprofit, Palo Alto Housing, which is very much committed to targeting the lower-income groups. But I would urge you, as you look at the ordinance, to provide strong incentives for affordable housing and to find ways to incentivize the inclusion of units for people with very low income and extremely-low income. That's the greatest unmet share of your regional housing needs assessment allocation that remains unmet. So please focus not only on those at 120% of area median income, but also those who are extremely-low and very-low income. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Shirley Wang, and then Jamming Robinson.
Thank you for having me. I'm a Walton resident. I support affordable housing. Oops. However, the current WCP under-parking design is absolutely ridiculous. First, only and driving a car is human right. Why offer only half parking spot to low-income residents? And even if few of them do not own a car now, that doesn't mean they cannot own any car in the future. Offering only half parking spot to them is totally disrespectful, unless you do plan to make the residents bid for the limited onsite parking, which totally defeat the purpose to serve the low-income community. Or you do plan to sell the street parking permits to both the new and existing residents in the neighborhood? Second, the problem of parking will not be resolved by public transportation. San Francisco is a top number-two city with the best public transportation in the U.S. 98% of San Francisco population lives within a half-mile of transit that operates regularly, yet it is also listed the number-six worst city for car drivers in terms of lack of parking, traffic congestion, and higher likelihood of accidents. Our public transportation offers only a fraction of what San Francisco has. We certainly welcome new residents, but we do not want daily competition for the parking spots. Last, but not least, safety for our kids' cyclists is our top priority. Our Terman Middle School will be soon renamed to Fletcher Middle School to honor Alan Fletcher, the bicycle lady who made Palo Alto a bicycle-friendly community. Without enough street space, how can we ensure the safety of our cycling kids? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robinson is definitely the last name, and I'm not sure I have the first name correctly.
My name is Jamming Robinson. Dear council member, my speech very, very short. First, I support affordable housing. But when we support affordable housing, we need to think clearly and how to do it the best. I only have two points I want to mention. I think affordable housing, the goal, is truly for the people, the income is up to 60%. So for myself, if you ask myself to pay my tax to the people using affordable housing to 120, I think I will think twice, because affordable housing is really for the people really need a house. For the 61 units only have 0.5 for the parking, I think that's not reasonable. And if you ask a younger generation, they will give up the house, but they will not give up the car. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think, Pay Lynn?
Lou.
And followed by Danny Ross.
I'm a Ventura community resident, and recently, there are going to be three big, major projects going on on El Camino Real. And I like to draw a map. This is El Camino Real, and then there are three, three streets perpendicular to El Camino Real, which is Madera, Walton, and Cutner. So, but each street, on top of those streets, have a three project. Right now, I suggest the city council, if you have time, to go to the street, take a look. For example, Walton Avenue, it's supposed to be two-way drive. Right now, can only afford one way, one car to drive through. And all the, to both sides was parked, jammed parked. And there is another restaurant, this Hong Kong restaurant, on the corner, one side of the Walton. And then the other side will build 60-unit affordable housing. First of all, I want to be clear, I support affordable housing to be built in there or any other, you know, reasonable place, but I hope the city council can consider the existing conditions of those streets. It's really crowded right now. Anytime, even from in the morning, light, traffic condition, it's already parked, there are some cars already parked there, you can only drive through one way. You know, like the other family, you know, I don't think they have a three child, they can afford only half-car space.
Thank you. Danny Ross, and then Lauren Bigelow.
Good evening, Mayor Niss, Vice Mayor Philseth, council members. I'm Danny Ross, Senior Development Manager for Palo Alto Housing. I'm here to lend our support for the Affordable Housing Overlay Ordinance. We support the original draft of the ordinance as presented by staff this past Valentine's Day, holding to the .5 per-unit parking ratio, including affordable housing for income levels up to 120% of area median income. We also continue to ask for more flexibility regarding retail. State standards for affordable housing are .5 car stalls per apartment for affordable housing near high-quality transit. Parking is extremely expensive to provide, so providing more parking than is necessary takes money away from the development of affordable housing and can lead to less housing provided, or even possibly kill a project. A study conducted by TRANSFORM, along with the California Housing Partnership Corp., was cited by the state in its creation of a permanent source of funding for affordable housing near transit as part of the CAP and Trade Program. This research was written up in a report called "Why Creating and Preserving Affordable Homes Near Transit is Highly Effective Climate Protective Strategy." This is available on TRANSFORM's website. State density bonus law also allows the use of the .5 per-unit ratio. We believe that housing needs are not being met at all income levels. We support the staff's proposal, which includes all incomes up to 120% AMI, even though any designation over 80% would not qualify for tax credits. Tax credit financing is the foundation upon which most affordable housing is built, which means that many units above 80% AMI are not likely to be built. The average rent for a two-bedroom in Palo Alto is approximately $3,670, which is only affordable to a household earning over $130,000 a year. For a three-person household, that is just slightly less than the 120% AMI. Although it would take more creative financing to house this population, we believe in including a wider AMI range in this ordinance to capture more people in need of housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lauren Bigelow, and then Nicole Monto, I think it's Montoyo.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. For those of you, I have not had the pleasure of meeting yet. My name is Lauren Bigelow, and I'm the Below Market Rate Administrator for Palo Alto Housing, who administers the BMR programs for the cities of Palo Alto and Mountain View. So often in Palo Alto, parking is cited as the stumbling block that brings the creation of housing to a halt. However, in the near 50 years that Palo Alto Housing has been building affordable housing in this city, we have found that good affordable housing, placed well, and near transit, does not add to a parking problem. We have 24 sites in Palo Alto, and most of them have too much parking. For example, down the street at Oak Court, we have 97 spots for 53 units of family housing. We're currently loaning out 15 spaces to the History Museum and still have too much parking. Also nearby, Alma Place has 107 studios, and only 40 of the 48 spaces for residents are assigned. That's a ratio of .37 spaces per unit. According to our development team, we are spending roughly $80,000 a space, money that could be leveraged to house people and not cars. At this point, most of our waiting lists are closed because we thought it unfair to keep adding names to lists that are longer than five years. Any future properties we plan to build will and should vary based on the income limits and location, but there is no reason to try for .5 spaces per bedroom unless you are looking to waste precious resources. It is inefficient and ineffective. Thank you so much for your time and efforts to build more affordable housing.
Thank you. Nicole, did I get close in your last name?
Close. It's Montoho.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Nicole Montoho, and I'm here from Silicon Valley at home. We are an affordable housing policy and advocacy organization with over 200 members, and we represent several affordable housing developers and service providers. And a lot of those developer members of ours will tell you that affordable housing is extremely difficult to build, and while we stand behind you and support you in achieving your housing work plan goals, we are asking you to make it easier to build affordable housing. And just to give you a sense of how hard it is, we have seen through the data that the price of land in our metro area has increased. It's doubled since 2000, and that's amidst our very challenging state and policy landscape. And I know these are things that you cannot control, but, and these are things that we are working on, and at the same time, we need you to do your part by taking action on the things that you can control. And these include zoning and development requirements. You can open up new land opportunities and control how feasible the requirements are, and you can control the permitting processes by creating flexibility and ensuring that developments don't get stuck in the process for many years. And it's important, we feel, to do that by allowing for ministerial approval of changes to individual project requirements. And you can do all of these things by approving the Affordable Housing Combining District ordinance, and we urge you to move forward with the original February 14th version of the ordinance and consider the recommendations to increase the flexibility within the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Bob Moss, Winter Delenbach, and Liz Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor Niss and council members. I support affordable housing, but it has to be done right. And one of the things that has to be done right is that when it's built near single-family zones, you have to protect the integrity of the single-family properties. The council's taken a position to protect the existing R1 zones, which means if you're going to be building affordable housing along El Camino, for example, you don't put a 50-foot-tall building within 50 feet of a resident of a single-family development. You keep it at 35 feet. Furthermore, the people who live in the single-family zones expect to have a certain consistency of development nearby. Some of the things that are proposed for affordable housing nearby are inconsistent and should not be accepted. For example, parking. Saying that people of low income don't have cars is absurd. The people in the trailer park and at 630 Los Robles not only have cars that they park on-site, they park along Los Robles, and they park along the side streets, they have cars. And in fact, there are thousands of very-low-income people in Santa Clara County who have cars because that's where they sleep. I urge you, when you look at affordable housing, to look at how it is consistent with development nearby. And by the way, zoning for affordable development will not create affordable housing with the cost of land and development in Palo Alto. It takes subsidies in addition to the zoning. So saying I'm putting in affordable housing, that I put an overlay down, is nonsense, unless you know where the money's going to come from to actually build the property. So you have to do both consistently and simultaneously. Otherwise, you're not going to get any affordable housing. Otherwise, you're not going to get any affordable housing.
Thank you. Winter Dillonback, and then Liz Gardner.
I live in Barron Park. I want more all BMR projects built in this town. I've wanted it for decades. It's exactly what we, the housing that we need most in this town. And to house a range of people with different housing needs, disabled folks, seniors, families, et cetera. One suggestion that I do have, I always think that suggestions make things better, not worse. I'm concerned about the, there are two FARs connected in this draft ordinance. One is 2.0, one is a 2.4 FAR. Currently, we have big hotels on San Antonio with a 2.0 FAR. I think it's a mistake to allow an even bigger 2.4 FAR that's combined residential with commercial. To have that along El Camino adjacent to some of the most modest neighborhoods in Palo Alto with neighborhoods of very small, single-family, single-story houses, I think a maximum combined FAR of 2.0 residential, non-residential, is more than sufficient instead of the 2.4. So please, 2.0 FAR, I hope you will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Gardner, and then Ryan Kerrigan.
Liz Gardner, Commissioner for Santa Clara County Housing Authority and also resident of Palo Alto. Forty-five percent of Palo Alto residents are renters. I regularly listen to my neighbors who live a nearly grave existence trying to compete for housing in a high-stakes, high-tech wage-earning marketplace. While my husband and I both work, we still not, we still cannot afford market-rate rents. I was born and raised just north of San Francisco. I understand firsthand what it's like being homeless in an affluent Bay Area community. I was nine when my family sought refuge in a state park campground using a borrowed tent. That was only one of several times while growing up that we were without permanent address. My family's unstable living situation led me to drop out of school and go to work. But I did eventually learn, earn a degree, secured employment, and resettled here in Palo Alto for jobs and to be near my children's grandparents while they age in place. So as someone who receives Section Eight housing assistance, I am honored to serve as a commissioner on the Santa Clara Housing, County Housing Authority's Board. This agency administers the federal Section Eight voucher program for our county's low-income residents and develops affordable housing rental properties. So Mayor Ness and city council, you have renewed energy and determination to tackle our city's housing deficit problem. The city's new housing work plan is very encouraging. Please adopt an Affordable Housing Combining District Ordinance so that more low-income residents can afford to stay in Palo Alto. I urge members of our community to open their minds and hearts to families like mine by saying yes to affordable communities like the one we live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Kerrigan, and then Bonnie Packer, and then Annette Ross.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Ryan Kerrigan, Government Affairs with the Silicon Valley Association of Realtors. Thank you. We obviously want to be a partner and support you guys in your efforts to produce more housing in Palo Alto. And particularly in light of April being Fair Housing Month, we recognize affordable housing as being a critical component of providing access to housing for everyone in Palo Alto. That's why we view this Affordable Housing Combining District as a good tool to help encourage affordable developers to utilize it and develop here. Quite honestly, the underlying zoning restrictions and the focus on providing this affordable housing development in transit-oriented districts is something that we view as crucial to the success in many of the issues that our region faces moving forward with regard to transportation and otherwise. So we, again, really want to recognize this, encourage you to support and adopt this tonight, and otherwise, give our support to producing more affordable housing and homeownership housing and housing of all types in Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Packer, and then Annette Ross.
Good evening, Mayor Ness, council members. I'm speaking for the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto. In the letter the League submitted to you, we urge that you adopt an Affordable Housing Overlay Ordinance that will create opportunities for and eliminate barriers to the development of affordable housing. To do this, we strongly recommend that you adopt this ordinance with the following changes. Expand the scope to include the Research Park and general manufacturing districts. Include language that allows some flexibility regarding the distances from the transit corridors. For streamlining purposes, allow the planning director, not the city council, to approve increases in floor area ratio and heights where appropriate, particularly in the areas around university and California avenues. Allow the planning director, not city council, to waive the retail requirements in all districts. Retail usually requires more parking, which is expensive to provide. The presence of retail in affordable housing projects severely complicates the funding opportunities, thus making an affordable housing project financially infeasible. To demonstrate that you are serious about meaningfully addressing the housing crisis, we urge you to reject the majority recommendation of the Planning and Transportation Commission. That decision, we feel, is contrary to the city council's priority on housing, ignores the housing crisis, flies in the face of the housing policies of the comprehensive plan and the housing element, and turn a deaf ear to the professional testimony of many affordable housing professionals and to the compelling testimony of those suffering from the lack of adequate housing in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Ross.
If we are going to make, to relax our standards, why not do it for maximum benefit to the community? While the draft ordinance is for 100% affordable housing, it is not specific about who has priority for residency. The PTC recommendation to separate affordable housing into two work items reflects an appreciation of this city's most pressing housing need. Priority needs to go to those with an income below 60% AMI, with exception for those with special needs. The Wilton Project is a unique opportunity to provide housing for the valued members of our community who need it most. If we do not, we risk driving them out and lessening the diversity of this city. And if we allow those with an income at 120% AMI to qualify for this housing, well, that's just plain wrong at this time, given our current circumstances. And I think it's an insult to the community. With the obvious exception of the disabled, people with more money have more options. Based on 2016 census data, and I have it here with me, 120% of the AMI for Palo Alto is over $164,000. This begs the question, is this an affordable housing overlay or a tool for relaxing building standards and building high-density housing? I urge you to support option two and make this an ordinance that works for those who need it most. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Max Kapinski.
Hello, city council, mayor. This plan that's been brought to you tonight is, of course, it's not perfect. There, it could use many improvements. It could use increased density all over town. It could use byright approval for affordable housing projects, as has been suggested. It could use further lessening of parking requirements. But I think, and I agree with Palo Alto Forward, that it's good enough to be passed tonight in its unadulterated form. You can see, everyone can see how pressing the housing crisis is all over the Bay Area and how little Palo Alto has done to fulfill its obligations to its citizens and to the law under the Regional Housing Needs Act. So I agree with Palo Alto Forward, and I encourage you to pass this without any changes as originally written. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita, time for Rita. Rita Vorell, and then Hamilton Hutchins.
Good evening, again. So I'm going to go way outside of my comfort zone here, and I'm going to really say, the city council is elected. The planning commissioner is not, or the planning of the housing development, whoever Hillary is, she's not elected. And actually, for the League of Women Voters, who I have supported in the past, to say that we bypass the democratic process, I find actually very unsettling. We do need affordable housing, but that's not the way to do it. The other thing is, you know, I'm kind of under the impression that the commissions, when they discuss items, they talk, they argue, they bicker, the whole thing, but then they come up with a recommendation. And that majority recommendation goes to staff, staff brings it to the city council for a vote. I have never, in my experience, seen where a minority opinion from a commission comes forward. And I honestly have never seen where the vice chair of a commission uses her platform as the vice chair to present a minority opinion. So I will be writing you tomorrow, Molly Stump, and asking you what in our municipal code allows a minority opinion to be expressed at a public meeting, because I think this is a very dangerous precedent. I think it means that the minority, the majority vote of a commission no longer holds as a majority vote. It means, it could mean that minority opinions now are as important as a majority vote. And I do not think that's the way you want to go. Thank you.
Palo Alto Housing's Wilton Avenue site currently has proposed all BMR housing for residents with 60% of area median income or less. They did this to qualify for needed sources of funding and because those folks are the folks who need help the most. However, the current Affordable Housing Combining District includes housing for folks up to 100% of AMI, which we just heard can be up to 160,000 in income. That can include single tech workers, even with stock options. These folks already can afford local housing, already have good choices, and this would displace lower-income folks who truly need help. Please do not include 120% AMI in this district and do not provide the same level of developer benefits for reduced community benefit. Actual average parking demand in Palo Alto is between .5 and 1.3 spaces per unit. So it will significantly worsen parking problems, including starving of needed customer parking, if we take the proposed district as-is. Please require a minimum of one space per unit, except for special-needs residents. Allowing this proposal to displace first-floor retail in neighborhood commercial will require local residents to drive or drive further instead of walking or biking to local services. The CN Zone should not be included, but if it is, please add full protection for first-floor retail. Lastly, neighborhood residents should always have a say in nearby projects, and the city needs to insist on community meetings with a developer for the Wilton Ave site. Palo Alto Housing ignored community input at Maybell, so let's not repeat that mistake this time. Thank you.
Terry Hosmer, and Jared Bernstein, and then Becky Sanders.
Thank you, city council members. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. I would like to recommend that the council take three concrete steps to totally support affordable BMR housing, which the city desperately needs, desperately. First of all, I would like for you to support your own PTC commission, which recommended that they have the opportunity to design and work on an affordable housing ordinance that is more likely to attract BMR units and housing, which also, while also engaging the neighborhood around it. I think too often, when we build housing, we think just about the housing itself and not about how it fits into the neighborhood. I think we need to look at this neighborhood very closely and ask the neighbors and participate in discussions with them about how this housing would fit in with that neighborhood. I think the neighbors should have a lot of say and have input into this project. More outreach to the neighborhood obviously needs to be done. Second of all, the overlay, if approved, needs to be based on actual parking demand and not a hopeful or unrealistic goal that focuses, that forces, sorry, forces cars into surrounding neighborhoods. I have lived in one of those neighborhoods where cars were forced into the street, and fortunately, we have an RPP now. And if that's what you want in the Ventura neighborhood, then that's the direction that you could be going into. Lastly, very quickly, I would like to see that the council apply only the 60% AMI. And the reason this is important is because the PTC has looked at this very closely, and they've examined what affordable housing really means. And I know one of the speakers earlier mentioned that they make over $100,000 a year. I don't. I live in this city. I make nearly half of that, and yet, I still try to manage through this city. I love this town. That's the reason I'm here. And I would recommend that you stick with the 60% AMI. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Bernstein.
Hi, Jared Bernstein, 1330 Tasso. And I like affordable housing, okay, but really what I'd like to say is that density itself is good. And I've always thought, as I follow this mostly in the Palo Alto Weekly, that density is a nice thing, especially California Avenue and downtown, and walking to things is a great thing. I've lived here 39 years, first as a renter, now as a householder, and let's make this thing go forward. So I support the original ordinance, and Palo Alto Forward's remarks sounded great to me. And I just say one other thing, but I don't know how you can do it, which is, is there some way to expedite permits for these, for these developments? Because what I've read in the Merc, there was a thing by Scott Wiener, the guy from San Francisco, and it's like, okay, it's legal, and then the permitting process goes forever and ever. So let's pass something and get something built.
Becky Sanders, and then Mary Sylvester.
Good evening, Mayor Ness and council members. I am the moderator of the Ventura Neighborhood Association, and we're about three years old. Yesterday, at the monthly meeting, fourteen people who could stay for the entire time easily agreed on two specifics regarding the proposed zoning, without really any reference to Wilton Court, but Wilton Court was uppermost in our minds. The new zoning should apply only to true BMR and serve those at 60% AMI or less, and parking height and massing concerns should be site-specific. These variables are really not one-size-fits-all. Specific to Wilton Court, it's a challenge to pay for adequate parking in a BMR project. We all know that. That's why some people scramble around to justify reasons to not build adequate parking. But to solve this dilemma, surely this city could dip into its BMR funds or some other funds to make sure that the parking is built adequately so that we can all get off on the right start, right foot, as neighbors, and not be competing for the crumbs offered in the, for parking. Ventura's urged a community meeting where they can meet in a more informal setting and have conversation with youth leaders that know and have the answers. And so we would like that very much, more of an opportunity to meet with the developer and other people. And also, my eyes popped out of my head when I saw that the staff report for tonight came with a recommendation that was, that was not proposed to the PTC in March, namely, expanding the community it would serve from 60% AMI all the way up to 120% AMI. Did anyone else notice that? And that seemed really irregular to me, so I wanted to draw your attention to that, to what appears to me to be a kind of a bait and switch lest you believe you are voting on 60% BMR, 60% AMI, when you are in fact voting on housing to serve 120% of AMI. So please take note, and thank you very much, all of you.
Mary Sylvester.
Good evening, Mayor Ness and council members. I'm Mary Sylvester, longtime Palo Alto resident, and I'm here tonight to support affordable housing. And I'm here tonight to support affordable housing with a focus on our most vulnerable citizens, seniors, the disabled, and our low-wage service workers, that bring tremendous value and diversity to our community. Hence, I urge an ordinance that sets a 60% or below AMI cap. I would also like projects to be site-specific in terms of planning, design. I think that we have to be sensitive to neighborhoods. And as to the El Camino and Wilton Avenue projects, I really strongly urge you to have planning staff work with the neighbors in Ventura. They're already under tremendous pressure from all the development going on on El Camino, and now they have the Frye's site development to look and plan for. I also urge that projects be fully parked. I was interested in hearing from the woman who is representing the Palo Alto Housing Corporation, saying one of their projects has surplus parking. This is something that we should look more into, but for the time being, we need fully parked sites. I also strongly disagree with the League of Women Voters as to expedited review, and echo Ms. Verhill's comments. This council is elected by the citizenry, and it is your legal and ethical responsibility to review projects that come before our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Ross, and then Grant Dasher, and Gina Dahmer.
Good evening, council. My remarks focus on option one initially. I would agree with Commissioner Waldvogel in his letter in your packet, under the charter and the government code applicable to charter cities. You're entitled to a recommendation from your planning commission. You don't have it. I would take issue with Section 6 of the proposed ordinance before you, in reliance on the environmental impact report certified for your comprehensive plan. As you know, that omitted the mandatory element of implementation, a form of what's before you tonight. I would respectfully suggest that there are changed circumstances under Sequa Guidelines Section 15162, since adoption of that, even assuming that it addressed the implementation section. You've still deferred that. Among those are the fact that you have concurrent construction planned for the old sites of Bank of America, Olive Garden, Foot Locker, all within a quarter mile of the Ventura neighborhood. I think you should favor option two, set the matter for expedited hearing before the planning commission, where it can be properly assessed under Sequa to truly address the issues of environmental justice. The recommendation of staff does not do that now. You are not compliant with Sequa.
Grant Dasher, followed by Gina Dahmer.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Just want to thank the planning commission and the council, and all the members of the community who put so much effort into this. You know, I'm often accused of being radical in my views on housing. I think actually my views are sort of in line with a lot of people in my generation, but I've sort of embraced the label a little bit. I think that we, as a city and a community, need to radically reorient our attitude towards this problem. The problem has grown so severe that we need to substantially increase our willingness to take risks. It's true that this ordinance is imperfect. It has a number of flaws. But I'm pretty sure that we wouldn't even be talking about it if the Wilton Court project wasn't proposed on the table. And I think if we don't approve something like it, the next Wilton will probably go back and hide in a corner somewhere. The only way to get progress on this is to take some action, to create some amount of predictability for developers of affordable housing, and allow them to move forward. We may need to fix it in the future, but the worst thing that happens is that we have a couple of years where we have a slightly imperfect ordinance. We have a moral obligation to do something here, and we need to take action. A couple of quick technical points. There's been a lot of discussion about 60% AMI. It's my understanding that the Lytech program now extends up to 80% AMI. So if anything, you want to define things in those terms. Also, this debate about 120% is a little weird to me. This is in reference to the definition of affordable housing that's pre-existing in the city's municipal code. That's where this is all incorporated from. So if there's an issue with that, we should take it up in the context of that definition, not in this project. I think what Jessica said is also accurate. And finally, these are with reference to the TCAC numbers, which come out of, I believe, the Santa Clara County. So the 160,000 number, I think, is not correct. I think the 120% AMI is actually lower than that, as it's incorporated by reference through all these sort of legal things. I'm not a lawyer, but I think that's right. Someone on the staff can correct me about that. That's my final point. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Dahmer, and Carol Lamont.
Good evening, Mayor Niss, council members. My name is Gina Dahmer, and I live here in Palo Alto. I also have the privilege of leading the Silicon Valley Community Foundation's public policy portfolio. Part of it is that affordable housing. So this is something that I care very deeply about during the day and during the night. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. I will be very brief. Every day, we all see families and individuals making their lives in RVs and El Camino all around our community. At my work, we surveyed these folks. 70% of them are working, whether in Mountain View or Palo Alto. So these are working families with kids in the school district, by the way. And my heart breaks every time I see the living conditions. We know of college students that live in their cars. The saddest part, we know of teachers living in their cars. I'm not even going to, into the need of the homeless population right now. But we're talking about working families in the tech, in our tech community. We're talking about restaurants, people who work in our restaurants, in our schools. Millennials that I work with all have a strategy that they will work for two years, get the Silicon Valley a brand on their resume, and leave because they can't afford to stay. Putting, well, in most folk, you know the data, that most folks in Silicon Valley are planning to leave at some point. Yes, most. So we are in a crisis. It's been said often today. And we will be judged on what we did to ameliorate that crisis. This is the time, and if I'm not appealing to your heart right now, let me appeal to your brain. Imagine what this wonderful city would look like if only those that bought their homes 30 and 40 years ago can stay. Imagine what that will do to our competitiveness, to our environment, and to the vibrancy, inclusiveness, and diversity of the city, which is what we all love about it. So we need to create a city for people of all ages, professions, and ways of life. And I ask you to support the, what you have in your...
Thank you. Carol Lamont, Fran Wegstaff, and then Patricia Seifer.
Hello, members of the city council and mayor. I'm here to support the original Affordable Housing Overlay Ordinance, as recommended by staff, plus the adjustments proposed by Councilmember Adrian Fine. I've read these while I was here, and I think the adjustments that he is suggesting make a lot of sense. I have worked for decades to increase the supply of affordable housing in the public, nonprofit, and philanthropic sector. And I remember the days when Palo Alto was a leader in the Bay Area in opening the doors of affordable homes to people. Palo Alto opened a door to affordable home for me when I was homeless with my little boy, way back in the '70s. Changed my life. But for the last decade, I'm sad to say that Palo Alto's reputation has sunk to the bottom of the barrel. We are not producing anywhere near the need for affordable homes. The jobs-housing imbalance has increased. It's just way out of sync. This ordinance will go a long way to opening more doors to affordable homes. I volunteer, I'm retired now, so I volunteer. I drive cars for a lot of people who can't drive, who are disabled and seniors here. I know, they don't need cars. They don't need parking spaces. What they need is an affordable home. So I look forward to the outcome of tonight's meeting, and I'm hoping for the best. Please be the leaders that our community needs.
Thank you for coming. I'm Fran Wegstaff. Welcome, by the way.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm a 35-year resident of Palo Alto. Came to Palo Alto to take a job running what was then a small nonprofit, Mid Peninsula Housing, and retired about eight years ago after being in that job for some 26 years and working in 38 communities around the Bay Area. So I had a chance to take a good look around about what works and what doesn't. And I'm not going to try to address the need. I know some very eloquent people spoke to it, and I know that everyone on the council understands the extreme need that we're under. But I do want to tell you that the Affordable Housing Overlay in other communities has worked very well. I used it myself in three developments in Mountain View that have resulted in almost 400 units of senior housing. In those developments, the Affordable Housing Overlay was used to increase the density. We worked very closely with planning. We had a lot of flexibility on parking. We had a lot of flexibility on design. We ended up with some lovely designs that still serve the community very well. It hasn't been lost on me that both north and south of us, cities are doing a lot more to create housing than Palo Alto. So what's going on here? I think we really need to step out of our comfort zone for a while to get this done. The Affordable Housing Overlay is an excellent tool. I think it can get us there. And the discussions about parking are valid, but I ask you tonight to rather than look backwards about what parking densities, what parking requirements used to be, to look forward and look how quickly how we transport ourselves is changing. Lyft, Uber, soon we'll have driverless cars. There was an excellent article in The Atlantic about a year ago, about how driverless cars are going to change land use, because we won't need all these parking lots, and we certainly won't need all these super-expensive parking spaces. They're eating up that precious affordable housing money. So please approve the ordinance without amendments. It makes sense. It's good for Palo Alto, and it's morally right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a 56-year resident of Midtown. As such, I'm extremely aware of our current shortage of moderate and below-moderate housing. Compared to when I moved here with my husband, I strongly support the council's expressed goal of creating 300 housing units per year between now and 2030. I want Palo Alto to be the diverse community I remember. To do that, I believe we desperately need to immediately adopt the Affordable Housing Combining District proposal, about as recommended by the minority statement of the planning commission. I support the ability to relax setback, parking, and ground-floor retail requirements, and increase FAR. I also believe that some relaxation of the 50-foot height limit would do much to make more affordable housing feasible. In appropriate locations, taller buildings can even enhance the appropriate appearance of our city. In my opinion, some of the current tall buildings indeed do that. I don't think we have to worry about abuse of these relaxations, because the individual projects will be reviewed. They won't just be gone through. So I urge you to approve the district tonight, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Trina Loverchek, Lenny Molina, and Deb Goldin.
Good evening, Mayor Niss and other council members. My name's Trina Loverchek. I'm also a longtime resident, 49 years of Palo Alto. I want to support the staff recommendation for the Affordable Housing Overlay. Low- and moderate-income residents are getting more and more priced out of Palo Alto due to the lack of affordable housing available. The Overlay Ordinance will help developers meet zoning and community issues that threaten their chance to provide this much-needed housing. It will also help them arrange for funding for these projects. The city's goal of permitting 300 units a year is woefully behind, and this is also one of your city council housing priorities. Allowing flexibility in providing retail and parking will be a benefit to affordable housing developers. Studies have shown that low- and moderate-income residents have fewer cars, not no cars, but fewer cars, and that they use public transportation more, thus creating less traffic. In order to keep Palo Alto a diverse place for all of us to live, we need all types of housing. We need basic service workers, like baristas, housekeepers, car mechanics, plumbers. Having them commute from places like Tracy or Los Banios takes a toll on their personal time, and it contributes to air pollution and general degrading of our environment. So I urge you to approve the Affordable Housing Overlay measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny Molina, and then Deb Goldin.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lenny Molina, and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters and the Housing and Transportation Committee, and support our letter on this issue. I also live a block off El Camino, and two short blocks from the corner of El Camino and Wilton, where the overlay zone could potentially be applied. I have lived in my house for 47 years, paying close attention to the commercial activities in this area. As a resident, the Barren Park Association president for five years, and a now-retired city planner. During the time I have lived there, I cannot think of a single new building having been built in the section of El Camino from Hanson Way to Los Robles, except for Key School at that intersection. There is a reason for that. Many of the lots are small and shallow and not attractive to retail developers, or any kind of developer, under existing zoning. A new housing development would revitalize the area while fulfilling a critical need for affordable housing in a location that could not be better for transit. Please approve the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, so that Palo Alto Housing will have some clear direction on the potential success of its proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Goldin, Lisa Van Dusen, and then John Kelly.
According to a special report in The Economist, "When autonomous vehicles take over, they will be operated in fleets, making private cars and parking obsolete." Probably when that happens, the city of Palo Alto will finally have started to build some affordable housing. I'm here to support the ordinance as it stands. I see a lot of nitpicking going on in the planning commission. You can't make everybody happy. That's all.
Thank you. Lisa Van Dusen, and then John Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor Niss and council members. I am here to talk to you tonight about the importance of being intentional versus being laissez-faire in the context of affordable housing in Palo Alto. And the word affirmative comes to mind. It has a lot of meaning in this context, and it's a word that you've heard a lot about affordable housing. And it really means that we have to decide affirmatively to create and augment and encourage something that is not going to happen on its own. I think you all know that. And I'd like to call your attention to a New York Times editorial that was published yesterday, and John Kelly sent that to you. But I'd like to read a little bit about it, just an excerpt from it, because I think its reference to history is relevant, and it's something that I personally experienced, which I'll explain. So this is talking about the Fair Housing Act of 1968. And this progressive-sounding law, which requires entities that receive federal money to affirmatively further fair housing goals, was consistently undermined by officials of both parties, who had little appetite for confronting entrenched segregation. That realization came home with particular force to George Romney, Richard Nixon's HUD secretary, who initially took the law at its word and tried to enforce it by turning down grant applications from communities that continued to segregate them racially. When white communities complained directly to the Oval Office, Nixon shut down Romney's effort and eventually forced him out of government. Subsequent administration shied away from enforcing the law in ways great and small. It goes on. I urge you to read it. I meant... I mention this because my father worked with George Romney. He was the Undersecretary of Housing and Urban Development during that administration, and he left along with George Romney. And I did not know. I was in high school at that point, but I can tell you that you don't want to go down in history, and we don't as a community, as not being affirmative. Thank you.
John Kelly.
Mayor Niss, Vice Mayor Filth, with council members. You've heard from a lot of people tonight. I just want to underscore one thing. I think you've got to do something bold. You've got to do something big. As Grant Dasher said, you've got to do something radical. I want to associate myself with the comments of Vice Chair Monk, with Elaine, with Eric, with Bonnie Packer, with basically everyone who's spoken here tonight and who's told you that we have a problem here. I think you all know that. And so when people say, "We're not going to do enough. We're not going to be bold. We're going to be hamstrung because of parking, traffic, something like this," I have a very simple response. We have done this before. We have figured out how to solve those kinds of problems, and we're smart enough to do it. And contrary to what somebody was saying before, I want to commend those members of the PTC who spoke up and they saw a recommendation going to the council that was wrong. They articulated how it should be changed, and they've given you better guidance, better direction about what to do tonight. And we've also heard from many people this evening who've said, "Let's put an end to the delay. We had an election. The community spoke. The community will speak again and again and again." And it's time for the council to understand that housing is important. We don't have enough of it, and clearly, we do not have enough of it for the people who are below 60% AMI. But we do not have enough of the housing for the people in that gap region between 60 and 120% AMI, and we need to address the needs of those people as well. So you have got a projector out there in the front that says, "Build," I think it's like 3,300 to 4,500 units between now and whatever the end of the comp plan is. Do what you said you were going to do. Build those units. Build more affordable units, and give the staff the ability and give the market the ability to do what needs to be done and do it quickly, without delays, without excessive transaction costs. Thank you.
Stephanie Muñoz, and then Cepha Santos Powell.
Good evening, Mayor Niss and council members. You've heard a lot, and I agree with everything the previous speaker said and everything that all the other speakers said. And they've all told you something about inclusiveness and social justice and open your heart, and that's fine. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying, at least tonight, is open your mind. Let your inner accountant roam free and strong. If you insist on making every unit a 600-square-foot unit so that it will accommodate a family of four, you won't make it. With 300 units a year, that's $3,000 in 10 years. Well, that's pretty good, but it will be more than $3,000 total at the rate we're going because you're moving with inflation. You're moving with inflation. What you need to do is chip off the easy, the low-hanging fruit so that you can save all the HUD money for the families because they really need it. If you then take, say, the Social Security and the SSI people, the $600 a month people, remember, it comes in every single month like clockwork. You can have a building like 101 Alma that's on two acres, and it can hold 300 senior people who do not drive because the DMV won't let them drive, and they probably don't have cars. They might use some other time. And you can make sure that they don't have cars in the vicinity by parcelling out on, say, El Camino, the two RVs in the neighborhoods with parking permits. And I recommend that you do it, and do it now, and then go ahead to the hard ones, the families, because they're the ones that need your heart, and they're the ones that need that money. You can make a profit.
Thank you for coming.
$180,000 a month. That's worthwhile to a developer like me.
Cepha Santos Powell, and then followed by Zach.
Good evening. My name is Cepha Santos Powell. I'm a student at Stanford, and I'm also a member of the Stanford Coalition for Planning and Equitable 2035, also known as Scope, which advocates for equity in housing and transportation on Stanford land. As students, we are trying to push Stanford to address its role in the housing and transportation crisis. We believe that this Affordable Housing Overlay is a tool that will decrease roadblocks for Stanford land and money to be used toward affordable housing. The overlay creates the potential for affordable housing to be built on Stanford land at the Stanford Shopping Center if Stanford University were encouraged to do so. Additionally, this zoning ordinance makes it easier for affordable housing developers to build in Palo Alto. The money from Santa Clara County's Affordable Housing Fund that Stanford pays into could be used more quickly, making a much bigger impact than just letting it sit unused. Thank you.
Thank you. Zach, followed by Elaine Meyer.
My name is Zach Kirk, and I'm also part of Scope 2035. I work on homelessness and the RV residents in East Palo Alto, so just padding up my ethos. But I'm also a Stanford student, but I'm also a 20-year resident of Palo Alto. My mom and I were on the rolls for the Affordable Housing for 18 years and waited for 18 years. And then last year, she took herself off. And it comes with the realization that there's a housing crisis here, and it's something I felt in my own life and has motivated me to act. I remember when I was eight years old and our rent was $1,300. Now it's $3,000. And my mom has no retirement, and she'll eventually be displaced. And the question is, how can we move forward for here? For people who are two years old, four years old, was in that spot that I was because we had a hard time putting food on the table. I remember every lunch, I would have two McDonald's cheeseburgers. I didn't know that was because we couldn't afford any more than that, but that's what we had. And I know that this is a really difficult issue for myself, but I really urge the council with this anecdote that they think deeply about this issue. Thank you.
Good. Thank you to both the students for coming. Elaine Meyer, and then Beth Rosenthal. Looking for Elaine Meyer? Did Elaine leave? She left? Thank you. Beth Rosenthal, are you still here? There you are. And then Mark Molyneux.
Good evening, Mayor Niss and city council members. As we've heard, there is a huge amount of need expressed by people here tonight, and I think you have a very hard job making the choices that you're going to ultimately have to make. In regard to the Affordable Housing Ordinance you're considering, I would request the following. The income level to qualify for this housing should be 60% of AMI, not 120%. It is important to note that projects serving a population earning up to 60% of AMI are available for funding, particularly tax credits. Given there is so little housing locally for first-year teachers, service workers, and the disabled population, why would you pit this group in competition for housing with beginning engineers who have many more options to choose from? Secondly, the current recommendation of .5 to .3 spaces per unit leaves this project seriously underparked. If you visited this neighborhood in the evening, as another speaker said, you would find there is virtually no available street parking. To authorize construction of this complex with inadequate parking only exacerbates the problem that the city and the council continue to struggle with: the use of city streets as a dumping ground for edifices that skirt the parking requirements. Third, to determine the parking and height standards, I suggest that this ordinance be returned to the PTC for further study. This group has already done an incredible job in terms of figuring out options. Finally, there should be at least one community meeting to hear the concerns of area residents in a more informal setting than is furnished by meeting before the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Molyneux, followed by Steve Levy.
Hi there. Just a few thoughts on the general idea that anything that takes in, in fact, affordable housing needs to balance affordable housing with the needs of residents. I would say this is incorrect. Zoning powers are a new thing. Zoning powers are relatively new. They're less than 100 years old, and they are a state-of-California power which is entrusted to cities. It's entrusted a city saying, "Hey, you can do things like create zoning, but you have to basically make sure that you're in the state interest and you're not basically having a bunch of global failures through your own private interests." And Palo Alto has failed. Palo Alto has housing which is not affordable, $2 million for a home, for a market-rate home. And if it's below-market-rate units, you have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of spaces in a waiting list. Everything is a failure. You have created a failure in a local system to provide benefit to residents. So in other words, the basic, I guess, compromise from the state saying you can have zoning if you don't create failures has not been executed by Palo Alto. People around here will say, "I'm for affordable housing, but I need to see more things that balance the needs of residents." I would just say, in general, the basic needs of Palo Alto are, at all costs, create effective systems to drive housing to be affordable, period, and to drive below-market-rate units so there is no waiting list. And if they don't do that, I think it is well within the rights of the state to take away the zoning power of Palo Alto or even disincorporate the city if they do not live up to the basic obligation, the responsibility entrusted to them. It is your job to create affordable housing at all costs regardless of residential needs. You just need to do it. Residential needs are great, but first, you have to actually do what zoning laws have required you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Levy.
At the very beginning, Graham said three things. This is an ordinance that you asked for. This is the highest of the highest priorities of the council, and that the ordinance was brought forward to incentivize housing. Why? Because, as you've heard from now at least six agencies that do this professionally, you will not see projects brought forward unless they pencil out. The retail and the parking requirements, and to some extent, the density, have made projects not feasible. That's why the ordinance was drafted the way they are. It's not credible to say, "I'm for affordable housing," but then make it not feasible. Chairman Lowing gave you a way to square two of the circles. If the city wants to raise money for parking, or the city wants to raise money for retail, fine. That's a reason to go forward with the overlay ordinance, not to stop it. If they can't raise the money, the projects can only go forward with the rules that are there. As far as the 80% or the 120%, one of the council people asked Candace, "Those projects are not competitive. They're separate funding. They're separate projects. They're complementary." I think that's a mistake. Finally, as with the ADUs, you can open your heart to Linnea, and Jan, and Jessica, and all of the other people that they represent, and make Palo Alto a leader in the state, in the region, as we did with ADUs.
Thank you. Jeff Lewinsky, Amy Sung, and Rebecca Parker-Manky. And Rebecca Parker-Manky is the last person who's going to speak. So if anybody else wants to speak, would you grab a card and give it to the clerk, and we'll fit you in before 10:00, hopefully. Jeff?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. Very quickly, first of all, I agree with all the folks who say you should aim at the 60% AMI level. You know, there's over 200,000 households in the Santa Clara County that earn up to the 120% level. So I think that's just too big a group for us to target. It makes sense to go after a smaller, more focused group. Secondly, about parking. I live in one of these neighborhoods where we were told, "Don't worry. The parking regulations will be good. You'll have enough parking," and we don't. That's the Edgewood Plaza debacle with parking right now. You can ask the merchants and the residents how bad it is. There's actually some good data for affordable housing, and it comes from a study conducted by First Community Housing, which builds and manages lots of below-market-rate housing in the county. They looked not only at the occupancy rates of their parking, but they also surveyed their residents, and they made their data public, and you can go look at it. I looked at three of their projects that have a lot of good data, and those show an average of 2/3 parking space occupation per bedroom, which I think is a good way of doing it. So that's significantly above what's in the staff-proposed ordinance. But here's the thing. Everybody in those buildings were given free light rail and bus passes. And then, a significant number of people in those buildings reported that there still wasn't enough parking in those buildings. So that's 2/3 parking per unit, free bus, free rail, still not enough parking. And by the way, their study concluded that although the passes did encourage more use of transit, quote, "Residents did not report reducing the number of vehicles they owned." So that's what real data shows. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Sung and Rebecca Parker-Manky.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I brought a chart with me, display on the screen on the left, that shows what is the reality of the market. So I am here tonight as a resident of Palo Alto, but also work as a Realtor. So I'm intimately familiar with the housing market and its affordability. So the chart on display on the left, you can see the pink portion is the number of homes that have been sold in Palo Alto over the years, and then the green bar behind is the cost to purchase a home. And I'm just going to run some numbers. The income needed to purchase a market-priced home in Palo Alto is $256,000. That is about a quarter of a million. The reality is, the median home price in Palo Alto is $2.5 million, $2,675,000 to be exact. However, the median income for a two-person household is $95,000. That is how the numbers will show us why the proposal tonight for the Affordable Housing Overlay is barely needed in our community. So I am here applauding your leadership, and I know many of you ran for the office promising affordable housing and bring them to our community. So I'm so glad to see the proposal is on the table, and the time to act is now. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Rebecca.
I get to be last.
Thank you.
So first of all, I would just like to say, from everyone in Palo Alto who probably has not said it, thank you to the council for undertaking this great decision, and none of us envy you where you are sitting. So I also just want to say, I have no idea which option you should go for, but just a couple of quick things. So I'm in that missing middle. I do pay more than 30% of my income for rent, and I am not the person who needs help the most. The people who need help are the people who are in danger of becoming homeless. So, you know, people like me can be helped with all sorts of other things like repealing Costa-Hawkins and other programs. I also just want to say that we're planning this housing for the next generation. You know, it's going to take a long time to build, and we need to think about what the next generation is going to need and what they're going to do. And just through my own anecdotal exposure to millennials, two of whom I have at home, my children... my children, they are going to be much more likely to ride public transit, they're going to be much more likely to want to participate in, you know, greener environment. And just for the Wilton site in particular, which I do support, how about instead of putting in retail, the city pays to have a commercial kitchen put in, so Avenidos can use it, and we can feed our residents who go to bed hungry? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That, I think, does it, Beth, doesn't it, for our speakers for tonight? So, it is about 10 of 10. Unless somebody really needs to take a break, I would suggest we press on. Are you okay with that? Okay? If you need to jump up. So, I have lights now from several people, but I am going to take the chair's privilege and just say a couple of things before I hear from, in order. Councilmember Refine, Holman, Philseth, and Scharf. Or Scharf and Philseth, I think is actually the way it came in. And I just want to say several random things. They may not all fit together, but one of the things that I wanted to mention, because I have here a list of all the sites in Palo Alto, 33 sites where there are housing, where this is, this is housing that has been put up as affordable housing. We have not one affordable housing project on El Camino. How many of you knew that? Not one. You can drive down tomorrow and take a look. The last time we voted for an affordable housing project in Palo Alto was for 801 Alma. Most of you know where that is. And that was voted on in 2009. It takes a long time before you get from the vote that we might take tonight to actually having some affordable housing that somebody can move into. One of the reasons that I'm extremely enthusiastic about low-income housing is that we are becoming a community that is less and less diverse. We are more and more likely to have people who have very high-paying jobs who live here, which is quite different than the community that I lived in in the '70s. It wasn't like that then. You'll just have to believe me if you weren't there. But the chances of having as many people who worked at Google, or Facebook, or were in venture capital, or did investment banking, it just, aside from the fact that most of those fields didn't exist at that point. The diversity in our community is so important. It's important for your kids, it's important for you, it's important for those people who are here. Without production, you no longer get that diversity. We have been a very compassionate community. Otherwise, I could not hold this thing up with 33 different places on it for people to live in Palo Alto, and every one of these 33 places has a waiting list, usually about 500, which is rather astonishing. One last thing before I call on my colleagues, is we talked about 60 to 120 of the income, how we're looking at AMI. If you go up to 120, we're talking about the middle. And we're as concerned, in many ways, about the middle as we are about the low and the very low income. The middle would actually deal with things like teachers, it could deal with people who work in the medical field. It's very interesting. Those are as needy, I think, in many ways, as are those very low incomes. So when we think of teachers and what they make, especially beginning teachers, they come in that middle range, that we have said is equally important. So, I'll come back to this later, but I don't think it's any secret that I am particularly concerned about our lack of affordable housing, and I certainly hope we move forward in some direction tonight to address that. So, as I've said before, this is the time for comments, questions, motions. First speaker up is Councilmember Refine, followed by Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Mayor Nitz. First of all, thank you to staff for all the hard work on this over the past few months and for the report tonight. Thank you to all of our members of the PTC. I don't like to think we have a divided PTC. There was, were some contestations on this issue, but I want to thank all the PTC members for their hard work on this. And thank you, thank you, thank you to all 44 of our speakers. Housing must be a hot topic in Palo Alto. Beth, I have some slides, if you could kick them up, please. And so, I put this presentation together to gather, help me gather some of my thoughts over the past few days, but also because I'm watching some of the reporting on the issue in the Palo Alto Weekly and other newspapers, and many of the public comments we've received tonight and over the past few weeks. Thank you. I thought we could do a better job of explaining what we're doing on affordable housing in Palo Alto, and how this ordinance helps us actually achieve, as the mayor just mentioned, a more socioeconomically diverse and balanced community. So I'm going to try to go through this very quickly, and happy to answer any questions or other issues from my colleagues. Okay. So just what I want to talk about tonight. One, why is the city pursuing affordable or below-market rate housing? Two, can we define those terms? We talk a lot about affordable housing and below-market rate. I think it's important to specifically define what we mean by those. Three, what is this Affordable Housing Combining District? We also call it an Affordable Housing Overlay at times. Four, how does that compare to a planned community zone, which is recommended by the majority of our planning commission? And then finally, I'm going to end with a brief conclusion and motion. Okay. So why, is it going? Sorry. Nope. There we go. So why is the city pursuing affordable or below-market rate housing? As many of our speakers have mentioned, housing prices in Palo Alto are among the highest in the nation, meaning that only longtime residents or the very wealthy can afford to live here. But our community depends upon people of different backgrounds and incomes, whether you are a barista, a construction worker, a nurse at Stanford, a teacher in PAUSD, or a cop in the Palo Alto Police Department. We need a diversity of people, and right now, our housing prices are prohibiting that. So, many cities, including Palo Alto, commit public resources to create housing opportunities for people who would not otherwise be able to live here. The mayor mentioned a number of affordable housing projects in Palo Alto. Three that just came to mind to me quickly. Buena Vista, last year, the city and county committed $40 million to preserve 100 units of affordable housing for about 400 Palo Alto residents. That's a huge win for us. Stevenson House was built in, I think, 1967 or 1968 as an affordable, independent living community for Palo Alto seniors. And the Hotel California on California Ave, Ash Street, I think, was recently dedicated as 20 affordable residential hotel rooms located near Jobs and the Caltrans station. So in short, there's a lot of social good, a lot of economic good to having a diverse community that can house people of different incomes and different backgrounds. Some, two quick definitions I want to go over. There really isn't an agreed-upon definition for affordable housing. It is mentioned in a few places in our code, but it's not really a technical definition. And so I think, on this council and the community, we often use the term to describe different things. What's affordable housing, to me, may not be affordable housing to my colleagues, or to a community member out there in our city. So it's a relative definition, relative to circumstances and need. On the other hand, we do have a term called Below Market Rate Housing, and this is a technical term with a specific definition in the Palo Alto Municipal Code. You can read it right there, but I want to skip to the important part, which is that below-market rate housing is only available for people who are income-qualified. So we check their incomes, we make sure that these folks really do qualify for this housing type. We also put deed restrictions on those units, so they can only rent for a certain rate, and it's often for 30 years or more. And finally, folks have to apply for this housing. So the application is actually there at the bottom for Palo Alto housing. And last I checked, but I'm sure some of our affordable housing folks in the room would know better, there's a waitlist of approximately 450 applicants. And as the mayor mentioned, we haven't voted on an affordable housing project in nine years now, so that list hasn't moved.
Except Buena Vista, but that's...
Buena Vista was existing. So, the city does have its own income standards and rent limits. This may be a year or two old, so I apologize for that. There's been a lot of talk tonight about whether our ordinance should focus on 0 to 60, or, you know, 0 to 120, or if we should focus on a different range. I want to make two arguments about this. So one, it is kind of weird, we have this category of 120% of area median income, right? Why do we even go above 100%? Personally, I'd like to see us peg it at 100%, but that's not the way the world works. And the reason why is, even at 120% of AMI, if you have a family of four, you're earning $127,000 after tax, you still have a really hard time affording housing in Palo Alto. So that's why we have these categories of very low income, low income, and moderate income. What was the second point I wanted to make here? Let me just look at my notes.
About how I...
Well, I'll just keep on going, sorry.
Maybe you meant to go how I was...
It's okay. Okay. So just moving on quickly, because I want to be brief. What is the Affordable Housing Combining District? I think our staff did a great job describing it, but essentially, this is a standard planning tool placed over existing base zones, which creates special provisions in addition to those of the underlying zones, right? So, the map at right shows the areas in red where this would apply, and in this case, staff has proposed an overlay that would only allow 100% below-market rate projects. So, you know, it's only for affordable housing, quote-unquote, to have flexibility with development standards like lot coverage, parking requirements, residential density, build-to-lines, and so forth. I want to be clear, there's been a lot of talk also about folks saying, don't make this a developer giveaway. Subsidized housing, below-market rate housing, is by definition a giveaway, right? We are saying we are going to put in public subsidies to achieve a good social outcome, in this case, affordable housing. Whether it's developed by an affordable housing developer or nonprofit developer, as most of it is actually, we've heard from six nonprofit developers tonight, the point is, we're putting public subsidies towards a public good, which is subsidized housing. A lot of folks are asking, why do we need to change the zoning? There's a couple of things going on. So land is extraordinarily expensive in Palo Alto, we all know that. We also, compared to many other cities, have pretty tight land use regulations. And so what staff's proposing is to provide some flexibility in those land use regulations so that we can get more affordable housing in the city. This graphic is from San Francisco about their affordable housing bonus law, but I thought it did a good job of illustrating, as you play with different development standards, you can actually get more affordable housing. And so that's what we're after tonight, and we're looking for the 100% affordable buildings. The key thing here is, without adjusting our zoning standards, we are not going to get affordable housing in Palo Alto. So we can talk about it all we want, we can have it as our top-city priority, we can all campaign on it, but because of the cost of land and the tight land use regulations in Palo Alto, affordable or below-market rate housing is not competitive in this market. And so it requires deep public subsidies, that can be in the form of land, in the form of financing, zoning concessions, density, and so on. And what this overlay is doing is looking at a couple of those parameters, so we can actually begin to get some affordable housing in Palo Alto. I promise, I'm almost finished. So how does an overlay compare to a planned community zone? These are just a couple notes here. An affordable housing overlay applies to multiple areas of the city, which gives us the best chance to see a few 100% below-market rate projects. It doesn't rezone land, and any projects, including Wilton Court, that would use this overlay would still have to go through the Palo Alto process of ARB, PTC, council, and community meetings, as many of our public speakers have asked for. In a planned community zone, the city council, these folks up here, and the developer, nonprofit or otherwise, will negotiate over a specific site and project, and we will talk about zoning changes in exchange for a public benefit, in this case, affordable housing. As many of you know, council froze the PC process in 2013 due to community concerns after a number of spectacular Palo Alto projects, such as the College Terrace Market, Edgewood Plaza, Alma Place, and a number of others where the community didn't feel that we'd done a good job negotiating that. So, last slide before I would like to make a motion. Our community has spoken loudly and clearly about the need for more affordable housing. This overlay is aimed at 100% affordable projects. It doesn't get any better than this. The Affordable Housing Overlay is a standard tool that will enable Wilton Court to proceed, but also creates other 100% BMR opportunities. That's a good thing for our city overall, and promotes housing equity. Finally, and I think this is actually the most important part, both our planning staff and Palo Alto housing, our partners in building Wilton Court, have requested the Affordable Housing Overlay, right? So we've got the people who are going to do this asking us to work with them, to actually achieve something in Palo Alto, so we can see affordable housing production. That is the end of my slides, and Beth or David, if you could put up the motion I sent to you, that'd be very helpful.
I'll second your motion.
Did either of you guys even see it?
I think they might have read it.
I was that persuasive, huh? Maybe I'll call the question soon, too. Okay.
With that said, let's let Adrian read his...
I will be quick, I promise. Thank you all for your patience.
I know you're good readers.
Okay. So the first part is just essentially endorsing option one from staff, we're finding the ordinance exempt from CEQA. And then number two has a couple of improvements I'd like to see. And so I'm sure we'll debate these, I'm open to persuasion or suggestions. I'll walk you through them really quickly. So two, A, explore including the RP, RM15, and RM30 zones in the combining district. This will help expand the overlay to different parts of the city, and provide us even more opportunities for 100% below-market rate projects. B, add an additional 1.5 residential floor area ratio to the maximum residential FAR. I'd like to remind us that this overlay is kind of being compelled by our comprehensive plan and the housing work plan, which we all endorsed unanimously. But also consider, this is an ordinance that's supposed to last us 10, 15, 20 years, and so if we really look at what we want to be a successful housing project in Palo Alto, we need to be talking about more density. C, allow the planning director to recommend a waiver for transitional height standards. This is really important for those projects along El Camino or near single-family neighborhoods. Many public speakers have spoken about this, how there is an issue that you may not want a 50-foot building next to a single-family home. That completely makes sense. There are other cases, though, where we may want the director to be able to waive that requirement. Of course, it would still have to be approved by the council. Letter D is to specify parking requirement of .75 per unit. Heard you loud and clear, I think one of the major concerns of the community is parking. And so I would propose .75 per unit, except as preempted by state law, and, as the staff has proposed, allowing the planning director to modify that standard only when there's a study that proves fewer spaces are needed. Additionally, I'm maintaining the .3 spaces per unit for special-needs housing. And finally, letter E, I'd like to clarify that this ordinance applies to all below-market rate housing projects, including up to 120% AMI. So, I will end it there. Thank you all for your patience. I would truly appreciate your support on this. I hope we can send a positive and affirmative message tonight in Palo Alto, that we want to see some housing in Palo Alto, especially when it's 100% affordable housing. Thank you, Mayor Nitz, for the indulgence.
Okay, there is, there was close to a tie on who seconded it. I think, I think Vice Mayor Philseth and Councilmember Scharf spotted out, and I guess Scharf, you won, right?
Yeah, that's what this...
So, I need to ask first, you have a second, Councilmember Refine? Do you wish to speak any further to your motion?
I have another presentation?
In that case, Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you. And if the clerk could just load my PowerPoint presentation?
I thought you had a video or a dance, Greg.
My video presentation. Yeah, because we have so much time left this evening.
Maybe this one will have music.
Yeah. So first of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Refine. I thought that was quite an eloquent presentation, and an eloquent argument for affordable housing. This is our priority for the year, and I think we really do want to achieve this. And while I appreciate the planning commission's efforts they put into it, and I think the planning commission worked hard on it, and I think, you know, I understood the thinking behind going with the PC. I think the better plan is to definitely go with the Affordable Combining District. And so I'm glad, I'm glad, Adrian, you're moving in that direction, and that's, and that was the motion. And I was glad to see Vice Mayor Philseth second that. Almost second that. So, I think it's...
Very close.
I think that this will deliver the housing that we need and the flexibility that we need, in a, on a more of a citywide basis, and starts us to think about how we remove barriers to affordable housing. I actually was really glad to see Councilmember Refine move the parking requirement up. I thought that was a really worthwhile thing to do. And I like the fact that we're doing RM15 and the RM30 zones. I think that's a good thing. It's not clear to me why we would really just have this in commercial zones, frankly. That was sort of confusing to me. I do think, I wanted some questions about what that looks like on a 1.5 residential floor area ratio, because you're already at 2, correct? Where were you before? Because this is add 1.5, so this gets us to...
Yeah, so, actually, this is something that we need a little clarification on, from a staff perspective. I'm not quite sure what 2B is.
Right. So I thought we could have a little discussion, maybe, and I could ask staff what that means. So we're at, where we were before, you were suggesting 2?
2.0.
2.0?
Residential.
And with a plus 1.5 residential floor area, that would get you to 3.5.
Yeah, I don't know if that's, if that's the...
Yeah, I don't know if that's, if that's the intent, okay.
Yeah, I think that's the intent, it says add an additional 1.5.
Base zone or to the 2.0, we didn't, we didn't know.
Okay. So, I'll clarify, that was 3.5? Oh, anyway, I'll assume that's 3.5 for the moment. What does that look like? In, I mean, you still have the height limit, and you still have the lot coverage. You still have that. So, what does that look like? And what would be the effect of this? And then, I was just going to ask Adrian what his intent was a little bit. So, maybe you could address that. I'm assuming you actually couldn't use the 3.5 for the most part.
No, I don't, I, as far as I've penciled it out, no, you couldn't. But I want to provide the maximum flexibility. So, if we're looking at packet page 136, the maximum residential floor area ratio, residential portion of a project, I would like to change that from 2.0 to 3.5. So, the total for a building, including the maximum non-residential FAR, would be 3.9.
So, I mean, but that's really my question is, I think what Adrian's saying is that he doesn't want FAR to be a limiting factor. He wants the other requirements to be the limiting factor. And so, you know, what does that mean practically?
So, I think that, so principally, the height limit is the controlling regulation that will affect the, the building form.
So, height setbacks in daylight plain?
Yep. That's right.
And, and frankly, parking as well?
Parking will have some constraints, but, you know. Yeah, it depends how it's all, you know, planned out.
So, what about lot coverage? Don't we have lot coverage requirements or not?
Yeah, it's one of the standards that we were reducing the, modifying the standard, so that it wasn't.
To what?
Waving it, I believe.
Oh, so we were waving it completely?
So, it's somewhat more nuanced than that. So, there's a, no maximum site coverage that's required. But we do have a 20% landscape and open space requirement. What we've proposed is that roof decks, terraces that are above-grade could be included in that open space requirement. But lot coverage is not, it wouldn't necessarily be affected by the increase in FAR.
So, then I guess I'm just trying to understand. So, if you have a 10,000-square-foot lot, right? You could cover 80% of the lot and go up 50 feet. So, you could use most of this FAR possibly, right? I mean, I'm, it's, you know, you guys are the experts. It's hard for me to visualize it, frankly.
You could, we don't have a site coverage requirement, but 80% could be covered with structures that don't have, you know, some sort of landscaping component to them. Does that make, does that make sense? Yeah.
Well, actually, you're right, because you said roof decks could, so it could be more than 80% coverage.
Correct, yep.
Okay. All right.
And so, just a continuation of that. So, in our, we also had in the standard, and I forget what it is, for the commercial, we were allowing up to 0.4, was it?
Correct.
So, we're talking about 3.9 total FAR, if it were a mixed-use development?
Right, okay. If it's a residential-only project that's proposed, then the maximum would be 3.5 FAR.
Just residential.
Just for residential, right?
Oh, and you could also have commercial on the ground floor?
Mm-hmm.
On top of that?
Correct.
So, you really could be above 4, is that correct?
No, so 3.9 would be the total.
So, 3.9?
Yep.
Would be the total. Okay, that's good to know. Yeah, 3.9. Okay. So, let me, let me ask the way this actually works in the combining district. And so, they, you come to us as the combining district, you know, an applicant applies for the combining district. And then, they, they say they want a, a project of 3.9. Does council have the authority under this? If it was to say, "Well, we think that's too big in looking at this. We really want you to do 3." Is this provide the flexibility to go up that way for council? Or is it something they would have by right? I mean, and if I wanted it to be more flexible, should I say that, you know, planning director could recommend up to, you know, 1.5 additional residential floor to the maximum residential? Because, I mean, I think council should have some discretion.
Yeah, so there's two, two elements. One is, they, an applicant would still need to go through the architectural review process to get the project approved. So, there's the architectural review findings. But beyond that, the application of the overlay, the affordable housing overlay, is a legislative action. And so, that does give the council.
Does the council approve it? And then, you have a right to 1.5 above it, and it's a packaged deal? Or can the council say, "We're only going to approve the affordable housing overlay on this, for instance, if you agree to a 2.5 FAR." Is that, how does this work from a practical point of view? It's been unclear to me.
Right, so I think that, I mean, I'll defer to the city attorney, but I think the council does have broad discretion if approving a legislative action, such as the application of the overlay zone to the property. So, you would be reviewing the project and the overlay at the same time. And if there were some concerns about the project, the council ultimately holds the authority to apply the legislative action to the property.
So, I mean, one of the things I would be concerned about, too, is you don't want the applicant to, to work through a process and then have their project cut down too much. That's an expense and a waste of time. So, I guess I would ask Adrian if he would consider saying, "Allow the planning director to recommend, you know, to recommend approval up to 1.5 residential floor ratio."
I would accept that.
All right. So, that was my only, oh, I know what I had, something else, yes. On, when I look at your map, Jonathan, of where.
You're actually talking about modifying B, right? Not adding another one?
Yes, I was modifying B. That is correct. I was. All right. So. Adding up to. Yeah. Right. So, Jonathan, the inter, you look confused. The, the, the intent of that would be that if the applicant wants a bigger project, you look with the planning director, you work together, and then, they can recommend that to council, and council can go with it, or not go with it. But the other approach is, the applicant's on their own, and if they design too big a project, I mean, I think staff should be behind the project. That's the goal.
Okay, so, I, I think there's. I mean, I guess I would reword that a little bit. I don't know if the director should be recommending adding additional floor area to the project. That needs to come from the project applicant.
Okay, so, no, I, correct. So, if the applicant suggests it, and you have staff report, support. I mean, that's what you're really looking at, you go to council.
Yeah. And again, I think we'd want to have some kind of understanding as to, under what circumstances or standards would we want to go from 2.5 to 3.5? And I'd want to give some thought to that.
Well, you could do ARB approval to come up with that, I guess. I mean, I, I mean, I think, I think at the end of the day, you want someone to look at this and say to the applicant, "Yeah, this is reasonable, given the site location of where this is." And I mean, before it gets to council, so there's at least a reasonable test on, on some of this.
I think, I think what you're hearing is looking for some parameters for the exercise of that discretion, so that it's not unfettered discretion on the part of the planning director. So, you mentioned something that's helpful in light of the site location. If there are other criteria that council would feel would be appropriate.
We talk about context, which is what we talk about, basically. Isn't that what we talk about? We talk about compatibility. You know, I would think you could say, "Given the context and compatibility," you know, that kind of stuff. If those are the requirements. I mean, I'm, I'm open to that. I'm sort of looking for you guys, as the professionals, to suggest what you feel comfortable with.
So, this is, you know, this is a, I'm happy to spend some more time thinking about it. I'm going to need a, that.
All right, why don't we come back to it in a few minutes? Give something, while I ask other questions. So, when I look at the map that you put in your presentation with the pink, you know, where we're going to, where you can build. So, I had some concerns. I had concerns that the Midtown Shopping Center and the Midtown area was there. I had concerns that the other shopping center at Charleston and, what do we call that? What do we call that? Charleston, right? I have a problem. Yes, where Piazza's is. And I have a concern that Town and Country Village is there. And I guess I wanted to know how to exclude those three places.
So, I can, I can speak to that. The, it's not showing up very clearly in your staff report. I can refer to the slide in my presentation that provides a little bit more clarity on this. It's, but it's not, it's not great, I admit that. Basically, Midtown is not within the transit proximity boundary. So, those zones, although they're depicted in pink for Midtown, do not qualify and would not qualify with the current proposed ordinance. Same for the intersection of Charleston and Middlefield on the south, southeast corner, and then also for San Antonio.
So, if it's not in the yellow area?
Correct.
It doesn't qualify?
Yeah. It's difficult to see, but it's, those aren't, those aren't the qualifying. Town and Country is included in that, in that boundary.
So, how do we exclude Town and Country? We excluded it from the comp plan, so.
And, and that's, that's one thing to keep in mind, is that with a subsequent legislative action, you know, you'd have comprehensive plan findings that you'd need to make.
Well, how do I just exclude it from the overlay?
Certainly within your.
Do I just say, exclude Town and Country Village?
Certainly within your purview.
Is that the best way to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you certainly could do that. If there were areas of the city that you wanted to exclude from the ordinance, you could do that. I think in the comp plan, we have some policies that talk about Town and Country Center and reinforcing the retail.
So, I would just like to add, exclude Town and Country Village.
Just like you did with the comp plan? I'll accept that.
Adrian, could you bring, did we, we didn't change the, the, the distance that would be yellow, the half-mile or whatever, right? That remained the same?
No, so right now, it's the quarter-mile. After talking with staff, I think it was just a handful of properties that the half-mile captured, so.
So, this map is accurate, then? That's what I just wanted to make sure.
Is this the quarter-mile map?
It is.
Thank you.
All right, great. Okay, so let's go back to the motion, then, because I think staff still had concerns regarding. Yeah, but I have to turn around. Oh, yeah, thanks. Any thoughtful language, or do you want to say, you know? We could just say, allow the council to, if the planning staff is.
Are you talking about the FAR?
I am talking about the FAR, because staff seems uncomfortable.
So, I think, I think staff's, as far as I can tell, staff was a little uncomfortable with having that they could grant it or not. They prefer a bit of certainty.
Right.
Which is why originally I just had, allow it, and let the other parameters, you know, kind of dictate the project a bit more.
Well, we could just say, allow council to, you know, if requested by the applicant, allow the council to, to allow up to.
An additional 1.5? Does that, does that work for staff?
I don't know.
Because, I mean, we're going to have a pre-screening of these things anyways, right? So.
So, I said, should we say, you know, if requested by the applicant, allow the city council, or allow the city council to allow up to additional 1.5 in FAR? I mean, what I don't want is, is that an applicant to think it's by right, or that an applicant have the expectation that they get that. Because I really do think it has to be with those factors that we've looked at. I mean, and I'm happy if staff wants to draft the factors that already exist in our code, you know. Right, the city council may allow.
The city council may allow adding up to additional. Does that?
I saw.
I think you want the planning director in the loop here.
Explain, go on.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the, the conference that's going on here is just trying to take a quick look at the changes that are being proposed and spot whether we may have an issue or we need to, we're not able to do it tonight. Look at that with respect to the environmental work that's been done already that we're relying on for this ordinance. So.
So, how much FAR would you feel comfortable before you need to do the?
We're not going to be able to answer that question for you, sitting here tonight. We will need to talk with our.
But at 2.0, you were comfortable?
Yes.
You think it's worth getting it done tonight?
I'm also interested at what level is the staff comfortable? I mean, what if we said, go from 2.0 to 3.0, and just did that?
Isn't there some way that council could bifurcate or stage your recommendations to allow you move ahead, but request us to explore some follow, follow-up?
Okay, that would be A and B?
No, it's.
Additions, amendments?
I was going to ask you why you're exploring the RP, RM15.
So, that is the reason why.
Oh, that is the reason why?
Because we alerted Councilmember Fine that there could be an environmental issue there. We do need to look at that.
So, then you should, I think you should explore the other one, too, and have them come back and try and pass this ordinance.
On A and B?
Yeah, I think you should pass this, and B, and then come back with a housing.
Staff, does that seem reasonable?
Yes, that's helpful. That will also give us a chance to think about whether we need more defined criteria.
Okay, so just for the record, we'd still like to pass this whole thing tonight. But A and B, we understand there are additional reviews and explorations that are needed.
Well, why don't you write, "Explore including the RP, RM15, RM30 zones in the combining district," and come back to, council is part of a housing work plan or something, or come back to council at a later date?
Well, A and B, I expect them to come back, right?
Right, but aren't we going to try and pass an ordinance?
So, it sounds like what I'm, what I'm hearing is, you'll pass an ordinance that won't include that in the operative language of the ordinance tonight, but you're directing us to look at bringing that back as an amendment, which we can do, we'll either decide we can do that on the sooner, or that there's some additional environmental work that would be required, in which case the process would be longer. Either way, we would come back to you.
Okay.
All right. So, then the only question I had was, and I've always been a little, so these talk about high-quality bus route. What happens if we put up a shuttle system, or a, or a bus route comes down Middlefield Road, or the bus routes change? So, what ends if we said, "Transit as of this date"? Or I could just exclude the shopping center, the Rasidero, you know? And I'm trying to, I mean, I can't see it in the rest of the city there, frankly, when I look outside this corridor, even if we had a high-quality bus route on Middlefield. I just don't see it, so.
Yeah, well, so, you know, I think the.
Right, I mean, that's what I was thinking, we just exclude Middlefield Road.
You can certainly do that. You know, the shuttle, so I guess the question would be, what shuttle services are we talking about? If they're city, I mean, there's, there's the Marguerite, there's city, then there's VTA. And so, I think that, you know, we can certainly easily exempt ourselves from that provision. And we would have to have these 15-minute headways during peak travel time,
And we would have to have these 15-minute headways during peak travel time, so I'm not sure we're even there yet with our own local program, but.
But if we are going to run a high-quality shuttle program, that's probably what it would take, you know? So are you thinking the best things to exclude Middlefield Road from?
I think, I think if you're wanting to exclude certain areas, then I would be explicit in that exclusion.
You don't like that?
No. I mean, there are cases where, you know, future transit improvements that we or VTA may make could be a good fit for this in other parts of the city that are not currently included. If those come along, they're still going to go through the planning process, ARB, PTC, and council.
Yeah.
I hear you on, you know, the Middlefield ones, which as staff explained, are not included But the transit, you know, transit as of this date seems a little.
No, no, I heard that. I actually was thinking more of just, I was thinking of the Middlefield. I actually just really care about the, I mean, I'm happy to just say the Midtown Shopping Center and the, I always think of it as Piazza Shopping Center, but what do we call it? The Charleston Shopping Center.
If you want those added to 1A, I'm happy to.
And that's it, I'm good. Just those two.
Let's add Midtown and Charleston Shopping Center to 1A.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. And I just wanted to say that I really do appreciate the thought you put into this, Adrian.
So, agreed on where we are at this point? Okay, yes. Now, Councilmember Holman, you're next.
Kind of hard to know where to begin. Truly kind of hard to know where to begin. So I think I've mentioned before from, from the dais that I've been looking forward to an affordable housing overlay since my planning commission days. I can't say that what I had anticipated was what's on the screen tonight. I frankly can't say what I anticipated was what's in the staff report tonight. I don't see giving, I don't see that this is giving an affordable housing developer clarity on what they're becoming forward with. I think there's a lot of, a lot of dalliance here, quite frankly. Just before I forget it, there are some things that we have not done, which are low-hanging fruit, easy pickings, that we could help with housing production and preserving housing. We haven't brought forward the Palmer Fix, which allows inclusionary housing in mixed-use projects. We haven't brought that back yet to reinstate it. We haven't changed our rules so that the state density bonus law will only apply to housing, as opposed to using the state density bonus to create more office, which offsets and sometimes more than offsets the number of housing units created. I don't believe we've come back with that yet. Staff's looking like they have. I don't think we have. You'll correct me if I'm wrong. We haven't enacted anything that prohibits the net loss of housing units. Those are things that we could do, that we have not done to help create and preserve housing units. We haven't had any new affordable housing projects come forward, and I would say a major reason, if not the reason, is because we suspended the PC process. So we have two council members gone and two council members talking. So I guess one council member gone and two council members talking. We haven't had any new affordable housing projects because we talked about when we were suspending it, the PC, that all of the affordable housing projects that came forward were done with PCs. Either that, or it was that the Housing Corp. would buy existing developments and convert them to BMR units. So we've kind of, you know, we, we talk about the marketplace, it's kind of like our own folly, I believe, that's caused very likely the lack of new affordable housing projects. A lot of people have spoken tonight about the difference between 60% AMI versus 120% AMI. I think if we go forward with this ordinance as proposed, that it goes up to 120% AMI, I think the big headline for this item is that extremely low, very low-income housing developers are disadvantaged by council action. Because the people who are developing up to 60% AMI are going to be in direct competition with those that are developing more expensive housing. We've also included, and add to that to make the competition even harder, is people like the Housing Corp. don't build office. But yet this ordinance has a .4 FAR component of office. So we're putting, I'm going to, Candace, I'm going to use you all as an example here. We're putting the housing, Palo Alto Housing, in direct competition with developers who will develop .4 FAR office, plus whatever housing component that we end up adding on here. I think it's not smart. I think it's not prudent. I think it's not social equity to put Palo Alto Housing in competition with a developer who will develop the kind of projects that I just described. There are some, just a couple of procedural things. I absolutely appreciate that Councilmember Fine put together his thoughts in a presentation. I'm uncomfortable that the last couple of slides are advocacy and a motion that was put forward to the entire council before the item had been introduced and before it had any discussion. It's, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with that. It's pretty irregular, and even when we're in the back and talking amongst ourselves, if there's a fifth person that walks into the room when there's an item that's going to be on the agenda, we stop the conversation. But this kind of flies in the face of that, so I'll, I'll leave it there, but it's, I'm uncomfortable with that. I don't know how, when you look at, what I'm trying to get to here is, I'm going to put out my concerns, then I'm going to get to something positive, I hope. So when you look at Slide 12 of the staff presentation, and this has to do with the sequoia matter. If you look at total mixed-use FAR, if the base is owning of CS, for instance, it's 1 to 1. With the density bonus, it's 1.15 to 1. What's being proposed is 2.4 to 1. And if you look at the map that was put out here, it doesn't have a page number, but it must be Page 7, Slide 7. If you look at how much, how many parcels this covers, it's hard for me to conceive of how more than doubling the floor area ratio can be covered by our comp plan EIR. I don't understand how that could possibly be, especially when it covers this much territory. One of the arguments against PCs that was brought forward is because PCs aren't predictable, and that they're controversial. The reason they're controversial and that we put a hold on them was because PCs were being used for this and that and everything. If we had a PC that was for, just for affordable housing, as we have seen come up, I don't have any reason to think that the community is going to be questioning what the public benefit is. We need to have some kind of rational development standards that we could put forward and up to, for instance, but, but the, but the public benefit is what the big outcry has been, sometimes the, the size of the project. If you look also at the ordinance, and I'm looking at packet Page 135, we're talking about, we're talking about in Section 1830J060, I'm sorry, 1830J070, permitted uses. We're talking about trying to promote housing, but yet we're allowing a .4 FAR, and the kinds of uses that are allowed by right in those, in those zones that we're talking about, CNCS, CC, CC2, our professional business offices, liquor stores, and in CS, general business service. I don't know how that forwards the purpose of affordable housing. I think, again, it raises the cost of the land, making it less affordable for Palo Alto Housing, as a, for instance. We talk about whether, whether the project is going to be compatible or not. We have, someone mentioned tonight earlier, we have a floor area ratio of 2.0 for hotels in our CS zones. And I can't think of a time, even given ARB members and community resistance, that any floor area ratio has been reduced. If you go down El Camino, some of those, some of the hotels, and we're happy to have the hotels, but if you look at the development, it's very inconsistent and incompatible with what else we have on the ground. And that's just a 2.0. And what's being proposed here is 2.4 plus potentially another 1.5. I, I can't see how any ARB review is going to make that compatible, transitional, anything more, anything other than disruptive. Just want to make sure I've covered the points here before. Question for the city attorney. Mr. Boroc sent us a communication. He was questioning Section 3 on Page 137. Can staff speak to that? I guess it would be the city attorney.
I saw Mr. Boroc's email moments before we went into closed session. I did not review it. I cannot, I, I'm not familiar. You'll have to ask the question if you.
Okay, you want me to find the question, then? Is that what, okay, all right. Let me see if I can find that quickly. I think it was he, perhaps it was, perhaps it was Mr. Ross. I thought it was Herb Boroc. Perhaps it was Mr. Ross, and I can't repeat his comments. I just remember I noted the, the question. Well, we'll come back to that. Okay, so I'm going to make a substitute motion, which is going to be to follow the planning commission ad hoc recommendation with the following changes, that in Recommendation 1, development agreement would become PC. Do you want to change our screens? So moving the planning commission ad hoc recommendation with a change in Recommendation 1. I'll give you time to get it up there. I know I've read that, but I'm looking for where you're picking that up from. I'm looking at the PTC recommendations on packet Page 139. We've just changed the wording from recommend, but work with. Karen, are you still working on the motion?
Yeah, I'm trying to get on the same pages as staff here.
Okay, and A and B you picked up from? You're looking at two different lists? Okay. So on B, on BA, change, pursue a development agreement to pursue a PC. So 1 will stand as is. 2, yeah, 2 will stand as is, 3 will stand as is. They, they all stand as they are, and, actually. And what, what we're trying to get to is a project, a process by which, as Commissioner Guardias presented, where we get to a by-right process for affordable housing, or AH60, So while you're, while you're putting those in, so the reason I want to go this direction is because I think rather than having to use so. Was, was that the end of the motion, Karen?
Yeah, while, while they're putting it up here, I'm still, I'll, I'll speak to it while they're up, putting it up.
I'm just looking for your second. Well, it's pretty much what, as she said, it's, it's pretty much what's in there. And then we'll add. And then add an 8 with a goal, because this is going back to PTC, with, with a goal to establish or develop a by-right process for 100% be affordable, 60% AMI projects. to establish or develop a buy right process for 100% be affordable AM, 60% AMI projects. So I guess now I am looking for a second. If people have had a chance to read it. So, so speaking to this, the reason I think this is a prudent way to go is because I think it is a way to, I think it's a way to establish some certainty. It's been stated over and over again that what is troublesome and concerning of affordable housing developers is that they have so much uncertainty when they come forward. And I think a lot of learning, learnings were gained by the process that the planning commission has gone through to this point in time. A lot of that is presented in the, in the ad hoc affordable housing overlay committee comments on page 139, 140. So I don't want to, I don't want to lose all those learnings. And I think we're deviating greatly, not only from this, these learnings, but also even from the staff recommendation with the original motion. So I'm, I'm supportive of wanting to get some affordable housing projects built. And I think this is a very prudent and direct way to accomplish that.
That's what you said, not yet, right? Okay. Trying to see. Have you got your light on? For the substitute, though? Okay. Are you done? You want your second to speak?
Yeah.
So Councilmember McCoo, you're going to speak to your second?
Right. So I, I completely agree if it's affordable housing that you're looking for. I mean, you're going to need the tax credits and compete for them. So at, with this stage, I think it's best to go this way. And also, you know, I actually think it was very poor judgment to bring your BMR project and combine it with this AH ordinance. You know, and I thank Councilmember Fine for bringing forth his, his recommendation. It actually looks very much like SB 827 to me, but you know, at a lower level, at least it's not state mandate and one size fit all, but almost there, one size fit all kind of situation.
Point of privilege, is that meant to be an insult, Lydia?
I am speaking right now, excuse me. So it also seems like, you know, I think that there is a need for the reputation for Palo Alto Housing to rebuild their reputation here in Palo Alto as well as their trust. So certainly, you know, combining the two was really a poor idea. And you know, while there is, as some of the speakers had spoken, that there is discrepancies or it's not a perfect ordinance for, for the one that the, that was proposed by the first one and then the second one, before the ad hoc committee came up with this one for looking into the PC. I think that it's much better that we have something that is already in our codes that we can review again versus going with something brand new that is just completely going to be a reinvention and there's going to be loopholes in there, et cetera. I do agree, 120%, I don't know how you're going to even, I understand that 60% you can get tax credits. When you go up to 120%, then it actually moves towards having to find other funding sources, which again, makes it a much more expensive project. But again, you know, I mean, you are Palo Alto Housing, so you would hopefully stay within the 60. And that's where, I understand Danny Ross had told the community, that's where you're going to go at. Then, you know, I do have a question for staff. When you're reviewing all of this, have you reviewed what the 2017 housing bill packet is going to do to this? I mean, where does that put us?
So are you referring to SB 35 or?
I don't know, there's a slew of them.
Passed this past legislative session, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so the one, the one that I think would generate the most interest is SB 35. That's the buy right housing. And the way this ordinance has been drafted, it's, it still requires a legislative action, so it would not qualify for streamlining under SB 35 because it wouldn't meet the buy right standard.
But where are the pros and cons, you know, moving forward with, with this and with, you know, I'd like to see what are the pros or cons for both proposals right now? I mean, what we have here for the PC and then the other one with the AH combining district? So I want to see both sides, if you know, if you happen to be able to.
So are you asking staff for pros and cons of the two motions that are on the table?
With, if the, you know, how would the housing package affect?
Oh. Well, it's, I think the answer is the same for both. I mean, at least with respect to SB 35, they both would require legislative actions. PC is a ordinance, is an ordinance. And so, you know, that wouldn't be impacted by that standard. And the same thing with this affordable housing overlay, that's also a legislative action and, and that's also would be not subject to SB 35.
Yeah, so the community came out and said a lot of things tonight, and I think that one of the first things that I want to kind of really, really address, you know, in terms of having this affordable housing thing, was to ensure that our developmentally disabled are taken care of, as well as our veterans. I mean, we can't build all 300 at one time or in one year, but you know, do it in a prioritized manner. So I think that's why I'm supporting this, because at, at this point, we have something more worked out. I know you're going to have to come back, but at least we have some idea of what we're going to get.
Madam Mayor, can I clarify one thing, please? Can I clarify one thing in the motion?
Do you want to?
I just want to clarify one thing in the motion.
Sure.
Thank you for that. So the intention here is that we would come forward with, ultimately at the end of this, come forward with a PC 60, call it, whatever you want to call it, PC 60, PC AMI 60, whatever you want to call it. Not to go back and amend the whole PC ordinance, but to come up with a separate PC that's just for affordable housing projects. So, because I know to amend the whole PC ordinance would be a big deal. I'm looking for a different PC ordinance that would be just for affordable housing. That's the goal of this.
Okay. And, Mayor, for me, so I, I understand that. And then just, and I don't want to be an advocate or, you know, speak on behalf of Palo Alto Housing, they're obviously in the audience, and if there's a question, that could be asked of them. We understand from our conversations that there's an interest in wanting to see the zoning in place before an application were filed. And so if I'm understanding this process, we would go back and come back with this PC AMI 60%, get that approved by the council, and then at that point, presumably Palo Alto Housing might file for their application. That's, that's understood? Okay.
Yeah, because we have questions on the, on the, on the first or initial motion. There are questions about that, too, that also would have to come back.
Well, I mean, the first motion, I think, advances the ordinance, and then we still have to return with some other considerations, but it, it allows for the filing of an application under that ordinance.
And again, it seems like to me, just reading what the ad hoc committee came up with and all the research that they had done, combine that information with what the staff report had also said, and so it seems like there's a lot of learnings. I don't, I don't imagine it would take, you know, forever to do this. So.
So, so Councilmember Wahlbach, speaking to the substitute.
Yeah. First, I, this is first I spoke on this item, just want to thank staff, Palo Alto Housing, everybody who spoke tonight, everybody who wrote in. So looking at this substitute motion, there are a couple of things here I'm actually really interested in. The buy right process for 100% or 60% AMI projects. I'd be interested in seeing that incorporated into the original motion when we go back to that, which I hope we will. In the meantime, we heard some questions about how the tax credits work and whether anything over 60% AMI is affordable. And I figured we should turn to the experts, right? The organization that city leaders created decades ago, the premier provider of subsidized affordable housing, Palo Alto, not Palo Alto Housing, who are here in the audience. So if it's okay with the mayor, through the mayor, may I ask a couple of questions of the Palo Alto Housing?
Yes. I didn't realize they were here.
So I guess the first question is, could you help us understand, make sure everybody is on the same page about what affordable housing over 60% AMI looks like and how that can be provided? And do you do any of that, or do other nonprofits do that?
Sure. First, I'm Candace Gonzalez, CEO of Palo Alto Housing, so thank you for listening to the overlay tonight. Recently, tax credit actually updated its rules and regulations. It's now allowing up to 80% AMI, and that was a change just a few weeks ago. So we can potentially serve a greater income range that's still considered low income. I think that's an important change to consider.
Okay. So we might do, and we want to, again, we want to come back to the main motion, hopefully. The, we might do the buy right for 80%. And then the, so for the range between 80 and 120, some have suggested that that would, if we include that, that would disadvantage the lower ranges. Do you, or does Palo Alto Housing or do other nonprofit housing developers provide housing in the range of 80 to 120 AMI?
We don't because of the tax credit funding. However, personally, we don't feel like it's competing against each other. We think that we need housing for all income levels, including the moderate, which is the 80 to 120%, possibly 80 to 150%. And if, if this happened, the overlay pass allowing up to 120%, it's not going to necessarily open the floodgates for a lot of developers serving between 80 to 120%. We're still going to need a creative funding source to make that happen. But allowing that might allow something like teacher housing, first responder housing, housing for city staff, if we can find another creative funding source. Or if the city wants to fund a project like that, or the county, or an altruistic developer comes in, or some kind of foundation money comes in, we can potentially fund that. But that is a creative, out of the box funding source. For the most part, we will see projects serving below 80% of the area median income. But, you know, it's great to see a broader range and a broader potential, so it's not a limit of super limited overlay.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think that that's, that's helpful. You know, we think about the discussions that we're starting to have in our community and in the county about teacher housing that our supervisor, Joe Semidion, has suggested we look at as a possibility. We often, on this day, as I think a lot of us have talked about, the need for housing for teachers, public employees, the people who serve our community who aren't able to live here. And I think it's important to clarify because, you know, I don't think it's our job to write the headlines, but, but I do appreciate the, the point that one of my colleagues is trying to make. But I just wanted to clarify, so, you know, going up to 120% AMI being allowed would not disadvantage the lower ranges.
No, we don't think it would.
Okay. And that's coming from the people who are the experts in the field, so I appreciate that. And especially if we do incorporate the buy right and a more streamlined process for the under 60 or under 80% AMI, that would actually advantage them over the higher range. So something to think about when we come back to the main motion. And I just wanted to really clarify, oh, and thank you very much. I'll let you grab a seat again.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify the reason why I'm not going to be supporting this substitute motion, though I appreciate it, and again, I do think it has a couple of things we might want to hang on to. And that is this, our housing work plan that we passed just a, was it just a couple months ago? And it passed unanimously. And on page 26 of our housing work plan, it says, item 1.8, skip the preface, create an affordable housing or AH overlay district that could be used to support housing on Palo Alto Housing's site at El Camino Real and Wilton Court. That was passed unanimously by this council. So I think it's time to, to get back to the work at hand and the work that we had said we wanted to move forward with back in February. And I'll be, you know, supporting, perhaps with some amendments, I'll be more inclined to support the original motion. And I will not be supporting the substitute. But again, I appreciate it, and I think it's, it's having the substitute and the conversation around it has helped us have greater clarity.
In order, I have Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember DeBois, and then Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you very much. So we're sort of covering a lot of territory, and we've covered a lot of ground so far. It looks like we're going to be noodling on this for a while, but I'll tell you what I really like about this, is I think we're, I think we're flushing this out in a way that it needs to be flushed out. And, you know, I think there's broad interest in moving forward with both a high-quality affordable housing ordinance and the Wilton Court project, right? Both in City Hall and in the community at large, okay? Including the neighborhoods, right? And we got two proposals on how to do that. And I think both of them can actually get there, okay? Although they take sort of different paths, I think, I mean, I truly believe the objective is the same here, right? I think there is a common solution to be found, which both the housing experts and the, and the neighborhoods can endorse, and that is not so restrictive, that we don't get any projects, but also doesn't generate neighborhood animosity and pushback, right? And if we can get there, we'll have done our job. So in that vein, what I really liked about option two, the PTC proposal, was, was a couple of things. One, was it dealt with the issue that, you know, there's still stuff we're trying to figure out. I mean, we're trying to cast an ordinance in, in concrete tonight, and there's still stuff we don't know. We heard a lot of numbers on parking, which I think we'll come back to later, you know, but we don't really know. Staff is doing a study on it, which we're all looking forward to, but we don't know what the results of that study are going to be, right? And so the idea that we would continue to refine the affordable housing ordinance without holding up the Wilton Court project, I thought that was, you know, I thought that was a really good thing. So let me ask a question of staff. If we went with the first option, and I'm getting more comfortable with, with Adrian's motion, right, although I think, you know, the eliminating FAR, for example, is a pretty radical step, right? Needs to be thought through, right? But if we proceed with Adrian's motion, what's the provision for revisiting it and refining it and doing, and, you know, and, you know, incorporating new information in it as we learn stuff?
Yeah, you would have, again, the council would have broad discretion to direct staff to revisit the ordinance and come back with refinements or changes. We have the housing work program. We've got some discrete tasks in this that we want to advance. And if the overlay, overlay zone were approved, it would enable, you know, applications to be filed, but then we could always come back and revisit that ordinance as directed by the council.
Well, realistically, I think as somebody pointed out, I mean, it's unlikely we're going to get a lot of applications filed, you know, in the next few months, right? Because it takes a while to generate these things and so forth. And it's been pointed out many times before, there's not a huge pipeline waiting in the wings for it, so. But, so does that mean that when the next phase of the housing work plan comes to council, we could revisit this ordinance? we could revisit this ordinance in that context as well?
Yeah, I think it would be, we're doing the ongoing items now, and we're, we've initiated an ordinance to address the council's interests. I think it would be after that next ordinance that we would come back to council.
So, the other thing that I really liked about the PTC recommendation, and, you know, I think the PTC and the Ad Hoc Committee, and even the dissenting minority, I think they did a lot of good work here, right? I think, you know, actually, I think the Ad Hoc Committee spaded up some really useful stuff, right? But one of the other things I really liked about it was this whole notion of the, there's another way to, there are more ways to square the circle than just, you know, relaxing parking specs or something like that, which is the idea that we should spend money on it. And I think that makes a lot of sense, because, you know, I think affordable housing is really a community issue, right? And we, as a community, are saying it's a priority for us to keep people in our town who otherwise couldn't afford to live here. It's not a neighborhood-specific issue, right? It's a city-wide issue. And so, I think we, as a community, should step up to the costs of doing this, as opposed to asking one or another neighborhood to pay those costs. And the way we do that is we spend money on it, right? And so, I like the idea that we should address this stuff by finding more money for it, right, as opposed to asking this neighborhood this week, and some other neighborhood some other week to, you know, for them to pay the cost of this, right? So, that said, the other, one of the other characteristics of this is I'm getting more comfortable with is the whole 60 versus 120 thing. So, I appreciate, thank you very much for the, to the staff and to Adrian for digging up a lot of data on this. I think this has been somewhat confusing, but for me, a couple of the key, because we heard a lot of numbers tonight, right? Right? And the way they do it is a little bit complicated, but per the staff report, 120% of area median income for an individual is $95,000. So, it's not, it's not sort of way above that, I mean, we saw, heard a bunch of estimates, right? That's actually not that much, right? And for a family of four, it's $136,000. So, I think at those levels, the risk that, you know, that some creative party is going to figure out how to shoehorn a bunch of market-rate housing into this program, right, seems like, seems like a low risk, okay? So, I'm sort of getting more comfortable with that. And then, the issue of tax credits for 60%, one of the other things that somebody commented is, I gather that there's a, there's a common practice of, I mean, not Palo Alto Housing, but, you know, other builders of these things, they're maybe mixed, right? You may have some at, you know, 50% of AMI, and some others at, you know, 90% of AMI, right? And so, I assume that when we talk about 120% AMI project, it's really up to 120% AMI. It's not more than 60 and less than, right? Which brings up an interesting idea, which is if we pass a 120, maybe we also need an AH 60 as well, right? So, okay. With that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop here, but I think both, both approaches can get to the right place, and both are going to need some refinement. And I think the best part of the PTC recommendation is sort of bake that in a little better, right?
Councilmember DuBois, and then Councilmember Scharf.
Yeah.
I think that's it. Everyone's spoken to the.
So, similar to comments from Councilmember Phil Seth there, I think, you know, I support the original motion. I think it's made, you made a pretty reasonable proposal. I also support some key ideas in this substitute motion, and, you know, similar to Councilmember Walbach and Phil Seth, I think there are some attractive ideas in here that we should think about. I know it's getting late. I also want to say I really appreciate the work of the Ad Hoc Committee on the PTC. So, just speaking to the substitute motion, I do think there's a major difference between 80%, under 80 and over 80% AMI projects. And I think it's a worthwhile goal to think about crafting an ordinance that would provide by right projects for 100% affordable housing at the 80% or lower level, and, you know, not necessarily mixed use. But I don't think we're quite there tonight. I think we need to flesh out the parameters if it was going to be, you know, by right, but I think it's a worthwhile goal, so I kind of like that wording in the substitute motion. You know, and without buy right process, I think we're adding tremendous cost to affordable housing. I'm concerned that the main motion is not doing enough in terms of lowering process The, I also like the substitute motion kind of suggests using data to figure out the parking requirement. I think we made progress on that as well. It's, I don't think it's really one-size-fits-all. I think having a different parking requirement for disabled housing, for senior housing, and for family housing makes sense. And the main motion talks about disabled and the rest. Again, I think we might want to talk a little bit more about, you know, the difference between senior housing and family affordable housing. And the last thing I want to just point out, and again, if we go back to the main motion, I may bring it up there, is the idea of the open space being a rooftop garden. Now that we've added residential zones, I do have some concerns in the residential zone in particular. So, is that I kind of support, I support both motions at this point. I think there are elements that we should try to bring back to the main motion.
Okay, so, Councilmember Scharf.
So, I think we just need to clarify on the, on the previous motion, we actually haven't added the residential zones yet. We're going to pass, you didn't actually add them, you were asked to explore them on the residential zones, so we actually haven't added them. I think that's, that's an important point. So, you said your concern, Tom, was about adding the rooftop gardens to the residential zones. So, I said, we haven't added the residential zones yet. We directed staff to pass the ordinance, move it forward, and come back to us with the residential zones, and also with the increased FAR. So, neither of those are actually in the, in the motion currently, and I think that's an important distinction tonight. And I think that's really why the substitute motion is not superior, is the other, is the main motion, if I get the terminology right, is the main motion moves this forward tonight and gives the Palo Alto Housing Corporation the ability to file for the project and to have a sense. The substitute motion basically delays. And I was thinking about this, I heard about this project last year when I was mayor. In fact, I remember asking them to bring it forward in my State of the City speech, "Let's get this done." It's now a year and something past that, and if we went with the substitute motion, we would be delaying this even further, and the next mayor could talk about how much they want to get affordable housing done, and how nice it would be if you brought this project forward. So, that's why Eric's going to vote for this now, so that he doesn't get to say that. So, I think that's really important. And the other thing I want to talk about is, I actually don't really understand this sudden attack on 80% or 60% to 120% AMI. I mean, I'm sort of thinking about it like this. Joe Semidion comes forward and says, "Let's build teacher housing. Let's build teacher housing down by the county courthouse," and everyone says, "Yes." Everyone says, "That's a great idea." Well, that's in that 80 to 120% AMI. I mean, that's not the below 60. And yet, I thought this council fell out over themselves to support Joe Semidion's proposal, as well they should. And, you know, if we want to apply this ordinance and have a range of housing types, then you clearly want to go up to 120. I, I'm also really sort of a little surprised by it. I mean, what I've heard, why do we want to have affordable housing in our community? I mean, I think that goes to the heart of that question.
I think I spoke to that two hours ago.
You did.
I did.
But what you spoke to could not be achieved by just having 60% and below.
Oh, it can, yeah.
And, you know, if you really care that you want the person working in the local grocery store to live in your community, if you want your teacher, your preschool teacher, you know, look at these income limits. I mean, if you're thinking that you're a married couple, and you're making, let's see, at 100% $90,000 for a couple? That doesn't offend me. I mean, that's two people making $45,000 a year. That is low income. So, I don't really understand it, and I actually find it a little bizarre, actually. So, I'll leave it there. So, I just really wanted to speak to it and say that I thought that the main motion moves us forward, and that's what I want to achieve tonight. I want us to actually feel like we're doing something to create affordable housing.
So, since I haven't talked for a couple of hours, I thought I'd say a word or two. But I also have a question. First of all, I think the overlay has been a creative way to go, and I was glad to hear somebody earlier say that most other cities have used an overlay of some kind, whether they call it something else, or that it, in general, is what allows you to proceed forward without going through this continuing on a regular basis. But do I, tell me, Jonathan, about the workforce housing that we, that PTC voted on in February, or whenever it was, at the corner of El Camino and Page Mill, was that not workforce housing?
Yeah, well, that ordinance has, is kind of one of these pilot projects that we've been embarking on, and it's somewhere in the 140 AMI level.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we've already done something that addresses workforce housing, am I right?
Well, the application of that one is limited to the PF zone, so.
But, but, we've actually done it.
Well, it's on its way to council soon. It's got to stop by the architecture.
Well, the council may not pass it, I'm not saying that. But I'm saying planning did go ahead, because what we're really looking for is some ways to get different kinds of housing into our community. That's our goal. It doesn't all have to be 60% where it's really, really low income. We're also saying, leave the door open. You could leave the door open to go to 150% if you thought that was going to cover some of those people that are in that middle zone that just can't seem to buy in Palo Alto. Otherwise, we're going to have nothing but Facebook people and Google engineers surrounding us, or VCs on our all sides. I don't want to see that long-term. I think, whether it's for us, but I think it's more for our kids to live in a, in a community that is diverse. So, I am supporting the original motion, and I hope we will be able to pass that tonight, because otherwise, with all due respect, Karen, I see your motion as the son or daughter of VCs. And I remember that painful, painful period when we had people in the audience accusing us basically of not following the VCs correctly, we hadn't judged them as we went along. I think it's one of the most painful times we've had as a council. So, I really, coming back to VCs again, is simply not, I think, a feasible way to go. So, with that, are we ready to vote on the substitute motion?
Yes.
We must be at that point. So, would you vote on the board? So, where are we? That passes with Councilmember, pardon? Fails, I'm sorry, thank you. You know, you know what happens at 11:30 at night? You don't see the lights that glow the same way anymore. So, this fails on a six to three with Councilmember Koo, Holman, and DuBois voting yes, meaning it has failed. Okay, we are back to the original motion at this point. If you would, I'm just turning everything off. If you want to speak to the original motion, this is the time to do it. So, please put lights on. Councilmember Holman and Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, I'll go back to some of the things that concerned me before. One is the Point Four office that's allowed. I'd like to delete that allowance, that Point Four FAR for office. So, I'd offer that as an amendment.
So, I don't think I'm going to accept it, but I do want to ask staff why that was included.
Well, there's a couple of reasons, and Graham may have some others. This was in part in response to the retail preservation ordinance to allow for, if there's existing retail there, to allow an affordable housing project to still capture some of that, that retail component. But then, there's also, there may be some nonprofit space that may be associated with a, an affordable housing project, which by way of a CUP may be a way to establish it. So, we were just given some flexibility into that area.
Okay.
But those are addressed separately. The ordinance, unless I'm wrong, the ordinance talks about, yes, that's totally separate from the general office and stuff that I'm talking about. Totally separate.
I'm sorry, so, maybe I misunderstood the question.
Is the Point Four allowed for general office and the uses that are allowed in the underlying zoning? That's what I'm talking about eliminating. Separately in the ordinance itself, it talks about allowing, you know, it talks about the retail, and it talks about nonprofit space, and it talks about that stuff all separately.
So, if you wanted to carve out office or define the types of uses that would be allowed, that would be a way to go to?
So, it is non-residential FAR. It's not office, it's just non-residential.
That's correct.
Well, it says, it says the uses that are allowed in the underlying zoning, and if you look those up, in section 16, excuse me, 1816040, it allows such things as I listed earlier, professional general business offices, liquor stores, and CS allows general business service, and I don't see how that's helpful promoting it, just the affordable housing.
So, as I said, I'm not going to accept the amendment, but I actually do want to, I don't know if it's worth asking Palo Alto Housing if something like that helps their project or hurts it.
Well, they don't build that kind of thing.
Right, but by long, anyways, never mind, I'm not going to accept this.
Do you want Ms. Gonzalez to come down and answer it, or you can?
So, looking for a second on that one, then. Okay, good, thank you. And I think I've spoken to it as much as I need to.
Let me, let me ask a question, okay? I mean, this, this ordinance is supposed to apply to 100% affordable projects, okay? And I understand the argument that, okay, there's a ground floor retail zone, there's sort of some collision with that. And I also understand the idea that Palo Alto Housing might want to have, you know, an office in the, on the, on the first floor to do administrative stuff and so forth. Does this, I mean, if this passes as, as described, does this allow somebody to build a building and rent out, you know, half the bottom floor to a tech company, right, at, you know, $8 a square foot or something like that, and then the rest of it's affordable? Because that doesn't sound like 100% affordable housing project to me.
So, I can speak to that. The way that it's written right now, all of the underlying uses in a zone can be considered on the ground floor. But having, having said that, you have retail preservation requirements that still apply. So, to the degree that you'd be swapping out a retail space for an office, that would only be at the council's discretion.
So.
Right, and we also have office limit restrictions. As far as the nonprofit office space, we do include that as a conditionally permitted use, so that's an additional entitlement.
So, is the office space listed as specifically required to be nonprofit?
Could you repeat that, I'm sorry?
The conditional uses, so the office space is specifically required to be nonprofit?
Can I, can I help out here just a little bit? And also clarify?
So, if I go, if we build one of these things in an area which, you know, in an area where there's existing uses which are, you know, office R and D, does that mean the bottom floor can still, can also be office R and D and qualify under this program?
That's correct.
I don't think we should do that, right? I think it's supposed to be 140% affordable housing, right? And I think, you know, if we're going to grant concessions and FAR concessions and parking concessions and height concessions and so forth, it ought to be 100% affordable housing. So, I think I'm gonna, I think I'm either going to support this or ask for a change to restrict it to retail or nonprofit office space. Would you accept, actually?
So, not yet. I see where you're going. I think the one edge case is if somebody is redeveloping an office R and D space, and then they want to maintain that Point Four.
That's right.
For office R and D. And I, I hear you that maybe we have a carve-out there, so it's okay if it's nonprofit, it's okay if it's ground floor retail. I guess.
I'm not saying they can't do it, I just think that we shouldn't be subsidizing it.
Well, we're not really subsidizing, right? It's already existing, and we're just allowing them to preserve that. It's already existing, and we're just allowing them to preserve that. And frankly, in another way, I mean...
But, but we're granting them a lot of concessions that they don't have right now.
We are, but then, at the same time, if it's going to have the parking required for the office, and the other thing is, we all know office is a moneymaker in this town, but if this is existing office, hopefully that can actually further subsidize the affordable project. So, that, that's where I'm a little confused.
I think we ought to make this thing clean.
Well, there's also a bunch of stuff on El Camino. Like, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the new affordable housing project on El Camino, frankly, the last one that was built. On the bottom, they have the Institute for the Blind or something. And I'm glad we kept that. I think that's a great community asset. And I think ground floor uses on El Camino, I like to see even quasi-retail stuff, or quasi-stuff that, you know, that brings people down there, that people would have on El Camino, that kind of stuff. And, I mean, if we just wanted to specifically exclude, you know, paying ground floor office, I probably wouldn't lose sleep over it. But I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure there's any of that anyway. I'm just trying to think about it. There might be, but you're unlikely to be tearing down an office building. It's probably not going to get you there. It's probably mostly retail, and mostly this sort of personal services stuff, and I actually think personal services on the ground floor on El Camino is often worthwhile.
Well, you do remember that none of the nonprofits right now, none of, none of the affordable housing right now has, in fact, the one on, the Mayfield one is the only one that has something that was placed in there. The only other one is Paxton's Building, and they bought it as Paxton's.
No, that's right. That's why I think this discussion is, I mean, it's really unlikely to occur, because most of our nonprofit buildings aren't going to do it, but if they want to put nonprofit space in the bottom, or want to put the equivalent of the Institute for the Blind or stuff, I'm happy to let them do it.
Does this issue come up, so, so all these things need to come to council and city to, to have the project and the rezoning approved at the same time, right? So, this issue would come up in the course of any such, okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's, there's confusion here. I'm sorry. There's confusion here. The ordinance says on packet page 135, 1830J020, conditional uses, it allows offices of 5,000 square feet when deed restricted for use by nonprofit organizations, so like the Institute for the Blind or whatever could be there. It also says, all other uses conditionally permitted in the underlying zoning district. What I'm trying to eliminate is, in the section above, which says that any of the offices at a Point Four, in the development standards, it says a Point Four FAR, that are all kinds of other office stuff, that just isn't really compatible or consistent with an affordable housing project. And that extra Point Four, I have to say, is also going to make these buildings that much bigger, and that much more contentious.
I think, actually, removing this whole permitted uses section, 1830J070, is a lot stronger and more detrimental to a project than what Vice Mayor Phil Seth is identifying in terms of that Point Four being reused as office. I think taking this out is very...
It's not had a chance to talk. So, Greg?
Yeah, so, you know, many members of the public, maybe, almost virtually the whole council, has talked about affordable housing, but we have to think about, where does it come from, right? It's, it takes money, right, to build? People aren't just going to build affordable housing just to build it. There has to be ways to fund it. And my concern with this amendment is that you take away one of the ways to fund it. And if you want to have affordable housing, it's not like the city is flush with cash. And we were looking at doing an 80, 70, 80 million dollar tax bond, right, to fund our infrastructure. It's not like we have piles of cash sitting around to fund affordable housing. If you want to have affordable housing, we have to have ways to fund it. And I think everything we do to chip away at funding sources for affordable housing means that's less affordable housing we're going to get. So, if we're serious about affordable housing, we should, we should make it easy, not hard, right? And I think this makes it hard. So, I can't support this, just because I think that takes the flexibility away from making affordable housing projects possible. So, that's my thoughts.
Okay, I don't have any other, other lights on, so at this point, sorry. Okay, and councilmember DeBois?
Yeah, just, just to clarify...
I don't feel, one of you had it on first. I don't know which one.
Yeah, just to clarify my understanding of the motion now, is there's, on, again, page 135, there's permitted uses and conditional uses, and we're just deleting the underlying uses as a permitted use by right, but we're leaving it in as a conditional use. And we also are including business or trade school, adult daycare, office for nonprofits, and all other uses conditionally, which to me, it seems like a good compromise. By default, our 100% affordable housing projects should be permitted for 100% affordable housing, and then we have these conditional uses that are called out, and that seems reasonable.
Yeah, I will not be supporting the amendment. I mean, if somebody has, you know, one of these uses on the ground floor, and then they say, hey, we want to add some affordable housing above that, address our jobs housing imbalance, focus it on affordable housing, I think that's something we should encourage, so.
Oh, can I speak for a second? Not voting, but I, I'm curious to know how this affects the retail aspect. If we're striking permitted land uses, such as retail, or restaurants, or things like that, it's, one, we've got a requirement to preserve retail, unless waived, and we're just allowing these conditionally permitted uses, so we're creating a little bit of a conflict. So, maybe if, instead of, maybe B doesn't get struck, but maybe amended, to allow for retail, or retail-like uses, since we've already defined that term, instead of just this blanket elimination.
You make a good point. You make a good point. I was thinking about the Planning Commission ad hoc recommendation, which had to do with retail, and this doesn't address retail.
So, if bullet, if bullet D were replaced with a retail...
So, if you have a suggestion on how to retain retail in this language?
If bullet D were retail or retail-like uses?
So, again, I would just say it's, in conjunction with a 100% affordable housing project, retail or retail-like uses may be permitted, provided they are limited to the ground floor.
Yeah, that seems to do it.
So, I'm still not going to accept that. I think as councilmembers Scharf, Walbach, and Tanaka have argued quite well, if you have an existing permitted use, you should be able to continue that to some level. I do want to remind us all, this is an overlay combining district, which means we're not taking away your underlying, underlying zoning rights. With that, I think we should vote on this one.
May we vote?
Yes.
You're voting now on the amendment as it's...
Can we wait until the amendments up on the screen?
Can I what?
Can we wait till the amendment's on the screen, though, before we know what we're voting on?
Yeah, I know what it's going to say, but go ahead. Okay, this one fails on a, it looks to me like five to four. Okay, so we've got, the against is Tanaka, Scharf, Phil Seth, no, I'm sorry. It's getting late, you guys. You know what? This one just failed. So, we're going back to the main motion. Okay. So, now, we are, unless somebody has something to add at this point, we are back to the main motion, and I see that Phil Seth first, then Tanaka, then Walbach.
Okay, we're back on the main motion, right?
Back on the main motion. And then, DeBois.
So, I want to take up the parking thing. So, I had a question, though, for the, for the, on the motion here. It says specify a parking requirement of .75 per unit. Is that per unit or per bedroom? Because are we per unit? So, a three-bedroom unit would have .75 parking spaces?
That, so the original staff recommendation from February was .5 per unit. The PTC added the per unit or per bedroom. Staff brought that to us again, but .75 per unit is what I proposed.
So, a four-bedroom, a four-bedroom unit would have less than one parking space? Really? Okay. So, so, I think we need to be careful with this one, right? So, just in terms of Wilton Court neighborhood, you know, I think it was Ms. Lou that spoke earlier. I drove through that neighborhood at nine o'clock last week, okay? And, you know, I can tell you, on Kurtner Avenue, from El Camino all the way down, there was not one single open parking space, and that's at least a quarter of a mile, maybe half a mile, right? I saw a few open spots on Wilton and Matadero, but that neighborhood is impacted at night, okay? There is no place to put more cars there, okay? And, you know, our city has a long and venerable experience in allowing construction of buildings that don't have enough parking for their tenants, right, and dump cars into the surrounding neighborhoods, right? I actually don't think we should ever build another building that dumps cars into the surrounding neighborhoods, okay? So, I think the way out of that is, we need to build to actual parking demand, okay? And that sort of becomes the challenge here, because we don't know what actual parking demand is, okay? If we build too little, then we're going to dump cars into the surrounding neighborhoods. If we build too much, as has been pointed out, then there's going to be excess, and we're going to have wasted some money, and folks are going to be renting it out to, you know, hotels or something like that. So, history museums, yes, right? And we're trying to put a number on it tonight, right? I think very clearly .75 per unit is not going to be enough in some cases, right? Other cases, developmentally disabled folks and so forth, it's probably more, it's going to be more than enough. So, here's what I think we should do, okay? I don't think this is practical to do tonight, but I think with this, with this is what we should do, okay? Staff is working on a comprehensive study of this, okay? I think we ought to let the staff finish the study that's going to look at where is near transit or not near transit, right? Developmentally disabled, not developmentally disabled, seniors, non-seniors, maybe income level and so forth. I think we ought to let staff finish their work and see this, and every, everybody ought to look at the numbers and understand them, and we all look at it and agree, okay, that looks pretty reasonable, and that looks like the reality. And then that's what we ought to bake into the ordinance, okay? But, we're not at that point tonight. And we do want to move forward with Wilton Court, and I think there's a lot of enthusiasm to move forward with an ordinance here, right? So, I'm going to propose something, okay, that may get us there. There may be better ways to get us there, okay? But, I do like the language that allows the flexibility to the planning director to modify it. So, I'm going to suggest we change it to one per bedroom, right? Hear me out. But the planning director has the, is allowed to modify this standard based on a parking study that shows fewer parking spaces are needed, okay? And I think that once the staff analysis is done and we accept it, we ought to come back and amend the ordinance. Would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
I would not. I think your point about coming back to us with a study is actually helpful, but I don't, I worry, and I'd love to hear from Palo Alto Housing, that this kills the project.
Eric, could I suggest something?
So, yes, please.
So, what I would suggest is that we stick with .75, that we allow Palo Alto Housing Corporation to move forward. I think the chance that we're going to get a flood of these affordable housing projects in the next year is fairly low, and if we do, I mean, I actually think that might be a great thing.
Right.
And that we, to direct them like we did with Explore, that we direct them to finish their study of parking, because you're doing it, I assume, right? And to come back to council with what you believe to actual parking requirements for studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, for affordable projects, with some data and that kind of stuff, at which point we can choose to amend the ordinance or not choose to amend it. I mean, the risk you're taking is someone comes in tomorrow and says, I want to build a three-bedroom project at .75.
Right.
And I just think that's a risk worth taking in, in the effort to move Wilton Court forward.
I think that's going to be preempted by state law. I don't think you can do that.
What's going to?
Because you've got, you have a state law in there. If you own a three-bedroom, you're not going to get away with .75.
Yeah, please repeat what you just said. Where do staff think of it?
Okay, if you have here a parking requirement per bedroom, except preempted, preempted by state law, I cannot believe that in any situation, you would be allowed to do .75 parking for three bedrooms. It wouldn't make any sense.
I don't think this, I don't think that's how the state law works on this.
Well, it's got to work in some way, so that this makes some sense. So, however, however that makes sense, Jonathan, you could speak to that.
So, the, the .75 for one would be a local standard, and the only reason we put in this reference to, unless preempted by state law, is if there is a, if there comes along a more restrictive standard than we have planned for in the code, that we've embedded this, you know, sort of fail-safe into the ordinance. But, you know, we know that state law has parking standards of .5 or .3 for special needs, and so those would be, I mean, it would be lower standards.
But that's per unit.
Yeah.
Right, so if you've got three units...
I'm sorry?
If you have, sorry, if you have three units, and that's per unit, then you're going to have a, you're going to have a greater number of parking spots.
Not necessarily, but...
What? I don't...
I guess what matters here is the local standard, which is being contemplated as .75 per unit, or one point, one bedroom, or whatever you, whatever we do, that's the local standard. And to the extent that the state preamps it, the state would rule.
Yes, but what Eric had said was, suppose you have a three-bedroom, and they only need .75 spaces.
The .75 is the local standard. If that's what this council...
Per unit?
Yes.
Per unit, right.
Yes.
So, you're not going to, unless I misunderstood you, Eric, you were saying, were you saying .75 per unit?
So, I was proposing .75 per bedroom.
You were, well, I don't want to change what you're proposing, but you said one per...
Sorry, I said, sorry, one per bedroom, right, right? And allow the planning director to modify it based on a parking study, right? So...
That's pretty comparable to what we require for a single-family home.
I'm sorry?
Okay, well, I'm just saying this is pretty comparable to our other standards.
Do you get it?
We can, we have other, we have parking standards for single-family homes, which is two-unit, two-bedroom, two parking spaces per dwelling, and then for multi-family, we're looking up the standard for that, just as a comparison to market rate.
Go ahead. Yeah, I've got that. So, for multi-family residential base, base zoning, so standard parking requirements are, and this is for multiple, multiple family.
Right.
1.25 per studio.
Right.
1.5 per one-bedroom unit, and two per two-bedroom or larger unit.
Okay, so it's two per two-bedroom, this is .75 for two-bedroom. Because one of the things I liked is you sent around links to some other, some other cities and what they've done. Menlo Park has an affordable housing overlay, right? Their standard is .8 for a studio, one for a one-bedroom, and 1.5 for a two-bedroom, right? So, this is much, much lower than that.
Not the one per bedroom, it isn't.
One per, yeah, point, yeah, one bedroom, you're right. The problem is it's the two-bedrooms or three-bedrooms.
We've had a lot of discussion without a second. I'm going to second it.
Well, are you going to change it first?
Well, I may change it. So, so the Wilton Court project is all studios. Is that correct?
There's no project on file.
I'm sorry?
There's no project on file. Right, but at the pre-screening, it was all studios and one one-bedroom unit.
And one one-bedrooms. So .75, assuming the Wilton Court project comes at that level, in principle would be enough.
I just don't know that we have enough information on, you know, does that, when that project was presented to the council, it also included a certain amount of retail.
Right.
And so, if the project comes forward without retail.
Right.
Then I think they're missing the mark. And we'd have to do some kind of a director's modification at .75.
So how are we going to fix this, okay? So a project comes forward that's going to require more parking than .75, and it's going to dump cars into the neighborhood, how do we deal with that?
Right, so as I understand it, there was this, there is this out, the way this is drafted, about the parking study, and if there's, you know, based on empirical data, other types of similar projects, if we find out that there's less of a parking demand required, that would be the standard that would go forward in the entitlement process.
What if it comes back and says there's more parking required?
Well, so if the, it would depend on how you write it. It would either be the maximum, you know, it would be whatever the standard is that you're proposing, or the reduction, or if you wanted to put a range based on a parking study. I mean, part of this is we're trying to give some certainty as to what's required, I mean, especially with parking, that can be so influential in how these projects go forward.
But, but essentially, we're saying that, that we're willing to move forward with a project that's, I mean, if I understand what you just said, it said we're willing to move forward with a project that will dump cars into the surrounding neighborhood.
Eric, would you mind if I asked Candace to come down and speak to exactly why, why that particular number was put in? So, Ms. Gonzalez, would you come down and we could, whomever can ask you to clarify that?
Sure. Our original project that we took to the study session had some retail because of the retail preservation ordinance. So with the parking requirements of the retail plus the 67, 60-something units, we were at a 50% parking ratio. The .75 per unit actually kills the Wilton project unless we get rid of the retail. If we don't do any retail, we get close to a 90% parking ratio, which would be way more parking than we actually need, especially since we're trying to serve some adults with developmental disabilities.
Okay. Okay, so some of the, some of the project is going to be developmental disabilities?
Yes, a minimum of 25% will be for adults.
A minimum of 25%, okay, so that would work.
Yes.
Right, okay. Then how do we do this for everybody? So if the Wilt, if it's okay for the Wilton Court, and there's no retail there, right? How do we do this for everybody else?
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Candace. How do we do this for everybody else, given that it's a citywide ordinance, okay, as opposed to, right? When is your parking study due back? You guys are doing a study on this, right?
Yeah, it's not going to be as robust as, you know, looking at the, you know, all of the things that were mentioned, but we are looking at, yeah, market rate, affordable housing, proximity to transit, you know, so, yeah, we're going to have some data, and I suspect in the next couple of weeks we'll be done with that, and we're going to transmit it to the planning commission.
In the next couple of weeks. So let me try modifying my proposal here, right? Which is, leave it intact, but staff should return to council with the results of its affordable housing parking analysis for further, for amendment.
I think that's a good idea. I'd be willing to accept it. After hearing from Ms. Gonzalez, now I'm actually a little worried about the .75. I thought it was a compromise between the .5 staff had proposed and 1.0, which a lot of our community was asking for. So I kind of just struck the middle.
So what I heard Ms. Gonzalez say, and maybe you should come back, Candace, because.
Maybe you should just sit down here at the front.
Maybe you should write this.
I think we should leave the language about, I meant to leave the language about the planning director can modify it, right?
So Candace, since I asked you up here, I was just going to basically say, this is what I heard you say. I heard you say it works at Wilton Court at .75, and you have the .3. So 75% of your project will be at a .75 parking, and 25% of your project will be at a .3 project. But that makes doing retail impossible, because you would need more parking for retail.
Yes.
And the reason it makes retail impossible is because our requirement is that we have, what is it, four per thousand for retail, right? So, you know, the answer is, is that if we as a council wanted the retail, we could waive or modify the retail parking requirements, or we could decide that, no, we don't want to park the cars in the neighborhood, and so it would be better not to have the retail requirements. The other question I would ask you is, and I guess I'd ask staff this as well, is it seems to me that during the day, the people that have cars there will have moved their cars away, because they will have them going to work or doing whatever they're doing with their cars, but they're unlikely to sit there, at least in any masses. And you've already told me that you think this is probably overparked at .75.
Yes.
So I guess my question is, is why don't we look at allowing retail uses with no parking that only face, that would be served during the day, which would exclude restaurants, basically? Because those would be mostly the retail that you get on El Camino during the day. And why not allow, at least allow her to try and do that if she wants to? Is there any reason why that's a bad idea? And I guess I was going to ask staff that.
So the code does include provisions for shared parking analysis. I don't know that we would reach the, a level of significance based on the size of retail that would be proposed. But I think this is what we've tried to avoid. I mean, we've wanted to design the ordinance with a mind toward what could be developed at Wilton Court, but not design the ordinance around a project that hasn't been filed. And so, we're just looking for a standard that.
Well, wait, why couldn't you simply have in the ordinance that, you know, shared parking is allowed at, is allowed at the discretion of council?
You don't need that. I guess what I'm saying is you don't need that for the ordinance, it's already embedded in the code. We have shared parking analysis in the code.
So you could do, you could do a shared parking under our existing code, then, for retail. You probably couldn't do, you probably couldn't do a restaurant, but beyond that, what I'm hearing from staff is you could do it.
I think our preference would be to waive the retail altogether, and just build the affordable housing, is what we'd probably end up coming back with, and then we would be sufficiently parked.
So, I kind of see three things here. One is the director is allowed to waive the retail requirement, as this stands, based on the basic staff ordinance. Council, thank you. Two, we could just say waive parking for retail in these things. Or three, we could put the .7 at something like .6. And then I still like Eric's suggestion of come back after the study, but those are roughly the three ways I see of doing this.
So I guess I'd leave it the way it is, because this .75 works. If Candace doesn't want to do the retail anyway, most likely she's going to ask.
Well, what about, what about waiving the retail parking requirement?
Well, I'm good with waiving, well, I don't want to dump cars into the neighborhood. What I want to do is I want to do the shared parking, if that makes sense. And since we already have that in our code.
Right.
I don't see, I don't see a lot of affordable housing developers probably willing to take, take that on. But if council was to say, no, we're not waiving the retail requirement, we want you to do shared parking, and I'm not going to recommend that on the site.
I know.
I'm not suggesting, we're talking about a citywide ordinance.
I just worry we're kind of forcing our own hand here to waive the retail requirements, actually, when that is a separate decision.
Right.
That's, that's what worries me.
And I am willing to, I think we should have the ability for council to waive the parking, because I'd say if we were to do this downtown, if we're going to do this on Cal Ave, I don't believe for a second that the retail creates more parking. I think people go to Cal Ave and then they wander around and use the retail. And so, I would be fine with putting that in there if you wanted to.
So, would that help, Candace, if we had something that allow council to waive the retail parking requirement?
It would help, except I think that the neighbors might have some issue with that, and some hesitation that the retail will not trigger the need for more parking. Based on what we're hearing from the Ventura neighborhood, I think parking is going to be a hot topic. So, it might work, but I would still push for flexibility in the retail, including the waiver of it.
Yeah, so we already have that in there. So what would you recommend actually on the parking?
You know, I think the 50% parking ratio works, subject to a parking study. It's consistent with state law, but we will get a parking study. It'll be dependent on the target population. So for example, you know, if we're proposing adults with developmental disabilities, that'll probably be supported, supported. If we're proposing a family project, the parking study would probably come back with a higher ratio. So I think, you know, stay consistent with state law, subject to a parking study.
So is .75 about right, then? I mean, is that a fair starting place? With the .3?
With a .3, so that gets us down to about .6. It makes the project at hand possibly work, but if we're thinking about future projects, it may limit it.
Well, so, so I think I'll let it clear, okay?
Yeah.
I think that's sensible. I do want everybody to remember that, you know, if we come back and you go, based on the nature of our project and the amount of parking and so forth, the numbers don't work, I want to hold in our pocket the option of, well, maybe there's additional financing from the city. Again, we've got $12 million in the Affordable Housing Fund that we could apply to that. And, you know, earlier this evening, okay, we approved on consent, investing $2.5 million, okay, in Avenidas, right? I think it would be okay for us to invest a couple million in the Ventura neighborhood if this is the way it takes to get this done, okay? So I hope we hold that, I hope we hold that, you know, as one of our, one of our tools.
So I think, Eric, you need to finish your motion.
So, so my motion is, is going to be, staff shall return to council once its affordable housing parking study is done for further council, for, for, what's, what's a good word? For further council action or for an amendment? For further council action.
Can we put it up there with 2A or, and B? I mean, I'm concerned about coming back for this discreet amendment for parking in the middle of this housing work program that we're trying to do.
I'll be okay with that, right? I think as long as it happens before the next project comes along. What I don't want to do is approve some project that's going to dump cars into the neighborhood. Now, it doesn't seem like that's imminent, okay? But that's, that's what we should try to avoid.
I hear the interest, I can't control when applications get filed, but I hear your interest.
That's okay with me, if it's okay with the maker of the motion.
So, so I would accept 2A as written there, but are you withdrawing your amendment of the .75?
Yeah, that's what it's, I'll go back to the original.
Including results from the parking study, at which time we can take it upon ourselves to adjust that ratio of .75.
Yes.
I think that's fair. I will just remind us, from what we've heard from Palata Housing, we may be forcing our hands to waive the retail requirement at the Wilton Court spot.
So I would like to then offer that, that this council has the ability to waive the retail requirement, and it would.
We already do.
Not the, I mean, the retail parking requirement, which we do not have the ability to do.
You want the ability to waive it?
I do. And it's not going to affect this project, I'm not thinking at all about Wilton Court.
But other ones.
I'm not interested in doing that, I'm thinking that if we're going to get these projects downtown, or we're going to get them on Cal Ave, which we just did, that you want the ability to have retail on the downtown and the Cal Ave. And you don't want to force your hand to have to.
My colleague Cory Wolbach has been reminding me, let's keep policy simple, but I think that's a good suggestion, so I would accept it.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so.
Sorry to take so long on this, but it's the most important part.
Yeah.
I realize it's midnight, but we got to get this right.
I think you're right, Vice Mayor.
Okay.
So just, just give the language.
Does Amendment A make sense? It doesn't really read, can you read that, Eric?
Yeah, it does. It says, F would say that council has the ability to waive retail parking requirements if ground floor retail is being used on 100% affordable project.
Okay, if Adrian accepts that.
To waive or modify. Why don't you say modify? Why don't you say not waive, say modify retail? Modify is much better. Thank you.
Okay. Hold on a minute while Adrian decides if you, that's okay with you? Okay, so I'm trying to move this along at this point. We, and Greg, I want to ask you, if you want to speak, you haven't spoken. Yes? Go ahead.
Okay. So I've been thinking about what Eric's been saying in terms of the parking concern, and so I just want to ask staff just some really basic questions, which is, you know, in the past, for affordable housing, or BMR housing, we would be part of a market rate project, right? So there'd be a mix of BMR, and so like, you have diversity in a community versus not just a bunch of people who are low-income, right? It usually brings out, usually makes for a better community, you have diversity versus just all one type. And so, you know, the one concern I have about all this is, is, and I think that's why it's actually good to have it go beyond just 60% in terms of it's at 120%, but still, it doesn't cover market rate. And, well, let me just ask staff, does it, does this prevent any market rate housing as part of a project?
So, no, if you wanted to, you could have the combining district language, but not utilize the allowances in the, in the provisions, and you could propose a market rate, but you wouldn't get the additional FAR or the density, or setbacks, or all the other provisions that are kind of enabling the AH, combining district, if you don't have a 100% affordable project.
Because I think in terms of the conversation we've been talking about, right? I think, so retail on the bottom floor, especially like on busy streets like El Camino, make a lot of sense, because it activates the streets, it gives nearby residents something, you know, kind of like a, some sort of, something like activates the street, it gives them something to shop, we get tax, tax dollars for the city, you're not putting, you know, a residential unit against busy traffic, so there's a lot of reasons to do that. But I think the vice chair brought up a good point, which is you don't want to put a bunch of traffic in the neighborhoods, right? Or a bunch of parking in the neighborhoods. But, you know, a lot of this can be solved if you actually put in a few market rate housing units, right? So if, if, rather than, and also I think it makes it for a better community, actually, not just to have it all low-income, right? If you actually have diversity, I think it's a mix of strong community, plus that could fund, let's say, parking onsite, or, or maybe some retail use that we desire, like grocery stores, or, or things like that. So I, I just wanted to bring, open up the conversation about having a mix of market rate housing, not just, because I think the overall issue we have with affordable housing, it's not just affordable, it's a housing problem in general, and it's, it's housing for all income types. And the one thing I worry about with this is that we create silos, or like these blocks of all low-income. And I think, I think diversity and having a mix of incomes in a community is actually a really good thing, and really important to have. So I, I'm just trying to think of, is there a way, like for instance, if we wanted to have retail on the bottom, and not have traffic spilt into, or parking spilt into neighborhood that the vice chair brought up, to allow market rate units to help fund the necessary parking that we need, or to allow the uses? So I'm looking to the maker, because you're kind of architecting this thing, what can we do in this regard? Because I, I think what happens if we, I think one, one issue with 100% affordable is that it sometimes makes suboptimal projects, because of the problem that, like, I think sometimes actually having retail use on the bottom makes a lot of sense, but then, you know, retail's not necessarily the highest margin business, and then you, but then you take away a use that maybe the neighborhood wanted, or could have, could have used. And so I just, I think, you know, 100% is a nice thing to advertise, but in practical concerns, I mean, it doesn't create the best community, I think, right? I think income diversity is actually better.
Yeah.
And I think most of us would agree on that. And also, I think, when you make it 100% affordable, you start losing the ability to fund things that actually make the project better. So, anyways, I just want to see if maybe you could think about, like, what's a way for us to put in some of the funding units that can actually make the project better for everyone?
So philosophically, I'm totally in agreement with you, I think, you know, in terms of the buildings we want in this community, it's nice to have them mixed up between affordable and market rate. I think in terms of making the funding work out, that's also a good plan. I think in terms of making the funding work out, that's also a good plan. But I think as this process has been advertised to our community, it really has focused on 100% affordable. And I think that is an essential selling point, call it that, for this.
Well, I think advertising 100% is nice, but I think the issue, though, it sometimes leads to projects that could be better if you, if it was like 90% affordable. It'd still be a good project, right? But then you maybe get the parking onsite that doesn't disturb neighborhoods.
Yeah, so I think, Greg, I think you're totally right, but actually the Vice Mayor does bring up a good point, that the housing work plan does identify things like this, looking at adding market rate FAR and also potentially increasing our inclusionary percentage so that, you know, downtown, maybe, you know, the old Rudy's Pub could get turned into a retail, two floors of market rate and one floor of affordable. I just don't think this ordinance and tonight is the right time to do what you're talking about. But philosophically, like, I'm with you on it.
And I do think, Greg, it will come back up during that work plan. That's one of the, that's one of the things we've talked about. Because this is the start of, this is the start of affordable housing. This is 100% tonight. And then, as we go forward with that, we're going to have to look at just what you're talking about, because there's no way to meet our goals of 250 to 300 a year. If we're not looking at the variety.
It's also, we want projects that are good for the community, right? And I think that sometimes, you know, I know the marketing goal of having 100% is nice, but I think that sometimes take away things that can make the project better. And, like, for instance, I think we all agree, income diversity in a project is actually a good thing, right? I don't think necessarily, you know, we don't necessarily want to have like a super low income, you know, I think that's not good either. I think it's having diversity in the areas. This is why we've always had a certain percentage of projects as BMR versus just having all one income type. So that's my worry, is that we create these kind of.
Greg, I would say to you, like, I completely agree. You know where I stand on housing, that I want to see more housing, affordable housing, market rate housing, et cetera.
Well, housing in general is needed, right?
I totally agree. I just think.
And diverse housing is a better thing than, you know.
Right. I just think, considering right now in Palo Alto, that we've got pretty much nothing happening in terms of housing. This is an area that our whole community can agree is a social and economic good. We have partners stepping up to try and make this happen, and I think we should support that.
But I think if we ask Candace, hey, could you, would you want a couple or a few market rate housings to help pay for the parking onsite? I don't think she'd say, no, 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 I don't want to do that, right? I think it gives her options, right? She doesn't have to do that.
I know, but we could also give Candace options of like, hey, do you want, you know, 10,000 square feet of office space in this, right? I just.
Let me make the following suggestion, because that's really good, Greg. But I think we're getting off what our motion is for tonight. And I think we may actually be ready to vote on the motion. I think so. Nope? Well, yes, yes, of course. You all, you're all going to get to talk the motion. But I want to make sure we're back to the main motion.
So, okay, I don't have a necessary solution for this, but I do think having that kind of flexibility is actually a good thing, and I think it leads to better projects. Because maybe, for instance, on this, on this project here, maybe having parking onsite would be a good thing and allow a retail use that the community could buy into. And it would be a win for everyone, right? So that's what I'm trying to go for.
Let's keep on working on housing.
Well, I want, I see, the thing that I worry about, though, is that if you come up with projects that maybe the community rejects, that's also that, right? And so I think, I think it's important to make sure that we have community buy-in. So one other question I have for staff, which is, so in terms of like BMR housing or affordable housing, how, is that, is this just rental or is it also ownership?
This ordinance that the council's considering is not limited. It would be either for ownership or rental.
Okay. So one thought I had also is, you know, I think in the United States, poverty is not permanent. And there are some countries, like in Africa, if you're poor, you're going to stay poor forever. But I think here in the United States, that's not a given, right? I think people can start out from one income level and go to another. And so what is the policy about, if let's say someone buys a place when they're, let's say, low income, and then they suddenly make too much, what happens?
Yeah, you know, I'm going to ask Candace, who administers our local program.
Here we go, sure. Do you have an answer?
For the for-sale BMR program, when somebody buys it, we don't do recertification, so they can own it forever, really. It's only for the rental program that we do annual recertifications.
Okay, so that's one of the things that I feel kind of strongly about, because I believe that poverty is not permanent, especially here in the United States, especially here in Silicon Valley, where people come here very, very poor and get education, work their way up, and actually make something of themselves. And so I actually feel that rather than having BMR ownership, we should have BMR rentals, because that way, when people are low income, they get this helping hand to work their way up. I think the problem with BMR ownership, it ties up low income units forever, even if they, maybe one day become multimillionaires. And that just doesn't strike me as a, as a, if we're trying to help the maximum number of people, we want these things to be rental units, where there are people who are of low income and need that helping hand versus, you know, something that gets taken off the market once someone buys. So I'd like to make a, hopefully, a friendly amendment, that this be restricted to BMR rentals.
I would accept that. You're saying this would only be BMR rentals and no BMR ownership?
Yeah, because I think that the problem, the problem I have with BMR ownership is, I mean, it has an idea that, that when someone's poor, they're going to stay poor for the rest of their life. And I just think here in the United States, that's not true. And we hope it's not true. We want people who, we want people to be able to do better. And.
Greg, what do you mean by BMR rentals?
So what I mean by is, I think that.
You mean houses? You mean condos?
I think all the affordable units, all the BMR units should be rental units, not ownership. Because I think the challenge, if you make an ownership, like what Candace is saying, there's not a recertification. So let's say maybe you qualify when you first buy it, but then if you make more money, you're just lucked out, right? And I think if we really want to help the most members in the community, we want something that is, that is going to stay in circulation. And so if people kind of work their way out of whatever financial situation they're in, it becomes available to the next person. And we keep helping people in the community, and we keep creating that diversity of income in the community versus, you know, basically, there are, there are a few lucky people who own a unit, and even if they make a lot more money, they just lucked out, right? And then those units are no longer available for the community.
I just think, again, given where this process has come from, it's an affordable housing overlay. To produce affordable housing, we haven't specified before whether it's, we've actually said it can be rental or for sale. 99% of the BMR housing produced is for rent. I don't think this is helpful.
Then it should make a big difference, right?
I'm not going to accept this. I think it's actually doing our community a disservice.
I'll second your motion.
Greg, have you seconded this?
No.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Greg, are you done? Can Tom speak to this?
Sure.
Okay, Tom?
Well, Greg, thank you for bringing this up. It was actually a question I had as well. And, you know, I think it comes down to the recertification issue, right? So if it's a rental, it's recertified every year, and it goes to low, low-income affordable housing. If it's a purchase unit, your income can go to any level. So I just think, I just think it makes sense that we should restrict this to rental units.
So this, this is an amendment by Greg Tanaka, seconded by Councilmember DuBois, to limit the combining district to rental below-market rate units. So unless there's more discussion, you know.
I have discussions.
No, tonight, just vote.
No, I have discussions.
Guys, we are, it's now, it's 12:20, and several people haven't spoken on the main motion.
We could have done the aircraft noise item after all.
Because this is, go for it, okay? That's then, starting with Karen and going to Walbach, going to Scharf, down the line.
I don't need to speak to this amendment.
It's what you said you wanted to do.
I don't need to speak to this amendment.
Okay.
I'm supporting it, but I don't need to speak to it.
This is a bad idea, and to be introduced after midnight, this is a really bad idea. And I really hope y'all change your mind about this one.
Okay, who else wanted to speak? Scharf?
Yeah. So I actually always had concerns about, about below-market for-sale housing. I think it's really rare, if ever, that we actually see a below-market for-sale housing that's 100% affordable. We see it a lot in terms of requirements, you know, on our inclusive zoning. But it tends to create the homeowners' associations to be really difficult on those. So anyway, and I agree with Councilmember DuBois on his statements. So I'll probably support this.
So what you guys are saying is you want some of these 100% affordable rental units to be, what are you saying?
We say we don't want them to be for-sale units. We want them to be rental units.
Right. Okay, good. In that case, then, okay, who else wants to speak? Anybody else? Okay. Then this one I can actually support. Let's see what we do with this one. Okay, so this one passes with, let's see, we've got Walbach and, fine, correct. Okay, I think this really does take us back to the main motion. So at this point.
I have five more amendments.
Yes. You'll be dead. Okay, so at this point, Karen, you're speaking to the main motion?
Well, I spoke to it earlier, but I'll just make.
Could I urge that we not do any more amendments?
Not amendments. I have, I have the same comments, I mean, same concerns that I had that I stated earlier. I think the .75 per parking places per unit. I think the Housing Corp surely has parking analysis of the projects that they have done in Palo Alto. You see that the ad hoc committee had talked to a lot of affordable housing developers, and there's, the range they came up with was .5 to 1.3 spaces per unit. We talk about not wanting to put parking into the neighborhood. You know, I would hope that we could come up with an affordable housing, whether it's an overlay or a PC, something that everybody could come together and say, kumbaya. And the more extreme we make it, the less likely everybody's going to be able to come together and support it enthusiastically. And I think this has some pretty radical things in it. So I can't support it.
Okay, so, Councilor Law?
Yeah, so I think this is the first time I've actually spoken to the main motion. So earlier tonight, Councilmember Holman suggested that we do by right for affordable housing. So I would suggest that we add language to allow by right for projects with low-income housing tax credits. Would that be accepted as friendly by the maker and seconder?
Can I ask staff on this one? What is?
I don't understand how that even would work on an overlay. Because you have to put the overlay in, you have to go.
Projects that go through with low-income housing tax credits could be by right, is what he's saying?
Yeah, I'm trying to address the issue.
I, I hear you on this, Cory. Councilmember Walbach, my apologies. I think, again, this is one of these big changes. That's, it's kind of late.
I'll withdraw the amendment, it's too late, I have.
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
Lydia, I think you're the last to rock.
Yeah, I can't support this either. I mean, this is, this is way too radical. Certainly is radical, and there's really no holding it back. It's a citywide ordinance that, like I said earlier, is just going forward for any sites and all sites with very, very loose language. So I'm not going to support this either.
So I think we are, at this point, ready. To actually vote on the main motion? I know it's really early, and you probably.
Tom, we're ready to vote. Ready to vote, Tom.
I'd actually like to speak to it. I haven't had a chance to speak to it yet, Liz.
Oh, sorry, I didn't real, I didn't realize.
I'll go after Tom.
Is that okay?
Go ahead, Tom.
It's 12:20. It's really late, but I do want to thank staff again. I think there's some good work here, as well as PTC. I'm going to skip a lot of my comments since it's late, but I think, I want to thank my colleagues, too. I think we had a lot of issues that I was concerned about, motions I was going to make. I do have a couple of questions. So on the map, in the staff report, it talks about transit stops. And it looks like train, train stations are, you know, three-quarter mile circles. But then it looks like it's a solid half-mile band along El Camino, regardless of where a transit stop is. Is that correct?
Not quite. So just to modify that slightly, it's a half-mile from transit stops, so the Caltrain stops are what qualify. And then a quarter-mile from any high-quality transit corridor. So that's the VTA lines and the Stanford-Margaricell.
But it doesn't look like you took into account where the VTA actually stops. I would imagine that I would see more circles around El Camino?
So the El Camino-Rial corridor in particular, the boundary that you see in yellow is reflecting a quarter-mile proximity from those stops that are along the El Camino-Rial corridor. It's not shown, it's not shown the individual stops, but it's.
But are there so many stops? It's a straight line. So if there was a stop here, it seems like there'd be a curve around it, and then the next stop would have another curve, and it wouldn't be a straight line. So I'm trying to understand.
Right, it's the corridor, not the specific stops. So that's, we did that on purpose so that it wouldn't be, you know, tied to a specific bus line stop, but it's the corridor.
Okay, so some locations could be quite far from a transit stop.
But it could be, but it's, yeah.
Okay, I'm not sure that makes sense. But I guess that's my fault for talking last. I just think, again, if you're really talking about practical transit, the previous definition of, you know, nearest, nearest stop that operates so often per day makes more sense. But I think we've counted for that somewhat with the discussion about parking and the parking study, though, again, I think it would be, hopefully, that parking study will include distance to transit. So also, looking at the ordinance, I don't see where the ordinance refers to AMI levels at all. And I don't know if you could help there, Molly, but it refers back to a part of code that I didn't see modified.
Right, it's a cross-reference to the code. So those are embedded in our code. I think the staff can walk you through the details.
But looking at that code, I didn't see any reference to 120% AMI. Is that there?
It is, yeah. So we defer to the code's definition of what an affordable unit is. That's in, I believe, Section 1665, and includes everything that HCD considers to be moderate income and below.
So it referred to California state law, right?
Sorry?
I referred to California law. And so again, our definition of affordable housing is pretty clear. It's kind of defined by the state.
Affordable unit is, yeah.
I did have the question about rentals of purchase, which we covered. Is, are there portions of the North Ventura Plan, Area Plan included? And what's the interaction going to be? We have a VTA grant to look at zoning around that area. I just want to make sure there's no, no conflict there.
Yeah, it looks like a portion of that may be, I mean, it's hard for me to tell the scale, but, so that's something that we would look at in our, you know, as we come back to the council and we're talking about the planning effort for that area.
Yeah, I mean, the intention is that that's going to be part of this community planning process and not now be zoned necessarily affordable housing, right? I mean, it's not going to impact the process of the area plan?
It won't impact the process, no.
Okay. So I did hear several of the speakers that were talking about disabled housing express concern again about. concern, again, about 120%, 120% AMI development, competing for land. And I think we've had some discussions around that. I do think it's something we should keep an eye on over time. You know, I think there was some confusion discussion, but if, with these incentives, I think there's a potential for for-profit developers to, to really squeeze out opportunities for low-income, extremely low-income. I just think we need to be sensitive to that. I think one thing we might want to consider that wasn't brought up tonight was how we can make these affordable housing projects acceptable to the neighborhoods, communities. We talked a bit about parking. I think one thing we could consider would be a council-initiated RPP around specific projects when those come back. It's just, it may be a tool we could use to avoid neighborhood backlash. I did think, a couple other ideas from the PTC that weren't mentioned yet, having at least one community meeting on this affordable housing overlay, I think would be worthwhile. And I also think we need to give more thought to the process we'd use to waive the retail Councilmember Walbach attempted it. I think it needs some refinement, but again, I have, have an interest in understanding how we could streamline extremely low, very low-income projects. I don't think we can just say it's by right tonight, but again, I think that would actually really drive down per-unit cost in a meaningful way. And I think other cities have been able to do that. So, so the last one that, there are two, and I'm going to try to make a motion on one of these, but I didn't see a definition in terms of the affordable housing, in terms of how long it remains affordable. Is that defined anywhere?
Yes, it's in the code. It's 55 years or up to 99 years, depending on the circumstances.
So it's not in this ordinance, is it?
No.
It's in the other section on affordable housing?
Yeah, it's in Title 16.
All right, and then I will, I guess we're going to explore these other districts, but again, I have concerns about rooftop decks in residential neighborhoods, so when that comes back, that would be a concern. But I think we had a good conversation tonight. Took a little while, but I'm supportive of this, and glad we got to the end.
It's only 12:30 now. Are you sure you want to vote? Okay, in that case, Adrian, have, have you had a chance to look at it completely? Make any changes?
No, thank you, everyone, for the collaborative approach. Let's vote.
Really? Really? I mean, do you want to speak?
I did. You've not spoken to the main motion yet?
So, so I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this, and I'm especially voting for the Wilton Court project. I think there is a leap of faith in this that, you know, I'm not 100% comfortable with. There is some stuff that's not defined yet here, is yet to be, right? You know, it might eliminate FARs, right? It might not. I don't think anybody really understands what that means and the implications are, you know? And the parking, the parking as specified is completely unsustainable. And so we are assuming that that's going to get fixed once there's better data. So I think, I see this as voting for an ordinance which isn't yet defined, at least not completely. But that said, you know, I think there's enough in here to make it, to make it worthwhile.
So we're, we're all about to vote. We have, we have really made progress on what I think is one of the major issues in our community right now. Front page yesterday, The Merc, it has been continuously in the press. This may not solve, obviously, every housing problem, but I think it's a great step in the right direction, and delighted we're going to vote. So with that, it passes, it passes on a 7 to 2 with Councilmembers Koo and Holman voting no. And that takes us, I think, to council comments and so forth. And Karen, thank you very much for suggesting, about 9:30 tonight, that we probably might not take up airplane noise.
Comment, you know, if this applies to Wilton Court, that'll be 57 units. You only have 243 left to go for the remainder of this year. It's the middle of April.
A little at a time, right?
That's not true, we got 2,080 units.
So the council comments and so forth. Corey and I will be in Southern California on Thursday, serving on our respective committees for the League of California Cities. I'm on tax and revenue, which basically means the, the state budget. And Corey, what are you on?
I'll actually be there on Friday for Public Safety Committee.
Okay. Anyone else down at that end? Go ahead. Councilmember DeBois?
Yeah, I missed the last council meeting, but the week before that, I spent two days at the Water Now meetings in Utah, Salt Lake City. And I spent some time talking to Ed about some of the ideas that came out of there, but in particular, there's some cities doing balanced billing for water through a budget process, which is pretty interesting. It aligns incentives for conservation and avoids having a large fixed bill. I'm a little concerned that our utility bills are getting quite large in the fixed infrastructure component, so...
I went to that a couple of years ago, and I thought that was one of the best conferences I've gone to. So Water Alliance Now is still its name?
It's Water Now Alliance.
Water Now. They got rid of the alliance. Okay, anyone else who wants to add to this? I think we're all relatively well again. I think Lydia's still recovering, and so am I. And for the rest of you, I think you're actually looking pretty good, right?
No, so you can say adjourn.
Okay, one more? Eric?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, staff, especially, for staying this late. And any of the others who are here, thank you so much.
Adjourn? I'm gone on my leave. Do you want Greg in pre-meeting?